Everybody, welcome to the Gainesville City Commission Regular Meeting for Thursday, April 3rd, 2025. I'm glad to have you all with us this morning. We have a good productive day ahead of us. Madam, or Madam Clerk, I'm sorry.
That's all right. Mr. Mayor, we have the invocation by Prophet George Young.
Good to see you again.
Good morning to each of you and to our Honorable Mayor. In all due respect, it's good to be here again, to stand before you, to do the invocation, and for all gathering Gainesville Union, as I might say. Most holy and righteous God, as I stand before the mayor and each of these commissioners, and those that have gathered in this place, be thankful for your presence. You are the sovereign God, the most high. And as I stand to offer this petition before you, and knowing that you hearth those that pray according to thy will, it is your will concerning the citizens of Gainesville and surrounding area, that the unity of the people, as we gather, as we go to and fro, may live in such a way for the betterment of everyone in this city and surrounding area. Most holy and righteous God, I thank you for the mayor, the agenda, the work that has been done, and the work that is being done, and the work that is yet to be done. I pray accordingly. Most holy God, I ask for wisdom, wisdom that descend from above, that it will rest upon each of these commissioners, that there be no schism among them, but the unity of that which exists on the agenda, and as we consider even this great constitution of ours, that we will walk in such a way for every business, every home, everything that will be done, again, in this city and surrounding area. I just thank God in remembrance to let them know that apples are silver and pictures are gold is even at a due word spoken in due season, very fitting and very appropriate. Bless this meeting and be glorified. Amen and amen. Blessings upon each of you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, President. Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, we're on to the adoption of the agenda, and we do have an update list.
So moved with the suggested updates.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a couple of seconds. Is there any public comment on the consent?
We do not have any public comment.
All right, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, and any opposed. All right, that passes unanimously. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
We also are on to early public comment on the agenda, but likewise, we do not have anyone signed up, so we're going to move on to our business discussion items for the morning. We have 2025-294 GRU report with the recommendation the City Commission here, a report from the city attorney.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I asked that this be added as a time-sensitive item because, of course, yesterday, there was a hearing on the suit that the GRU authority filed against the City of Gainesville. And honestly, I thought there was a little more movement from the judge than I had expected, so I thought it important that we have a conversation this morning with a report from the city attorney's office, direct from the courtroom. So, Mr. Attorney.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. And as you know, the legislature amended the city's charter back in '23 to add Article 7, to delete the provision of Florida Charter Officer General Manager, and to add all of Article 7, creating the Gainesville Region Utility Authority, which would have all control and power over the city's utilities. Last year, the city commission pursuant to the Florida Constitution, Home Rule Authority, founded in Chapter 166 of the general law of the state of Florida, and pursuant to our own special act charter, passed an ordinance authorizing a referendum, giving the electorate of the city of Gainesville the option to amend their charter further, to delete that provision of Article 7, creating the Gainesville Region Utility Authority. And the result would be to return the control of the utility back under the elected city commission and its charter officer structure. That went to election in November. It passed with almost 73% seeking that change to our charter. The GRU authority then filed suit, actually shortly before the election, but several months after the ordinance was passed, to challenge the validity of that referendum, arguing in three ways that it should be invalidated. First, that the city commission did not have the authority to pass an ordinance that would have the effect of undoing the charter amendment that was passed as part of a special act of the legislature. And this is really a fundamental issue that was heard before the court, was just what was at issue. The GRU authority would contend it was an issue of competing interest or conflict between a special act of the legislature and an action of the city commission in passing an ordinance that would call a referendum that could result in an amendment. Our position was that what the legislature did was they passed a special act that amended our charter, and that charters are, provided in general law, passed by the legislature, authorized by the Constitution, able to be amended further by the electorate. So that was count one. Their second count was that the ballot language itself was faulty and misleading, and they gave a couple of instances as to how they thought it was so. And the third count of the challenge by GRU authority was that the business impact estimate, which is a fairly new requirement for almost all ordinances that you pass, be produced and posted, and describing the direct impacts on for-profit businesses in the area before the ordinances passed, was insufficient in some way. Any of those three counts, any of those three arguments, would serve to invalidate the referendum. So in short, in defense of it, the city would have to prevail on all three, whereas the GRU authority just has to win on one. And that's the groundwork. We had an extensive hearing yesterday. I would like to say that I'm really proud to be a part of and to have been part of the work that senior sitting city attorney Sean McDermott did in arguing this motion yesterday. He did a really fine job, and it was, I think it was significant work. And I think we should all be proud of that. I think it is something that I think our office is very proud of, obviously. And in the end, after an extensive hearing, Judge Wright ruled for summary judgment, and that's, there were competing summary judgment motions on both sides. Summary judgment meaning that both sides have acknowledged that there were no outstanding facts. It was purely a legal issue for the court to determine as a matter of law. It is a determination on the merits. It's a determination on the merits after it's clear that there were no outstanding facts. Judge Wright orally pronounced, and his order will be rendered, it will be reduced to writing, then become official, orally pronounced at the end, it has to count one, he was going to grant summary judgment in favor of the city. This is the sort of the medias issue. This is the issue that where the judge agreed that there is the ability of the elected commission to call a referendum that would propose amendments to the city charter despite even argued contrary language in the charter itself. That is a significant issue, a significant home rule issue, and he ruled in favor of the city in that regard. The second issue, unfortunately, he ruled, he pronounced that he will rule in favor of the GRU authority based upon the language of the ballot initiative itself. It's noteworthy that the issue that he raised was not within the issues raised technically by the GRU authority. He found the language, and bear in mind, this language of the ballot initiative was prepared by our office carefully. It was presented to the commission. It was the subject of at least four city commission meetings. It was published. It was the subject of discussion with the public and between yourselves, and again, published ahead of time, and then challenged after the fact by the GRU authority attorneys, and they had, you know, four attorneys there at the hearing, all very well experienced. And none of them pointed to the issue that the judge seized on. And in brief, the language of the ballot referendum itself said that, should the charter be amended to delete Article 7, eliminating the governor-appointed Gainesville Regional Utility Authority and its appointed administrator that manage, operate, and control the City of Gainesville's local public utilities, and placing that responsibility with the elected city commission and charter officer, and there's some more language. What the judge found, and he sort of jokingly cautioned us, is this is what you get when you have a judge that was an English major, was that the term elected prior to city commission was a pre-positive modifier that could be misconstrued, well, could be construed by voters to be modifying both city commission and charter officer. So it would be misleading if people thought that this charter amendment was going to provide for elected charter officers. There's no indication that anyone factually was misled. And again, it wasn't raised by the attorneys who were assailing the referendum. It wasn't raised at any of the public meetings we had. It wasn't raised after the publishing of anything. But the judge raised it himself. And cognizant of the fact that, I think it wasn't directly raised, he did make a point to say that the court's ruling was, quote, "within the scope of grounds raised by the plaintiff, but the court finds a different reason within the grounds raised." So that being said, he found that. And the standard for that language, as we had discussed when the language was being discussed, was that the language of the ballot initiative has to explain the chief purpose of a proposed amendment and not mislead the voters. I think there's even cases that say that it may not be clearly misleading. The judge clearly found that it met that standard, and it was, in his mind, misleading. So he ruled in favor of the GRU authority on that. And in terms of the third argument, with the business impact estimate, that was handled, I think, rather quickly, in that our argument was that what the statute requires is that the business impact estimate direct, address any potential direct impacts of the ordinance. And here, their argument was that the impact would be, in the event, it really went to the merits more, I think, that the, if the referendum were to pass, there's a possibility based upon the opinion of a financial advisor that the utility's bond ratings might fail, and if that happened, the cost of debt may increase, and if that happened, the potential governing board might have to raise rates, and then that, in fact, might then affect for-profit businesses. Our point is, that's not direct. That is indirect, 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 indirect. And the court agreed that, and ruled in favor of the city on count three. So where we are is, you know, again, for the city to prevail, we would have had to win on all three. They only needed one out of three, and while generally, two out of three, a bad, as they say, in this case, it is not a win. We are basically, though, where we probably contemplated that we would be after this hearing, that is the potential for both boards to determine whether or not they wish to appeal. I don't, and again, that will be up to the boards to determine. It would be the recommendation of our office that you direct us to pursue all available appellate remedies, utilizing our resources and retain counsel, to, again, represent the city's rights and represent the referendum approved by almost 73% of the voters. Timing of that, and again, even if we had prevailed on everything, I assume that GRU authority would take an appeal. There would be an automatic stay in place, so we would be dealing with the appeal in that case. Even if they appealed in every regard, I think it's, I would contemplate that this board may have directed us to appeal. We'd be in the same place we are. That being said, I do, I would be, in the event of appeals, I am thankful that we are on the appellee side, defending a verdict in the medias, tortiaries of the issues, the issue that goes to the Home Rule Authority and the fundamentals of our relationship with the legislature and local law. That is a better place to be than being the appellant, I think, I would argue. In terms of timing, in the event that this board or and/or the GRU authority wished to pursue an appeal, it's hard to say. I would estimate that it's, the total appeal process probably takes at least a year. And if you break that down further, I see what you would have is, first, the order has to be rendered. The judge asks that both sides submit proposed orders. That will take place. He will enter an order of his own. His order will be rendered and reduced to writing, filed with the court. From there, the clock will start ticking. Either side might have 15 days to request a rehearing on some issue, if they determine that there's some matter the court overlooked in some way. A rehearing would stay the appellate time. Even if there is no request for a rehearing, notices of appeal have to be filed within 30 days. The notice of appeal then triggers a briefing schedule. Appellate briefs are 70 days to be filed. Answer briefs, another 30 days. Reply briefs, 30 days beyond that. Since there would be presumably cross appeals, there are two reply briefs really, so that adds another 30 days. Upon good cause shown, the appellate court can extend, I think, a briefing schedule by up to 90 days for initial briefs and an extra 15 days for reply briefs. As you can see, these things can all get extended out. We could, in the event that we're in an appellate situation, ask the court to expedite the appeal. I'm not optimistic that the DCA, with its burdens, would be willing to do so, but you can always ask and see where that leads you. But then even after all the briefing is done, this is the type of issue where I would anticipate oral argument to be requested and granted by the court. That sets back probably for scheduling purposes another couple of months. You can see that all adds up. We're talking probably about at least a year. And that's assuming that there's no other weird scheduling rush that gets thrown in. But again, that's just, those are just timing matters. I thought you all might be concerned about that. So again, that is, sorry if I've gone on too long. Certainly answer any questions you have. I do think, again, the judge was incredibly prepared. That was gratifying to see. Every case, for example, brought up by either party, he would make a point to show, and it was nice to see as a litigant, that the court was aware of, say, even the facts of the case. That's the case about this and that. So you had the confidence of arguing. He was very prepared and also very diligent in entering his oral pronouncement at the end of the hearing, whether you like it or not. Again, I think that there's no complaints in that regard. And so that's where we are. Again, to sum up, our recommendation would be that you direct the city attorney's office to pursue any applicable appeals. We can talk more about timing in the future. Nothing would have to be done tomorrow. Nothing has to be done today. Again, nothing will be done at all until the order is rendered. And then there's another 30 days after that to file the notice. Direct us to pursue all potential appeals and using our, the resources that we have and retain counsel to go forward.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Nobody will be surprised to learn that we have multiple lights to discuss this. I would just preface by saying that on the largest issue before the court, I feel like that was a victory for the people of Gainesville, for the rule of law, and for home rule as a concept in Florida. And I know that that will continue to be challenged, but I think that was a good step along the way. Commissioner Chestnut.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very interesting verdict there. So our next appeal would be to the district, where would we go next? District Court of Appeal?
Yes, ma'am.
If we were to appeal. Why was the burden on us to have three out of three and one out of three for the utility board?
Thank you. And, Mr. Mayor, they attacked or challenged the ordinance calling the referendum and the referendum itself on three grounds. Any one of those grounds would be fatal to the referendum itself. If, for example, this commission didn't have the power to pass the ordinance calling for the referendum, then it would fail, and the referendum would be void, ab initio. If the language is faulty, such that the court determines that the voters are misled, as the court pronounced, then again, the election is void, and it has no effect. And then lastly, if the court were to have determined, as they argued, that the business impact estimate was not sufficient, that means the ordinance itself would have a vulnerability that would void the ensuing referendum. So they made three attacks. To succeed, we would have to fight off all of them. And we, again, I am, I do think it is significant, I would agree with you, Mr. Mayor, that we had, the argument, the first argument was, in my opinion, was the medias. That was the home rule argument. That was the argument that was supported by the notion that this is still, the city commission is still the elected legislative governing board of our city. Under our current charter, as amended by the legislature, that proprietary interest of running a utility, that authority has been given to this separate board. But our argument is that they don't have any legislative power, and they are still subject to the legislative power, as if they were any other utility of the legislative governing body of the city. And what the general law says, that when it comes to charter amendments, that notwithstanding any charter provision to the contrary, the legislative body of the city can call such a, pass an ordinance calling such a referendum. I mean, you know, the always danger outstanding that we've known for some time is that, you know, this argument seems straightforward to us because the legislature chose to create the authority by amending our charter. The charter is within the control of the electorate of the City of Gainesville, as well as the legislature. And this is why I have repeated frustration, especially at the GRU authority meetings, when we'll have people complaining that, well, how come those of us who are, that are ratepayers, that are in the service area, that don't live in the city, didn't get a chance to vote on this? Well, they don't get a chance to vote on this because the legislature made this change a part of our charter. The charter is controlled by the legislature, and it's controlled by the electorate of the City of Gainesville by virtue of the Constitution and general law. The possibility always is that the legislature could find some creative way to act, as they did with the airport authority decades ago, to create that separate entity outside of our charter. There was a time, and Mr. Chestnut obviously will remember, when the airport was under the control of the city commission. Legislature didn't do that. Our argument ultimately was respecting the power of the legislature, and I do think that the court saw that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Chestnut. Commissioner Eastman.
Thank you. I was at most of the hearing yesterday, and I did want to just echo what Mr. Neese said, that I think Sean McDermott did a tremendous job arguing all of the facts of the case. I think, Dan, you did a great job helping out with, and your whole staff with working on what the brief that came forward. And frankly, I think the GRU authority attorneys did very, very well as well. I mean, as the judge said, I think pretty clearly, the law is extremely clear. We have the right, a city has a right to alter its own charter, and the special act that created the GRU authority was very clear. That is a charter, that this was created within our charter, and there's no way around that. And I feel, and I'm convinced that if we went to the District Court of Appeals, they would probably find the same thing. I mean, it's, the law is the law. The text is the text. It is concerning to me the idea that we could be sitting within, you know, court of law for the next year. I think it's where we're going through the appeals process. We're in this sort of back and forth between the GRU authority and the city. I think that's, I know it's been hard on staff. I've had staff from GRU come up and talk to me about this. I know it's hard on the city. It creates more kind of rancor within both bodies. And the bond ratings agencies have said they want this cleared up quickly. I wonder, as you're asking about appeals and things like that, I think what the GRU authority now has to determine, and I guess we as a body have to determine, is do they want to appeal whether the city, the people of a city have a right to change their own charter, or do they want to join in sort of overruling the people of a city having a say in that? And I think what is clearly best for both the utility and for the city is for us to figure out a way that we could move forward with this whole thing, find a way that would satisfy that we bring the utility back under the vote, the people, the ratepayers, the people of the City of Gainesville, whatever that looks like, and ensure that there's some stability within GRU. And so I'm not necessarily in favor of appealing it today. I think we still have, what, about a month and a half to determine whether we would like to appeal.
Mr. Mayor, I would suggest that's probably the outside, because after the order is rendered, really on the clock for 30 days to file the notice of appeal.
Okay. So maybe a month, maybe end of April.
If I had no direction from you at that point, I'd file a notice just to preserve the rights, but I would like direction from you to affirmatively do it, if that's your desire.
I guess what I would like to do is see if we could, if there is some way that, because what we can do right this moment is we can put a new ballot amendment on the ballot at a special election, and fix the wording issues that we have currently within the charter. Is that correct, that the judge pointed out?
Correct. And again, I wouldn't concede, I respect a judge's ruling, but I wouldn't concede that the language does not satisfy the requirements. I think, I think it does, obviously.
That you think that, because they used the word clearly misleading was the bar, and you don't think that, you disagree that they reached that bar?
I think the standard to nullify an election based upon the language is very high. The hurdle for us to clear it is relatively low. The end of it is, I do not think that ballot language was clearly misleading.
Yeah.
Now, the judge does, and he's the judge. So that is the issue. If we were to appeal, we would be arguing that the language, the language, the language that was put forward at at least four meetings, that was published, that was parsed by opposing counsel, that was not criticized in this manner at all, was not just acceptable, that it explained the chief purpose, and it was not misleading. But again, the judge disagrees based upon a pre-positive modifier.
I guess I hate the, having all of this work all this time, 73% of the voters overruled based on, I agree, what, I don't think there was a single person that was confused by what the language is. This is the most discussed issue that we've had in our community for a long time. I can also live with the idea that if we simply put this on the ballot within four, five, six months, if we had a special election that would change it, we would be able to satisfy all of these requirements. We would be able to move forward and do that. And I guess what I would like to see is whether or not the GRU authority would like to find a way to work with the City of Gainesville and try to find a way that the voters are heard, and that if there are certain ways that we could make that ballot amendment work that would allow some of the issues that they would like to see in there, I would rather put that forward and then hold off on appeals and see if that is at least some kind of a possibility. If not, we still have the ability to appeal by the end of this month. But I would like to see if there's some form of diplomacy here, and if there's some way that we can do it without having a year's worth of what we just went through for the last two years. It's been hard on everybody involved in this, and so I don't know what that looks like. This just happened yesterday, but if there's some way that we can avoid that outcome, I think that would be a good outcome. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Eastman. Commissioner Willetts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, Mr. Neese, so it sounds like instead of counsel, we needed an English professor. My question is, is it cheaper to hire an English professor than another attorney in your office? I don't know. That's a rhetorical question. We'll move on.
The question is, do I wish in hindsight that we had retained an English professor to go through and diagram it out the way that probably I haven't seen in 45 years? Yes, I wish we had. An English minor, if that helps.
Yeah. Did we have any words left in our total word count for the summary when we passed it?
Yes.
Do you remember how many words?
Yeah, we were at 64 words or so, I think. There's 75 allowed.
75 what we could have?
Yes.
I know that in one place, we did put in the specified administrator of GRUA, but we did not say, or the, not specify, the appointed. We specified that is an appointed administrator at the authority. at the authority that would, that would be ending. But we didn't say appointed city or charter officer. That's what we didn't say on, after elected city commission, we didn't also say, is that right?
I think there was discussion about adding, uh, you know, placing that responsibility with the elected city commission and charter officer, city manager. And the concern is that, if I can, I don't want to misstate the concern raised by commissioners way back then, was that, that make confusing matters more by conflating personalities. It's that it would just go back to the, the city commi, it would go to the city commission and the charter officer as provided for in, in our charter. You know, and our charter provides for operational control being, uh, at the charter officer level, with the city manager having all departments that aren't otherwise carved out for the other charter officers. So that's the way it would be, thinking that this was the cleanest way to, and, and there was discussion over that. Even if that was done, I think the analysis that we heard yesterday would have indicated the problem still would have been that this court would have wanted to see with, say, the elected city commission and appointed charter officer, or maybe appointed charter officer, city manager. So that it was clear that the mod, that the adjective, the modifier, the pre-positive modifier perhaps, elected, only modified city commission and didn't also modify a city charter officer.
Okay. But it, was there, was it brought up that it didn't specifically say city manager?
That was.
But, because I, and then also, it, we, we didn't specify that the appointed administrator at GRU authority was that they call it, but the, the charter calls it the CEO, correct? The charter does say?
GM slash CEO.
GM slash.
Sir, that was an argument raised by opposing counsel, was that it should have specified wish charter officer. The court didn't give that credence.
Okay.
The court's concern wasn't that it didn't spell wish charter officer. It's that the modifier before city commission not only could be read to modify both city commission and charter officer, but in the judge's mind, it should be read to modify both city commission and charter officer, and then that is misleading.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't think I've put, I mean, I didn't accurately describe what the judge said. We'll get his final order, his written order when we get it.
Um, and then if we, if we rewrote the referendum to rerun it in a way that is clear, not misleading, according to what we hear in the order from Judge Wright, could another judge still say, it is not clear, it is not misleading, for a different reason?
Absolutely. And, you know, that's, again, there, it's interesting. On the, on the first issue, the one I described as sort of the medias, it's not, it wasn't completely an issue of first impression, but because of the particularities of our charter and this charter amendment, and there's nuances that, nothing's ever really directly on point. When it comes to ballot language, there's a wealth of cases that describe really this high burden that it has to be misleading in order to be invalidated. And, again, the judge has found, or is about, is going to find, that this language was misleading. We took issue with that, and, and we would continue to take issue with that on appeal if that's where the road takes us, is I don't, I don't think it's misleading.
Okay.
Is it as, in hindsight, is it as best as it could be? Maybe nothing is ever as best as it could be, but, um, I, I, again, after four public hearings, at least, publication, uh, attack by opposing counsel, um, no one raised this issue until an English major with authority did so.
Well, I, I think that's good to re-say. We, we won on the basic issue of, can the city commission just put a referendum on to let the voters change their charter? Yes, we can. Uh, the more minor issue of the business impact statement, you know, we won on that. Um, and we, and we even sort of won on the case brought by, uh, by GRU authority on clarity of the referendum summary. Um, but the judge found a different thing in there, so it's good to reiterate that. It does seem like it would be quicker, literally quicker, to rerun the referendum than to, to continue an appeal. I lean towards not appealing for the sake of rerunning. I believe the voters, um, will amend their charter again if we gave them that opportunity. I think it was clear to them the first time. It'll be clear to them, it'll be even more clearer than the second time, uh, that, that it is for them to do, it is, is for the voters. So it seems like it'll be easier for, for us to rerun the referendum with clearer, uh, better, more clear language, use up all of our seventy-five words, though I value brevity. I think that brevity is more clear than extra words. So it, that's where I lean towards, because I think, though the city attorney would, would appeal this, you know, and say it was not, you know, upon our instruction would appeal it and say that we still believe that the language was clear, not that was not misleading, particularly was not intentionally misleading in any way, um, that we tried to put it to them as simply as possible. So to the voters. So I, I lean towards the idea that we should change the summary language and rerun the referendum, pass it, send it to the voters and let them, um, you know, for, for another time. But what we know is they've always said they wanted it to be theirs. Just to reiterate that they want it to be, uh, a publicly run utility by an elected, um, commission. Um, and I guess I learned a new word today, pre-positive modifier. Um, I, there's a lot of things that can take down a piece of legislation. I thought popular opinion and the constitution were the things that would do that, but not a pre-positive modifier. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Ergeade.
And, and, Mr. Mayor, bear in mind, we might be in an appellate posture anyway. Even though
Yes.
they would have prevailed by winning on count two, I'm not sure what their position will be in terms of whether they want to appeal the count one issue that they, that they didn't prevail on, just for this very reason, that to, to, to hold off on, on further efforts to, to file such, uh, have ordinances that call for referendum. So we might, so your decision as to whether you want to appeal on issue two may also be partly contingent on whether they appeal the, uh, the, uh, count one.
Well, just to be clear, yeah, if they appeal on count one, when we go, go along with, you know, I, I would say at that point, if they want to appeal, we should follow through, um, you know, to continue on. Um, and I will, and then a, a larger question I will have later is, if it does, if GRU authority does appeal, and we don't, we don't particularly want to, but they appeal, could we still go along through the process of setting up a referendum to still go through? How that works when there's pending litigation that is related to a potential new referendum, so that's a?
As you direct, yes.
Yeah. That'll be a question for later for me to understand. Thank you. Thank you.
There will be additional city commission meetings, at least one regular meeting on May third, I think, prior, May first, prior to, because that, that in itself is less than thirty days from now. And then I suppose we'll probably have a GPC or something before then as well, I'm not sure. But, so this, again, that was our recommendation, but your decision is on your timeline.
Thank you, Mr. Willetts. Commissioner Engel.
Uh, thank you. Um, I had a, a similar question, um, to what Mr. Willetts was going to ask, in that, is there any reason we can't appeal and move forward with running a, another election?
No reason.
Um, well, Commissioner Eastman brought up that perhaps we can sit down and negotiate with the, uh, GRU authority on ballot language that they would prefer to see, or to get some of those issues done so that we can get this back in front of voters. I, I think it's a nice idea, but I've got very little faith that we're bargaining in, in good faith with, uh, this other entity. Um, I feel like the GRU authority is, if not unique, at least an oddity in, uh, in most political subdivisions, and that I would feel like it was made pretty much specifically to oppose the commission and the will of the voters. You know, any, uh, other, other utilities that have boards that oversee them, those boards work hand in hand with, uh, the commission that oversees them. They are appointed by the commission. GRU authority was made just the opposite of that, and, and in a very oppositional posture to, to the will of voters and to what this commission does. So I, I'm all for trying to find out if they're willing to work with us, but I've got very little faith that, that that produces much. I, my ideal would be that we at least prep for appeal so that we are ready to go in thirty days, because I expect that that will be necessary at some point to get this right. I would also expect us to start looking at, um, ballot language and moving forward on what it's going to take to, if we don't get a, a quick answer on, you know, the, the, this appeals process that we can move forward with another election to get back in front of the voters, yet again, something they've made very clear over and over and over again that they want. Pre-positive modifier, no. Um, is there any way you can get language pre-approved or screened or something so we've got some idea of there's not like some other small post-positive modifier or whatever else that can torpedo this on the next one?
No, Mr. Mayor, not that I'm aware of, and frankly, that's why you have the public meetings, people to raise their issues. We raised the issue, for example, that, that there is case law that would support that a concern about the language would be made moot, uh, if, once it goes to the election and the election occurs, if the issue wasn't raised ahead of time. The response to, to that argument by the GRU authority is that, well, they did raise the issue ahead of time, that they filed their complaint, I think in September, and we had the hearing in late October, and that, and that their complaint about the ballot language was raised ahead of time, so the mutinous argument wouldn't be effective. Oddly enough, the issue they raised ahead of time was not necessarily the issue the court ruled on. The court was very careful, though, to indicate that, again, his ruling was, um, within the scope of grounds raised, but a different reason within those grounds. So maybe that, maybe that's good enough to, to hold off that, that mutinous argument. I think that's why he made that statement. Um, again, the judge is very prepared and, and, yeah. So, um, but that is an, an argument that we could raise, is that it is all moot because it was publicized and discussed and debated and deliberated and published, and the fault found by the judge is not one that was raised ahead of time, which again goes to our argument that it wasn't confusing, wasn't misleading, anyway.
If, um?
But no, I'm not aware of any sort of clearinghouse where we can get a pre-approved language. The, the courts and the, they won't give that sort of advisory opinion. You only get opinions out of the court when there's a true case in controversy before them.
Say we go through this process again. We have an election again. The people of Gainesville will make it very clear yet again that this is what they want. They appealed that the ballot language was misleading again. When you get into court, I don't know what you're allowed to argue on some of these, but can we bring up the fact that, like, we've already had an election, had this language in the past? Now we've had this language in the past. Are they allowed to consider the totality of that? Or are they only allowed to look at the ballot language specifically on what the ruling was?
Mr. Mayor, yeah, I think we could certainly raise evidence that this lan, how this language was constructed. Again, in this case, we did. This language was constructed publicly with meetings and pub, you know, with liberation. Uh, I think it would be, in the scenario you're talking about, it would be part of the construction of that language, this, this detour, this, this, uh, calling out of a, of a, of an arguable defect in it is how we got to the better language. And aside from that, I think we probably would be retaining, uh, some sort of grammatician development to, I mean, if, if that's what it's going to take, you know, if the, if, if the bar isn't, to, to defeat the language isn't as high as we thought it was, then we're going to start taking belts and suspenders, I suppose, to, to make sure. Get some certification of a English professor of some sort, grammar professor, I guess, not as much English.
Grammarian, whatever. So just, uh, to kind of sum it all up, then there is no reason we cannot both concurrently appeal this and set up for putting this back on the ballot for a special election.
We, we may. We could.
I'm okay not necessarily moving forward with an appeal tomorrow if, if the rest of the commission feels like we need to hold off to, to look something. But I think we should definitely be doing the groundwork, getting ready for an appeal that I think is probably coming. There's no, doesn't damage our case, doesn't throw us back, anything like that, if we wait till our next meeting to make that. All right. Um, and then also the election. I'm, I'm fine trying to, to see if there's something that can be worked out in the meantime, but I think we should be going ahead and, and giving the, uh, giving everything in motion for moving forward on both of those fronts to, uh, to again make the very clear voice of the people of Gainesville heard and, and enacted. So, is that, I'm, I'm okay not necessarily moving forward on, on either of those today, if you guys wanted to hold off on appeal. But I'm, I think we should definitely be making those plans, because that looks like the direction we're going to be. And that's all I got.
Thank you, Commissioner Engel. Commissioner Buck.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'll start off where you, Commissioner Engel, left off, which deals with the ballot language, and some of the questions you raised were good ones. I, I remember that when we had the GRU authority attorneys here, we actually asked the very question, it came right from the dais, about what language they felt was too vague, not clear, not concise. And I, they declined to provide any of that information. I think that's probably important from a process perspective, because we tried to deal with that, what there might be a challenge. That might be something important factually, and I'm, I'm certain that came up yesterday, but from a, from a standpoint of, um, what might occur, for example, in appellate court, that would be important. When you're, when you're trying to work with another, uh, government entity or quasi-government entity, and you attempt to work something out in advance, they don't provide it, but then they challenge it, it seems like that's disingenuous, uh, to me. And I think that's what you were also alluding to there, Commissioner Engel. There is no particular way, I just heard, to vet language in advance by basically putting it by, like you use the term clearinghouse, but there is, beyond reaching out to our experts that we know, and we have experts in-house also, or attorneys that have dealt with this area of law, i- i- there's no ruling that can be done pre it actually, it being in court. And that's what I heard. Is that accurate?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. And in fact, the language that was produced through this public process was analyzed and assailed by very competent lawyers on the other side, local government lawyers, board-certified local government lawyers. And the issue seized upon by the court was not one, was, the specific language was not seized upon them either. So any sort of clearinghouse that would be available, I, I, unless it involved a judge with this particular set of skills, I, I, you know, you do your best.
All right. And we're going to get basically the full ruling, uh, the writing, and that's going to occur within the next thirty days.
Hopefully. I mean, we will provide proposed orders to the court. At the end of the hearing, the judge was indicating that he was going to draft an order on his own, Mr. Mayor. And then, uh, opposing counsel said, well, we will be happy to supply proposed orders, which is not unexpected, and the judge said, fine, give me proposed orders. But then the hearing ended, so they didn't give a timeline, so we'll talk with opposing counsel to try to set up, let's get that done quickly. I am convinced this judge will act expeditiously. He does seem to be, to work very quickly. And, uh, and so I think as soon as he gets proposed orders, he will turn around an official order pretty quickly. It will be then filed with the court. It will be rendered. The, the clock will start ticking. I'd be disappointed if that wasn't within thirty days, but I can't guarantee that. I think it will be.
All right. So we, we heard everything yesterday afternoon. The GRU authority actually meets this evening, probably will be overlapping at the same time that we have our nighttime agenda, and we'll be discussing this very issue also. Um, so with that, kind of, kind of where I land there for, from, from a challenge perspective or a referendum perspective is, I, I do think we certainly need to be prepared for those things. I don't think that, that we're not in an exigent circumstance today. And so we'll have the benefit of tonight's information. We'll have the benefit of a judge's ruling, um, with, with maybe a little more clarity in writing within some period of time. Uh, certainly groundwork could be laid to make sure that we're not caught unaware. But I, but I would not be in favor of today voting on something without the benefit of that. Does, do you, when you weigh kind of the advantages and disadvantages, is that, how, where, where's, what, what would, how would you advise us there as it relates to decision-making?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I think that's fine. We, we will be prepared for whatever decision this court, this, this, this board makes. The record is complete. There's a court reporter there that will generate a transcript. We will get a copy of that transcript. There will be nothing further needed to do until after the court enters its order. The written official order then will be analyzed closely to see what appellate issues might be. And then we will even perhaps have the, the benefit of, of seeing what the intention of the opposing party is. All that information can come back before you, will come back before you, uh, in time for there to be a decision made to file a notice of appeal. If something absolutely, uh, unexpected were to occur, states of emergency that prevents you from having meetings or something, then we would file a notice of appeal just to preserve those rights. They could always be dismissed in the future if the court, if the board directed us so. We will make sure that, that We will make sure that that absent this board telling us not to appeal, that your appellate rights will be preserved.
All right, so operationally, you're preparing for these these contingencies right now, it's it sounds like, and that's 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 a smart thing to do, that's that's, you know, running a city under kind of good business principles. This this interesting thought about a joint meeting or reaching out or contact, there's probably advantages and disadvantages to that. We had one. There wasn't a lot of conversation at that one, it was both boards. We were all sitting here, and it was very little, there was very little back and forth on that particular day, but we're also in a different posture. It it may be true that there may not be much to gain, but I wonder if 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 merely reaching out has an advantage in and of itself, and also from a process perspective may be advantageous for us down the road to say, hey, we attempted to work out these things. We ask the very questions about perhaps ballot language or or issues, and I don't know, it's 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 interesting. I don't I don't land one way or the other related to that, but I I wonder what what might be the disadvantage to to reaching out there? That's it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Book. I'll go to Commissioner Chestnut, and that's the last light I see, then I'll have some comments, and we'll go to public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I certainly want to preserve the right, definitely want to do that, and I hope we all realize that we will not have an election until August of 2026. So therefore, we're looking at a special election, and if we're going to rerun the language, which I would which I would support. I think that, yes, we should have a discussion with GRU on how they can return to the citizens on their investment in GRU, but perhaps if GRU, if the GRU Board would appoint a staff member and the city look at a staff member, let them work together to see if they can come up with some language on getting that return on our investment back, back to the people, because that is the elephant in the room, getting something back for the citizens for all that they have invested, for a utility that they have owned over a hundred years. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Chestnut. Again, I don't see any light, so I'll give you my thoughts on this, and then we'll go to to the public and come back up here for anything following that. My first thought on this yesterday and where I continue to be is that we ask, even farther back than that, the people came to us to ask to put this on an agenda, a room full of people, people in the community, in Publix, and the checkout line at Lowe's, at Parks, et cetera, came up to me and probably you all as well, and said, please put this on the agenda so that the people can speak. We did that. We had four meetings worth of deliberation on the ballot language itself. I respect the judge's decision, it it is, it exists, and we are given some avenues to move forward with from that. But the people already did their work. The people came to us and said, please put this on a ballot. We put it on a ballot, they went to the polls, and they spoke. More than seven out of ten of them gave a very clear desire to bring this back to the Gainesville City Commission and to disband the the new part of the charter. They've done their work. I feel like asking them to go back and do more work, once again, is not the direction I would like to go. I'm happy to have another election, a lot of elections, but elections cost money too, and elections cost time and effort on on behalf of the citizenry. I would prefer us to say, you spoke, people of Gainesville, and we will support your decision. And their decision was to bring it back, I think we ought to to appeal because of that, because the people already did their work. That would be my choice. If there were a a motion to to move forward with appeal, or at least give the attorneys the opportunity to appeal, I would support that motion. I see another election, particularly a special election, as something that, yes, I would support that if the court did not support an appeal. I think you can bet that the that that the GRU Authority is going to appeal, which means we're gonna have to to pay opposing, we're gonna have to to pay for for all that anyway, on our side at least, and hopefully not on their side once again. I I would note here for for everyone's knowledge that we've been asked to pay for GRU's attorneys, even though they filed the suit, which I find absurd, but that's that's neither here nor there. At some point, that'll be part of the public conversation, but it's important that the public be aware of it right now. We have multiple avenues available to us. I'll bet you dollars to donuts, we are going to to be defending an appeal on the first, if not the first and third points of of this suit. I'm comfortable with 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 that, I'm comfortable with pushing back on and appealing the the second count, but I don't make motions, and I'm not asking anybody else to, I just want you to know that's what what I would would vote for. I have my doubts about asking, I don't know how we would negotiate. I I don't know how we would negotiate. I do know that we have had many negotiations, probably weekly negotiations between on a variety of issues, between our city manager's office and their general manager's office. That is not a new thing, that happens all the time, not always fruitfully, and I I don't know why this would be different. I normally, I love the idea of let's let's have a conversation about things. I we've conversationed to a point where we are where we are, and if it is the will of the commission, we we can move forward with with some kind of negotiation yet to be determined logistically. We could pursue appeals. And Mr. Attorney, my understanding is that that you have appellate counsel, that you've been keeping aware of all this process anyway, is that accurate?
That's correct, and we were, I think we were approved for that some time ago, and really, they've just been riding along just to ensure that we wouldn't have any missteps along the way. We want to make sure our record to be complete in the event we found ourselves in this likeliest of postures.
Very good, okay. So again, I I feel like the people asked us to do something, we did what what they asked us to do, that required that they go do some work, that that the citizens of Gainesville, the voters of Gainesville, go do some work, go to the polls, they did their job, and I feel like that puts it back on us to say, our people did what what they were supposed to do, courts, please reconsider this. That is the direction I would personally like to go, but I will absolutely, obviously, follow the will of of the the commission, and let me remind everyone that two-plus years ago, we had a discussion about the fact that we were going to have to get comfortable with ambiguity as it relates to the utility, and that frankly is, continues to be the case. We are not going to end this quickly, that there is is nothing that we could do, I don't think, that that would end all this by the end of the week. I wish there was a way to to get to something that is mutually beneficial and and move forward, but that's not where this started. This didn't start from a, let's get together and do the right thing by the people. This was, this was adversarial from the very beginning, and it continues to be, and and I'm sorry that that's where we are, I wish it were not. There are many, many things that that we ought to be doing rather than this, but it did not start in a spirit of cooperation, it started in a spirit of av- uh, an adversary spirit, and that is where we find ourselves, and this comfort in a sense of ambiguity is something that we need to be prepared to continue to do for some period of time. So Commissioner Book, I'd see your light on, and we'll we'll get you, and then we'll go to to the public and then come back around. Commissioner Book.
If I do, Mr. Mayor, if there were comments, I'd be happy to wait for those comments since we've all kind of gone around.
Okay, sure. It's a way to hit your lighting, and so it's where you stand on there. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have Janice Gary.
Welcome, Ms. Gary.
Good to see you. I am here as a private citizen today. I just wanted to thank Mayor Ward for your comments on the people's work, because the people did very good work and and resoundingly arrived at the polls because of some of our local institutions that supported that, so just wanted to thank you for recognizing I know that the legislative session is well in place. I am comforted that some of you have talked with our legislative delegation, and they have no appetite for being involved in GRU, but having watched this matter for some time, I don't know if there is any way that another bill could be proposed that would make GRU a separate entity, that would not fall under the city commission and thereby have another avenue for legal complaint, and so I'm just throwing it out there because it lurks in the back of my mind. I don't like to throw out options when there is a complicated situation. I would encourage just considering the idea of negotiating. I've attended GRUA meetings, I've followed the city commission communications with GRUA, and I fully recognize the lack of respect or even decorum in those conversations. But on the other hand, I don't, I I think further thought, I like the idea of taking some time to pause and think further about that as a possibility, because I agree with Commissioner Engel, like a multi-front approach is a great idea. I want you to know how much I appreciate you, and Commissioner Engel, I appreciate your courage in coming on to the middle of this, knowing what you were facing and and being willing to step up for our community, and I appreciate each of you that you have participated in in this path and sought to find the best way forward for our city and our community, and I, as an individual, will support your decisions and will continue to follow this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gary.
As our last speaker, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk, Commissioner Book.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, that was easy enough. Yeah, so it's, you know, here we are, eleven in the morning, and and tonight, we're gonna have the benefit of some more information, I think, because because again, I said, they'll be discussing that, and some of when you make discussions or when you kind of make decisions, kind of when they're hasty, or they're super quick, or they're made almost when there's a when there's not an exigency, but they look exigent, those are often not the best ways to make decisions. So so for today, I wouldn't be in favor of of any motion that that took an action like these two big ones that we talked about, and and it might also hamper our ability in process if we did move forward, potentially meeting with somebody, because we've already taken action, we haven't even heard what their their thoughts might be this evening. And again, that written ruling, I think, will be pretty important. I we probably have ninety-five percent of everything we need to know from that already before it's in writing, but you just don't know, because the judge can put things in there that they did not have the time at that point to discuss, and so I think that might that might be a benefit to us also, and at least a couple of the members of the Authority have changed since that one time that we had a joint meeting, right? There's only four of them, and two are different from when we had a joint meeting, so that's kind of an important consideration also. Doesn't mean our discussions might change, but it means we're not dealing, or we're dealing is the wrong word, we're not we're not interacting with with exactly the same people, so that might be an important point to think, so that's it, that's where I'm that's where I land. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Book. Commissioner Easton.
Yeah, thank you. I think I agree with you, Commissioner Book, I don't know if I want to make any any strong, like any direct motions coming out of the gate, and I do want to point out one other thing about as the GRU, as we had to think about an appeal and the GRU Authority thinks about an appeal, when this whole thing started, we sued over the creation of the Gainesville Regional Utilities Authority. There's nothing else like this anywhere in the United States of America where a state controls large portions of a city, controls their employees, controls their debt, controls assets of a city, I couldn't find it anywhere. Maybe someone else can find something, but there's certainly no utility authority that is like this anywhere, and I don't know if there's any department or anywhere in the United States where a city is permanently under that control. When we lost that, the determination, we had the opportunity to appeal, we chose not to appeal simply because it would throw us into the, throw us back into this back-and-forth discussion, right as we were getting, right as a new board was coming in, right as we were trying to figure out how do we create stability for GRU, and our determination and our decision at that time was that we work for the ratepayers, we care deeply about the city's utilities, and that the people of our city want to see some stability, and constantly having these endless back-and-forth fights is not good for anybody, and I think that's a decision that really that I would like the GRU Authority to determine as they're meeting tonight and as they're meeting in the coming weeks, is how do we want to move forward? I think we're open to having this discussion, I know there's some question as to whether or not that will go in the right direction based on how historically things have gone, but I think that the ball is kind of in their court as to how they want to move forward, do we want to find a way to cooperate, to communicate, or do we kind of want to continue on the same path that we've been on, which is this constant back-and-forth? So I'm comfortable, Mr. Attorney, do you say that you were, do you wanted some kind of a motion to prepare for an appeal, pending an appeal from the, or what what kind of what kind of direction do you need from us at the moment?
Mr. Mayor, I don't think anything is necessary right now. I think we've tried to be fully transparent with the posture we're at now, we will be ready for an appeal if that is what's directed, we will ensure that your appellate rights are not in any way diminished until such time as you affirmatively tell us not to appeal. I think that's the authority we have to to pursue the case. There will be occasion to make that decision. I would seek ultimately direction from the commission to go forward with an appeal, because it is, it's a use of resources, and it's, again, and there are matters of policy and politics in play as well, not just law, that's that's your realm, and but that that decision, that direction that we will ask from you will be better informed, I think it's fair to say, as Commissioner Book was mentioning, after you have an understanding of what, if any, intent is expressed by the plaintiffs, the GRU Authority, they will have a harder decision. Do you appeal or win? Yeah, if you don't, if you don't get everything you want, but you get the fact that they live to fight another day, do you appeal that? That's a that's a more interesting discussion than in the case for you where it is on an issue that I think there's well-established law and that we felt good about our position and appeal is a is it's a cleaner ask than than they will have, but you'll have that information presumably before you have to ultimately make your decision, and it may be such that in at your next meeting, you say, well, if they file a notice of appeal, then then follow suit. That conditional kind of direction is is something that would be on the table for you as well. So yeah, nothing, we we need nothing right now other than to ensure that you understand where we are and that you know that any further questions, you feel free to come to us, and and we will always be available, and that you understand now the timeline, where things are going.
So so as you pointed out, the decision the GRU Authority has to make is, we won, but an appeal is really taking more, we don't like that the people of Gainesville have these rights, we want to make sure that they do not have the rights to be able to change their, like that that's a that's a big decision that would happen.
And and it's interesting, I mean, not to belabor the point, but you went back to even in the wake of the passage of the Act, and and the challenge before the board was the Authority was ever seated, this commission authorized a challenge to the amendment to the charter, and a big part of that challenge was that it appeared that that was that the legislature might have been creating a legislative body. Our point has been, no, that they're they're not, they can't be a legislative body, that would be prohibited, and curiously enough, during part of the argument yesterday, one of their attorneys started arguing that the GRU Authority does have extra proprietary or even legislative powers. I don't think that was the consensus agreement amongst all of their lawyers, because I think that raises, in my opinion, you know, you know, this local government lawyer's opinion, that raises a whole wealth of other problems for for them. But that was a big part of trying to clarify just what the legislature had created here. And I know that the GRU authority, if not this current iteration, the past one, seemed to have taken offense at that effort to get some sort of clarification. But those are some issues that have been clarified. In our mind, it is clear that, and this is also through the involvement of the Attorney General's Office in that earlier case, is that in our, in our opinion, this is clearly, the authority is clearly a proprietary board issuing, using only corporate proprietary powers of the utility and not the legislative powers. And that's a very different entity. We weren't sure of that back then. There have been, there has been some learning, some understanding of the legislation and this uncertainty that the mayor mentioned will learn to live in. We have learned some things, I think, and we will continue to.
Well, then, if we don't need a motion, I guess I won't bring something forward unless someone else would like to bring forward a motion. If we have time, I'm comfortable waiting to see how the discussion goes tonight and then bring that forward at a later date. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Eastman. Commissioner Willis.
Mr. Attorney, just so I understand, if, if the GRUA appeals on issues one and three, do we have to appeal on issue two as well? Or do we have the opportunity to win on issue two just because they said they want to appeal, we continue to defend? Or, you know, we continue along with the process? Is there, or do we have to, from the beginning, say no, we want to appeal on that second issue?
No, we wouldn't have to appeal, but we would be before the appellate court than any event. And that's, now, the interesting thing is I'm not sure how the court would treat them appealing an issue when they want on another issue. That's not our concern necessarily. So, but, yeah, we would, we would be in court anyway. It would seem, it would be our recommendation that if we're going to be using the resources to be defending the portion of the, of the ruling that we prevailed on, let's go ahead and make the good faith arguments that we had that we should have prevailed on, the part that we didn't prevail on.
Okay. And I, I support that idea that if this is going to go through, absolutely, let's say, hey, listen, we still, we think we should have been three for three instead of, you know, two for three.
But you don't have to. That's your.
Okay. And thank you for mentioning resources again. And the mayor mentioned it sort of, but it's not just resources out of your time. If, it sounds like it could be potentially resources. The GRU authority will decide is the responsibility of the city commission to pay for, and then they just won't give us our government services contribution equal to that amount should they appeal on their side. So the resources are not just, it's like double resources according to how the GRU authority determines what they let go of with their, their GSC contributions to the city. Yeah, I agree that the ball is really kind of in their court, but, but for a pre-positive modifier, you know, the courts would have said, no, no, the people who gets, should be making the decision as the voters intended are right up here. So it is kind of in their court. I would, you know, I would hope that they kind of have this thought process of like, oh, no, the government really does think that other people should be making the decisions but for a pre-positive modifier. But, you know, they'll probably appeal. I might, I urge them to not, not, not appeal. But if they do appeal, it provides us the opportunity to go after issue number two because it sounds like we thought we were in the right and it sounds like there's still potentially some case law that will back us up in that. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Willis. Commissioner Engel.
Thank you. Well, as I said, I appreciate your comments on people doing their work. The last time this body voted on this issue, I was sitting in that chair instead of this chair. So this is some involvement with a good bit. And the people have done their work. And I think it's our job to make sure that whatever it takes, the voice of those people gets heard. So as I said, whether that's an election, whether that's an appeal, whether that's an appeal and an election, whether that's some third thing that we can figure out, I think, I think anything should be off the table. Because I think this is a very important issue for our city. And right now, we're looking at budget deficit that is almost exactly what it was that they arbitrarily decided to cut out of the general services contribution. This is a hugely important issue for our city, for our people. Really, there already has been two votes on it. We, we had the same election years ago. I don't know, a couple times now. Our recent city commission elections, this has been an issue raised by several candidates and universally, candidates that ran on a position of backing the GRU authority in that thing have lost the polls as well. The people have been very, very clear on where it is they stand on this issue. And I think it is incumbent upon us to push very hard in any available path to make that voice come into reality. As I said, I'm more than willing to kind of hold off for right now. We're still waiting on some information, both from what the GRU authority reaction is, what the actual words from the judge are. I would really like to hear from our attorney over the next couple of weeks about, you know, best course of action and what options we've got. So I don't think any motion is necessary today, but I think this is a hugely important issue that we have really got to push on all fronts. You know, you, you mentioned learning to be comfortable in this ambiguity, and I'm going to do everything I can to stay uncomfortable in this ambiguity and keep on pushing back against it because this is, this is unjust. You know, like Commissioner Willis said, the people are paying twice for every bit of this, whether they're going to do it through GRU wasting money and charging ratepayers, or whether they're going to do it through double billing the city for the legal authority. You know, I feel like in many ways, the GRU authority's playing with the money's house, or playing with the house's money, and they can do it one over there without much real consequences. So I think it's really going to take a lot of effort from us to get this done, but I think it's very important. That's all I got.
Thank you, Commissioner Engel. So if I don't hear any objections, I will ask the clerk's office to put a GRU update item on the, the GPC agendas for the 10th and the 24th so that there's no question about should we, should we not. It's there. We don't have to use it. We don't have to put that, we don't have to accept that as part of the agenda, but it's, it's there if we need it that way. All right. I'd seen it for the lights. So we've all had a lot to say about it. I look forward to whatever comes neck and next and floating down the river of ambiguity, as uncomfortable as it may be. All right. All right, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, we're on to our next item, 2025-255, City's Greenhouse Gas Emission Report Update with a recommendation the city commission receive the presentation and provide guidance as needed.
Madam Manager, do you want to?
Excuse me. Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, Dan Zhu is here, and she will introduce this item.
Very good. All right.
Good morning. Dan Zhu, Chief Resiliency Officer. I'm delighted to welcome Hank Hattie from Jacobs Engineering. Hank previously served as the Chief Resiliency Administrator for Connetes County, and he has helped multiple cities and counties across the nation. For example, the Miami-Dade County and Key West. I always appreciated his insightful and forward-thinking approach for community resiliency. So we are fortunate to have him joining us today and to share the presentation about the citywide greenhouse gas emission inventory. Now I'll turn it over to him.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Zhu. And good morning. Helping shift gears a little bit, thank you for having me, commission mayor and staff. As Dr. Zhu mentioned, my name is Hank Hattie. I'm a senior resilience strategist and Florida resilience leader at Jacobs Engineering. Happy to say be back in Gainesville. I used to be a resident here when I was in my undergraduate endeavors years ago. So it's been a pleasure to work with the city and to provide services for this, for this project. I appreciate the work that the city has done. And as a former resident, as a former resilience administrator and officer for a co-local jurisdiction in Florida, it's been a pleasure seeing the work of the city and your body actually discuss topics surrounding resilience. And so had a pleasure to do this and I'm here today to bring some light to some of the information. The bottom line of the presentation today, the report and the effort, is that it supports the initiatives outlined in the resilience plan that was approved by this commission. It's also a requirement for the Lead for Cities certification that I believe you all heard about before, right? And then also, this effort is tied to several grants, federal grants, the city has received to conduct its resilience work. And I guess, I'll get it works. Okay. Just for an agenda overview, I'm going to do the best I can on introduction of greenhouse gases and the flow of the work and the framework. I'm going to discuss boundaries and key sources, the results, and then next steps, which will include hopefully working with Dr. Zhu on any follow-up items. And an introduction into greenhouse gases. So we have a list of drivers and also on the screen, you'll see a brief timeline of milestones within the city on its resilience efforts and plans and policies, including things like community engagement. We've had, you've had two vulnerability assessments conducted within this time, two greenhouse gas and emission inventories, and the adoption of the resilience plan. Some success stories included in this effort. We wanted to highlight what the city has already achieved. For instance, LED streetlight effort was a big conversion effort of 30,000 total streetlights. And it reduced the overall electricity consumption, which not only affects emissions, but your electricity bill, right, which is pretty important. EV charging, I think everyone's aware of, the effort for charging, installing EV installations or installing charging stations around the city, excuse me, and then grant funding for new ones, 47 new ones. That's pending right now, but it's, it's on the books. And to be honest, I rented an EV vehicle to come here to see you today. So like, I had to work with Dr. Zhu yesterday. I'm like, where do I find some stations, you know, so on my way out, right? So they're, they're important, not only for residents, but, you know, business travel commuters, things like that. And then waste management. So we've seen a reduction in overall emissions from waste management. And case in point is the pilot waste food program and the composting that has taken place across the city. There's some key terms to know, and I'm going to leave you all with, with all the technical language in here, but we have greenhouse gases, you know, basically they're trapping heat in the atmosphere. The inventory is the process of conducting the analysis, going through the accounting principles, if you will, of the data. We have carbon dioxide equivalents, which are metrics. We have our emission sources, and so that's the source data that we use to do the study. Mobile combustion is fuel that's combusted by, you know, vehicles, transportation transit. Stationary combustion, which is fuels that are burned for, you know, purposes like heating and cool, and steam and energy and whatnot. Fugitives, which I'm glad made it into the slide. So those, put simply, are emissions that unintentionally escape the system, right? So it could be a refrigerant leak, natural gas leakage, things like that. Methane releases from the wastewater treatment plant process, that anaerobic process, methane releases from a landfill. Those are, those are fugitives. And then land use, finally, is the measurement of the change in carbon stocks, which is the amount of biomass or organic matter in the, in the environment and the, in a section of land over, over time. And really, there's, there's two categories of that, the emissions from land use and land change, and then carbon sequestration itself. So to understand, to do the accounting of the emissions, there's three scopes, right? Scope one, two, three. And the way that I see it is direct use, which is scope one. And so that's things that you, as a city government, own and operate, right? And then there's indirect. Indirect is scopes two and three. And so two is associated with purchased electricity, right? And then three is associated from other government activities, such as employee commuting and work, travel, and waste disposal. So now I'm going to go into boundaries and key sources. Put simply, the boundary of the entire effort is the city jurisdictional boundary. And then you have the footprints, right? So the community inventory is the entire geographical boundary, right? And then the government is within that boundary, but things that you control and operate. So those are the, the two main buckets of the inventory for reporting purposes. So what we do is look at that direct and indirect usage, three scopes, one, two, and three, as things are classified for the community and then, and then the government itself. Sources of emissions for the community and the government, some are similar, right? But for the report itself, for the accounting, the analysis, they're broken apart into different portfolios, if you will, according to the scopes that I just mentioned. And so there's no duplication. It's all what's direct and indirect according to one, scopes one, two, and three for both the government and the community. So that's what we see on this slide and why some of the wording is similar across the two. So to get on to the results. So the overall breakdown for the community inventory, we looked, we did some benchmarking with other communities in Florida and other areas of the country. It's not always apples to apples, per se, because you have differences in populations, you have different differences in operations, the amount of assets that you control, the size and the geography of that jurisdiction. But nonetheless, we try to look across similar communities to get some, get some comparisons. It also gives ideas for recommendations and next steps for, for action. What I will say is that there was a total emission, and there's further detail on the next slide, of 2 million metric tons within the community for the analysis year of 2023. That's about 13 tons per capita, per person. The equivalent is 470,000 cars driven in a year, or 5 billion miles driven in a year and, or 2 billion pounds of coal burned, or 420,000 homes using electricity. So that's like the overall footprint of the community with the largest sources seen in the chart here with the mobile congestion, combustion, other fuels, and purchased electricity. And so takeaways from the comparison, not specifically listed on here, but I know what is of interest is land use. And we found that there was a net sequestration of 37 tons, which indicates that the boundary of the community absorbs more CO2 than it emits. So that's a good thing and that's a good, a good path to continue on. Some other changes, we see increases in emissions from the power plant and emissions from mobile combustion. We see, and, and some of that could be from population increases. It could be on increased demand on the grid, for instance. So we're seeing increases there. We're seeing decreases in overall consumption in the city though, so in the, in the community. So while the, I know it sounds complicated, but while the, while there's an increase, increase from the plants, there is more energy efficiency in the homes, so to speak, at the, at the community level. And, and within this, you, you know, we, the next step is to take this, this data and apply it to plans and programs to try to inform community endeavors, right, in the, in the, in the infrastructure. So for the government, so again, we looked at some benchmarking with other municipalities. There's a total of 47 tons of emissions from the government portfolio, which is the equivalent of 0.3 tons per capita, right? It's also the equivalent of 11,000 gas-powered vehicles driven in a year, 52 million pounds of coal burned, or 10,000 homes using electricity in one year. So the way to think about it is your footprint is equivalent to 10,000 homes, right? The largest sources, mobile combustion, purchased electricity, employee commuting, and fugitives, which the data has told us is mainly leaks in the, in the natural gas distribution lines, right? And, and on that note, some of the changes in fugitives between the two years have to do with better data from, from the previous effort and a change in methodology. I would say the biggest reduction that we've, we've seen is the exclusion of the GRU portfolio. So there's that. And so, and so that accounted for almost 90% of some of the reductions that we're seeing. There is lower mobile emissions from the government vehicles. So there's not only reduced fleet use, but EV adoption, right? So, so that's, that's a good takeaway. And there's lower commuting too by employee. And there's a lower commuting too by employees, right? So remote hybrid work that, you know, everyone's doing as a result of COVID. So that impacted the portfolio and a reduction in electricity consumption, right? One of the big highlights being that streetlight LED conversion. So, you know, it's, it's a positive impact and step and something that could be, you know, applied to the rest of the portfolio. So now on to next steps for the city. So I'm going to start with the community. So there's transportation, energy consumption and land use. And we want to try to look at incentives for really all of them, for public transit. I think there should be, there could be, you know, some feasibility studies or analysis for various incentives and programs. And on the, on the land use side, continue the good land use practices, explore leveraging different development or sustainable development techniques, sustainable agriculture, things like that. And then either even solar co-ops, you know, help residents get solar on their roofs were feasible. So energy standards or promotion of energy standards and efficiency programs could be utilized in the community. I know that there's some communities in Florida working with renters and multifamily units and trying to get, for instance, a portable AC unit in their home. So they have a high efficient AC that they use versus however old the HVAC system is that's attached to the building. And then for the government, so I, I think a big takeaway that we had was to continue what you're doing well and then the things that we've seen in, in the success stories. We can think about incentives across the board. And I, I was able to come up with, I guess, some ideas for policies and programs. I know urban forestry and, and tree planting is a, is a big thing for the city. And as discussed in January, right? There's targeted areas for potentially for, for tree programs and whatnot throughout the city to help with that canopy, to reduce heat island impact and whatnot and, and have more stock, if you will, for, for sequestration. Green infrastructure, stormwater management. There's always opportunities for little things like bio swales and community gardens and, you know, the intersection between utilizing nature for infrastructure purposes. Land conservation protection, sustainable agriculture, maybe working with farmers who use sustainable land agricultural practices and farm-to-table type things. Habitat and ecosystem restoration. Green belt planning, which is like a new concept, is basically creating ecological corridors. So that's like a good land use practice. And then building codes and development standards, encouraging or incentivizing things like green roofs, permeable pavement and parking lots and development, which helps with stormwater management. You know, you got some co-benefits here. And then permitting incentives, clean energy, clean energy or energy efficiency plan, smart lighting. A big new thing is in communities is resilience hubs. So utilizing community centers to act as a point of service after, let's say like a disaster event. And so it's, it's literally a hub that they go to for things that they need. And then in the meantime, or before that, it has solar, lower energy use, things like that. So, and then I think, you know, one of the big steps is to institutionalize the data into plans and programs. I know that's what Dr. Zoo is charged with. And an example of that is the resilience plan. And so the GHG inventory and the vulnerability assessments are the baselines for evaluation, performance and improvement moving forward, right? So, and then there's other, other, you know, plans and programs and policies within the city. And, you know, recommendations from this effort can then inform or shape the chapters and the initiatives in the resilience plan, for instance, for the next iteration. So with that, I thank you. I'm here for questions. If I can't answer it, I'm hoping Dr. Zoo can as well.
Very good. Thank you, the terrific presentation. We do have some, some lights up here. Commissioner Engel.
Did have a couple of follow-up questions. You mentioned that EV charging grant was kind of on hold. Do you have any idea what that looks like or is it all kind of a mystery right now?
I do not have the answer. I would assume that.
She does.
Sure.
Yeah, so the EV charging grant is still under review per the executive order. So we still have to wait for further directions.
Very good. But a comparison between kind of government use in 19 and 23, you could see a giant reduction because we took GRU out of there. Do we have any idea of what apples to apples comparisons are in there? You know, if you kind of looked at what the general government was doing previously without having to go back to 19 and take a specific number. Should we have some idea of what savings we're getting?
Yeah, I mean, some of that specific data is in the report. It is, it is hard. But, you know, I'll say formally being in that position, I had to do a similar type multi-year analysis. And even with everything being the same, the data is better in the future, right? So the current year inventory is going to be better than the last, just from a data standpoint, right? And so, and, and you aren't a part of the previous effort as a staff member. So you don't know how that methodology was conducted. Maybe it was done in-house by staff, a different tool, you know, methodology. And so there's that and as a baseline. With the exclusion of GRU, it complicates it a little bit. And because you can't like unwind all of it, you'd have to go back and redo that, that form of analysis. I don't know if you have anything to add on that?
There was only three months of 2023, the GRU was not part of the city, so.
Right.
I'm assuming a big part of that reduction was that they didn't include it in there for all of 23? Or that was just three months worth of reduction in 23?
It would have been all of 23, considering. Yeah, it's, the, the accounting part of this is, is conducted as, as an annual dataset rather than the broken into quarters. Yep.
And then kind of lastly, when we're looking at the, the impact of the community as a whole, big chunk of that UF, they've got their own power plants. They've got, you know, a lot of power consumption on campus, they've got this type of things. When we look at, at the city, trying to get some LEED certifications and those type of things, how much of that plays into, how much is taken into account that some of those are areas outside of our kind of control or outside of the city as far as the certifications go?
Yeah, I, I'll answer and then I think you may have something to add. So I think as far, that comes to incentives, I think, is the easiest way to do it. You know, I know that there's, it's hard to mandate certain things in the community in regards to development, but you can incentivize, you know, for instance, the permitting site development process. So if they, if they go above standard code plus type, type of situation, like, you know, if they, different, there's different degrees of LEED. There's also other different green building programs, if you will. There's code plus site development practices. So if that's being done in the community, right? It could be acknowledged by local government and some type of incentive. And low hanging fruit is like a fee waiver.
So for the most part, we don't have most of those authorities on campus. Right? Like they, they do their own building permits. They've got their own power. They've got their, maybe they don't. But, and, and when it comes out in the community, obviously we've got some of that. As I just was curious as to whether or not all of that got included when we look at the LEED certifications and those type of things. No.
I can address.
That's all I've got.
I can address the LEED certification. So in our current city code of ordinance, we have a green building program, which requires all city-owned new construction or major renovation needs to follow the LEED certification or some similar equivalent green building program. And for the community, that if they follow this program, they can get incentives, which has been already been adopted in the city's code. And in regards to your previous question, the changes from 2019 to 2023. So there are three major changes. First one is transportation. So during this time, we are able to have four electric vehicles and also able to secure funding for four more electric vehicles. And also we recently secured funding for 19 more hybrid vehicles. So that's going to make the changes significantly. And also for the light duty fleet, that currently we have 11 Nissan LEED and also 120 hybrid vehicles out of the 1,080 light duty and GRU and the general government fleet. So that's going to contribute for the transportation reduction, carbon reduction. And then in terms of the waste, we adopted a zero waste ordinance back to 2019. So staff have been working really, really hard on implementing that plan. So therefore we see a huge reduction in the waste. And then on the other side, we also have the energy reduction due to the energy efficiency. So those are the three major area of reduction.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Engel. Commissioner Willitz.
Mayor, I'm still, I'm still a little confused by what data is in here and what is not. I'm sorry that I opened up the full report. I was hoping this report would be a little more clear on what GRU data is in there and what is not. I'm still completely confused at this point. Like just something as simple as fleet on the government inventory side, mobile combustion went down from 35,000, you know, tons of CO2 equivalent to 12,000. I'm hearing that a lot of it is that our fleet has changed a little bit. This is also that just a huge chunk of the fleet for three months is just not in there at the end of 2023.
Yeah. If, if there's items missing in that report that we can add, we can work with Dr. Zoo on that. I think the, the part about GRU from, from what I understand in regards to the calculations is that the, the data was better and, and for, for 2023 across the board. But all, and we were missing some data from GRU and, or the city was rather in 2019. And so a finite comparison is, is hard from that respect. We usually don't see a shift in the inventory, if you will, in the data like, like what's taking place. And so it's not a regular practice, but if there's something missing or more specific that we can include, we'd love to work the city on that.
I think, I guess I just kind of want to know like what part of this data is even worth paying attention to? It sounds like, I'm not, I'm not clear about what portions of this can we say, oh, we're really clear on this part because it's, because it's well measured 2019, 2023. It's well measured, we're very clear. You know, you should, that we can say, yes, are, we, we use electricity? Or, or yes, the other fuels went up? That's my next question. So I just, I'm, I'm still a little unclear. What part of this data is super useful for us to understand? What has happened as opposed to, we're sorry, it's still very confusing because of GRU?
No, and, and sorry if I led you to think that. So I would say that the, the useful data that you have is now, right now, right? Either as, as you, as we view it as a 2023 footprint or, or changes are the existing assets and infrastructure under the city control and what they, what they own and operate, right? So, you know, excluding GRU's footprint, you still have a lot of assets that you own and maintain. And so streetlights is one example, but there's, you know, there's a lot of buildings, right? There's a lot of assets that still need to be powered, right? And, and there could be energy efficiency, energy efficiencies within those assets, right? So that's one. And that's, that's the purchased electricity portion of the inventory. So that's real tangible data, apples to apples, you know, in, in the comparison years for the study. I think also the other components of it, whether you look at transportation or land use, that's, that's still very valid, you know, tangible data where you, there, the city has a fleet that it owns and operates and controls, right? And there is data in regard to the reduction that's been seen on the previous years, whether it's less use or probably more significantly the, the adoption of more EV and hybrid, right? So that shows a good trajectory for reduction in the future years, right? It's a path that you want to continue. And so I, I think there are some, some tangible data items that, that can be utilized with the planning efforts going forward. On the community side, you know, we talked about some of the good things that we've seen in the community portfolio, such as carbon sequestration, right? And the tree canopy and cover, the, you know, land conservation practices. And, you know, there's data even related to, to land use, the, the conversion of land to development or even for an infrastructure project, turning dirt, so to speak, making a road that soil disturbance that, you know, emits carbon and, or there's carbon emission from that. And so that's relevant data that can be used in comparison when you, when you look at improving more the, the community programs or the infrastructure and assets that the city supports, owns or operates within the community itself. So that's, that's what I would like to, to add to that.
Okay. I'll leave with more questions than I started, so I will now want to stop now. Besides to say that just again, number one contributor to community is mobile combustion. Number one in contributing government is mobile combustion with employee commuting combined. And so we just, we cannot kid ourselves that we can plant trees around or we shouldn't, you know, have new housing because trees and greenhouse gas. The number one thing we can do is figure out how to reduce emissions from, from vehicles, basically, whether that is electric vehicles or fewer miles driven because people live closer and they live closer to a bus stop and they can get to where they want. Or we have mixed use, you know, people can get to a corner store. The evidence is clear and particularly because we don't control GRU, the number one thing that we can do, perhaps not, and well, actually perhaps most efficient use as well, is to, to look at, you know, vehicles. So I think this just reiterates it, even though I'm still a little confused about all the data. But the number, the number one thing in both the community and in government is, is mobile combustion. It's, it's what we do with our cars. So thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Willitz. Commissioner Eastman.
Thank you. And, and thank you for all of your work on this. I mean, it's really important that we have some kind of a baseline for greenhouse gas emissions. But I think as Commissioner Willitz pointed out, like what you measure, what you don't measure is, is complicated sometimes, right? And then if that's what you're measuring and that's what you're tracking and that's the direction you're going in, that could determine policy in the future. So on the question of transportation, how do we determine what transportation miles are? Are we looking at people coming from the, commuting into the city? Is it just vehicle miles traveled within the city limits? What does that, what does that look like?
Yeah, so that's a good question. And, and to piggyback, the, the last item too is mobile combustion is large. It's connected to transportation services and land use. It's all very connected to like transit oriented development, things like that will help reduce the footprint. In regards to commuting, we did, for the government inventory, we did look at the actual miles traveled by employees, right? So you get a range of where employees live and literally how far they commute to and from work. The same could be said for the community. However, the data is aggregated by this, we get aggregated data from the state on the average commuting distances for residents in, in specific areas. It, it, it's hard, can't track everyone's movement, so to speak. So those are based on more metadata and aggregated data sets and averages.
And, and so within this data that we have for community emissions, there could be someone living in, you know, Stark, Florida that commutes in potentially would be within that, that total. Which makes sense to me, I mean, well, but then, you know, how much control do we have over someone living in Stark coming in versus? But as you pointed out, because you mentioned green belt planning, that's someone, something that we've talked about as a community since, you know, I think 80s or 90s. We were talking about creating a green belt around there to stop sprawl past a certain point, which would then, you know, how do you build in versus building out? But then sometimes depending on how you measure all of this, it could, you know, if you build a very walkable, you know, building right next to the university, it could either look very good for emissions or it could look bad for emissions, depending on how you're tracking it, what you are tracking. And speaking of that same thing, the food waste, we've, we've worked on composting and food waste reduction, which is supposed to reduce methane fugitives. I think it's the term you guys use, right? How, how do we measure, you know, some of those things that would be, that might, that? Yeah, how, how do we measure some of that, that food waste and reduction? And, or just overall waste reduction?
Yeah, so the, for your government portfolio, the, as you mentioned, the composting program is, is one of the data points to highlight that led to reduction. But there's also a solid waste transfer station, right? That collects the data and then transfers it to landfill. So that's included in the portfolio as well. I think continuing the composting would, would help and perhaps expanding it, right? And the, the, and then also recycling. And I think the main thing is to keep on target towards the zero waste initiative. And I think the main thing is to keep on target towards the zero waste initiative within the limerence of what you can control or incentivize or empower, really, or educate on. So that's, within the city portfolio, that's what could be looked at. For the community, I believe that we did, we're able to get data that there's some methane capture happening at the landfill. So that's a positive thing. There could be other efforts to increase that, to provide other technologies. So you have an overall reduction throughout the community. And I know in different parts of the state, they're looking at like waste energy plants, for instance. And so that would help, you know, from a solid waste standpoint with grid decarbonization, providing what's classified as renewable source of energy for the residents and things like that. So there's like compounding or snowballing impacts the way, you know, depending on how you look at it.
All right, perfect. Thank you, appreciate your time.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Eastman. So clearly, all GRU stuff aside, the most important thing we could be doing, the local government could be doing is changing how we produce energy. I mean, that would be, that's the gorilla in the room. And it, that's huge. And sadly, we've, our utilities have chosen not to pursue solar. And we had a seventy-four point nine megawatt solar program ready to roll that has apparently been shelved. So there doesn't seem to be any positive movement there. The good news is that the next thing is mobile emissions. And we were able to take measures last year that kept RTS healthy. That's huge. If RTS had been materially damaged and we had not been able to continue to have a healthy transit system, that really endangers our ability to have much impact on carbon emissions in general. But we kept it healthy. So the best thing anybody can do right now is not drive your own car, but get on the bus. Because even our old diesel buses are more efficient than thirty people driving their own vehicles. Speaking to everyone at home, if you can ride the bus, please make an effort to ride the bus. Even if you do it one day a week, that makes a difference. So we have a terrific transit system. It isn't perfect. There's a lot that could be done to make it more efficient and more available to more people. But if you have the opportunity to ride it, please ride the bus. That drives our numbers down. And as we, as Dr. Zhu mentioned, bring on more EV buses and bring on more hybrid buses, that makes it that much better. So I'm encouraged to see that that is a thing that we can actually have an impact on in this community is changing the way we think about the commute and using this existing very good, award-winning, I'll add, transit system. So that's a, that's an advertisement for RTS more than anything else. I don't have a question with that, but it did leap out at me that that is among the biggest things that are out there and we can't control it as members of the community. So do we have any, any public comment?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have Donald Shepherd.
Mr. Shepherd, come on up.
Thank you so much.
Name's Donald Shepherd. I'm here to take a say about the EV buses and that. This is what the mayor has brought about. This is something that is needed for our citizens to do, is to ride buses. I used to ride the bus all the time when I was bicycling, but I chose not to now that I have a car. And I'm going to take your suggestion upon that and start riding the bus. I think that will help our city and help our environment. Thank you, Mayor.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Shepherd.
Last speaker, Mr. Mayor.
All right, very good. I see no for the lights. Thank you very much for the report. We do understand that there are going to be improvements from year to year in how we're able to, how well we're able to measure all this and changes in our capacity to have control over things. So it's terrific reporting, gives me something to work with and I think we all appreciate it. So thank you for that, Dr. Zhu, thank you. And I am going to ask that we do some agenda management here since we're up against noon and go ahead and move the sustainable development quarterly update, Matt and Manager, to the first business item in the afternoon. If I'd see no objections? All right, then thank you for your time and attention this morning, and we are adjourned at one o'clock. Welcome back, everyone. We started, we have a few shifts in the agenda this afternoon. We'll need to make space for Matt and Clark.
Mr. Mayor, we would normally be calling the Gainesville history moment, but Ms. Filer, Manie Filer, has had a conflict at the last minute. She may be able to come in later, but she is unable to be here at this moment. So moving on, we had early public comment. I do not have any early public comment cards signed up yet. So moving on to general public comment, we have Natalie Evans.
Welcome, Ms. Evans. Just remind everyone that anytime you're up here, the light system, while the light is green, means you have plenty of time, yellow means you have one minute left, and red means we need you to wrap up, so.
Hello, thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Natalie Evans. I'm a public affairs specialist with the Small Business Administration Office of Disaster Recovery and Resilience. And I'm here to provide information about Small Business Administration Disaster Assistance Program and the reopening deadline. Disasters just don't leave behind damaged buildings and flooded streets. They also leave behind uncertainty, financial hardship, and the challenges start over. This is where the U.S. Small Business Administration can step in. The Small Business Administration has been a key player in disaster recovery, offering financial assistance to businesses, homeowners, renters, and nonprofits to help them get back on their feet, to help them repair, replace, rebuild, and recover after a declared disaster. The Small Business Administration has reopened the deadline for physical damage loans in disaster-affected areas impacted by the federal funding lapse such as those by Hurricane Helene. Relief is still available for businesses and residents. Businesses and nonprofits are eligible to apply for businesses' physical disaster loans to repair or replace disaster damage or destroyed real estate, machinery, equipment, and inventory. Homeowners and renters are eligible to apply for home and personal property loans to replace or repair personal properties such as clothing, furniture, cars, and appliances. Homeowners may apply for up to five hundred thousand to replace or repair their primary residence. Benefits include low interest rates, zero percent interest, and no payments for up to the first, for the first twelve months. No repayment penalty, funds are available even if insurance has not settled. Okay. And for more information, you can log on to sba.gov disasters or call one eight hundred six five nine two nine five five. And I'm just here because we need to help getting information out to the public so that they can apply before the deadline. And also, the reopening deadline for physical damage is April the twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-five, and economic injury is June the thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five.
Very good. Thank you so much for, that's a really good use of the public comment.
Oh, and one more thing, I also handed a clerk some materials and my business cards.
Excellent, thank you.
Thank you, have a good day.
You too.
All right, I have a couple of people signed up that I don't think are in the auditorium, so we will go to Jim Connish.
Welcome, Mr. Connish.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Jim Connish, nice to see you.
I'd like to have the overhead if I could.
Right now, if I don't use any GRU's utility services at all and I factor in a connection fee over twelve months, I take off from a hundred nineteen dollars and seven cents, and over half of that is stormwater and garbage. Thanks to GRU staff pointing out that this high fixed charge leads to disconnects because if you don't pay the whole GRU bill, you're treated as delinquent across the board. And since the stormwater and garbage are attached to the electric meter, they take your electricity away if you can pay everything but the garbage and the stormwater. And it leads to disconnections, which is not good for anybody, sir. This is the most humane thing that you could possibly do for low-income people. However, when this drops off the GRU bill, if it goes on to tax bills upfront, the same local, low-income people who own their homes are going to get hit with a big, huge lot of money they have to pay, you know, or tax certificates will be sold in the spring of the following year. So I would ask you to consider when this change occurs, and I would ask you to actually get it off the bill in January, work all year. I think you have until August to turn in your new rules to Mr. Power, and bill it in arrears so that people have all year to save up for hitting their tax bill. If you're not going to do that, bill it in arrears for the next year. But you have a lot of things to do before it gets on the tax bill, sir. And I'm sure you're aware of that. The ongoing joint decision to ignore the massive SLA losses, it's going to be unsustainable because since two thousand and five, net position has been stagnant to declining, and your debts and liabilities have gone completely off the charts, sir. The minimum debt payment for GRU is backloaded, and you postponed the debt, you didn't pay it. And we won't see twenty twenty-five debt service until twenty forty, except to one, one year. And this is while fifty-one point three percent of the generation approaches the end of their useful life with no firm availability whatsoever on the Duke transmission line, sir. So as with Enron, when you take all the profits out and you put nothing back in, it's a house of cards that can collapse. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Connish. And I would point out to everyone who missed this morning that we don't operate GRU.
That was our last speaker, Mr. Mayor.
Good, thank you. All right, Matt and Clark.
Mr. Mayor, we're moving on to the item that came from the end of the morning agenda. Twenty twenty-five, two six zero, Sustainable Development Quarterly Update with a recommendation, the City Commission here presentation.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, Forrest Edleton is going to come forward. He's the director of the Department of Sustainable Development. And as we have placed on the agenda over the last several years, updates from GCRA Housing, Park and Recreation was, I think, one of the last ones. We do GPD as well as FIRE. I just thought it would be important for us to add another department, Sustainable Development, because they do important work and what they do is an indicator of how economic development is improving or not in our city. And so with that, Mr. Edleton.
Very good, thank you. Welcome, Mr. Edleton.
Thank you, Manager, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity, really. As the Manager said, it has not been practiced historically that sustainable development or the departments that were under sustainable development in the past years have done quarterly updates. I think typically, if you hear sustainable development, it's something that is serious, quote, unquote. But I think that we don't always get the opportunity to say or acknowledge the serious work that we do upfront every day, over the counter with our neighbors and really with each other and our other departments and charter officers. So thank you again for the opportunity to go through some of this. I think today, what I would like to do with your permission, of course, is go over some of the introductions to some of the areas, some of the positions that I'll talk about, some of the areas or the people that get some of these tasks or jobs done. I know that you all know most of, if not all of, this from having worked with it, but I think as the start for these quarterly updates, that might be a great place to really, you know, acknowledge that and then, of course, recognize some of the people that do this work. Going forward, I expect that what this will largely center around is some of the numbers and the data that you'll see on a quarterly basis going forward, but then also that has been included as a part of a report in your backup that is a larger trend of data that we've been able to collect and pull here as far as our specific processes. And that's largely focused on our building permit review and site plan review process, which, of course, again, is only one part of what we do. So, hopefully, we'll be able to show you a broader spectrum of what we do, give you some numbers to that, of course, but then also really get as sort of an intro, if you will, for these quarterly updates what we expect to be able to present back to you as far as the data and the metrics that we're using to provide services better. So, just starting off with that organization chart, actually, this is already not entirely up to date. So, there have been changes that are going on in Sustainable Development, really, that have been planned for quite a while and are by design. So, we've been working for years, of course, to really break down silos. So, you know, close to seven, 10 years ago, really, the focus on that service provision was let's, how can we bring some of these different areas together? Planning, building, code enforcement, and otherwise. So, I'll get into a little bit more of that. But I want to also point out here that there are a couple of areas that we also address. Our City Architect and our Land Rights Coordinator. In the past, the Chief Resiliency Officer, Dan Zoo, who you just heard from earlier today, was within Sustainable Development but is now a part of the City Manager's Office. But of course, what Dr. Zoo works on really, really is intrinsically related to what Sustainable Development and planning does. So, that relationship is still very, very close there. So, I will start off with the Planning Division, but I think I want to give a little bit more detail of some of the changes that have had, so have happened recently in Sustainable Development. So, we talked about breaking down some of those silos. So, traditionally, and what you will see in other jurisdictions is that this Planning Department, Building Department, Code Enforcement, and otherwise are utterly separate areas. You will go to separate windows, at best, in the same room to get some of these services. The idea, of course, has been to how do we bring all of that together? And so, I think Sustainable Development, D S D, as we really call it, it's been forged from those successes of those other departments, but then also has used those issues that the departments feel to make something better, which, of course, Sustainable Development. So, what I like to think of as what we do now is really unique. We get to go from the start, the idea, the concept that you all and our neighbors come up with, and we go all the way to the, where the rubber meets the road and how we also may enforce that or have to maintain that over time. And a lot of jurisdictions don't do this or really don't get to do this. So, really, that Planning Division is in large part where this starts, the ideas. How do we get this concept and ideas down to language and words and text? And so, of course, to do that is a skill set that has to be trained for, that we reach out for, that our organization really hires for. And what we recently have done is we've hired or structured this so that there is a Planning Manager, two Planner Threes, and you can see on the screen here, four Planner Ones, and then we also have Specialists. So, you all have seen that we have issues or items that come up where we have our Historic Preservation Officer that is a planner, but a specialized planner. We have an Environmental Coordinator who also is a planner. Jenny Ford, who is here or was here earlier in the crowd and who I'm sure that you have seen and heard from on items such as special use permits, well-field special use permits, and otherwise. So, traditionally, again, thank you for the patience for me talking through some of this, but planning in other municipalities or jurisdictions has been organized in a comprehensive planning way and a current planning way, and the two sometimes do not meet or do not work with each other. What you might think of is that that current planning is our neighbors that come in and they want site plans approvals, our developers that come in and they want to develop their property, and the users that we have that want those permits and that site review done. That is our current planning. The comprehensive planning is that plan. You all have heard the conversation around this for the land use changes. That is our comprehensive plan. So, that's where those ideas that you all have start. They're vetted, they're reviewed by our staff. So, what we have done recently is tried to, again, break down those silos between the current and the comprehensive. Our planners now do both, and that is an ask, at least in terms of the practice of planning. But what I think that we have seen, and I'm very proud of, is that our planners can do everything that planning does, and we also have our Specialists. So, you've seen some of the numbers here. These are our quarterly numbers. In the report that you have, that goes back farther. That data tries to show some more trends. So, what we are doing here, actually, this is from the beginning of the fiscal year because this is our first quarterly, but we've been past that number of months. So, this is from October. So, from the Planning Division, we've had 133 projects and 184 First Steps. Those First Step meetings are our pre-coordination meetings with applicants before they even submit anything. So, these are going to be projects, again, on the planning side that are, may need to have a site plan review or something to that effect. What we do and what we encourage is to meet with our staff first. And we have a staff that is designated to this across multiple departments. And I would be remiss if I did not recognize other departments, of course, that are part of all of this process. So, we have, in those First Step meetings, really, our first line of decision-making staff that can say, here's what you can expect from the process, here is what you can see or the level or the area of code that you should be looking at to make your project the most successful. The joke has been in the past, and I hesitate to even say it, that this used to be First Stop. That is absolutely not the case currently, and I think that you will hear that about our First Step program, is that this is really where people find out the most effective information that they can have to start getting their ideas moving forward. We've had, so what we also do, of course, is those Advisory Board and Board Meetings. So, we have the Plan Board, the Development Review Board, and we have the Historic Preservation Board. And of course, we offer advice to other boards when they need or ask for the planning advice. So, since October, we've had five Plan Board Meetings. The number of petitions that have been reviewed in those five meetings have been 20. And now, for my own personal experience, and we'll have to go back and look at the, some of the data on this, that's a lot this year. So, for whatever reason, we have seen a fair amount of petitions in this F Y come through the Plan Board, and we'll talk about a little bit more of that when we see the data. The D R B Meetings, we have had four. That's the Development Review Board Meeting. That Board is more of a review of the land development code rather than more of an Advisory Board, and that's an oversimplification. But that's probably going to be a helpful introduction here. So, projects of a large size go before the Development Review Board Meet, Board, and they are reviewed whether or not all of the parameters that have been presented under code have been met and that they're acknowledged by both staff and this Review Board. The D R B also does variances. So, if there are areas where the code is unclear, for example, or there are a outlying hardship, that Board also looks at those. The Historic Preservation Board reviews items and issues in development that are within our Historic Preservation Designated Districts. And I won't go into that in a lot of detail here, but you've seen that we've had the four meetings. There have been three petitions reviewed, and the certificates of appropriateness since October are 141. So, just to, maybe some perspective on that again. You can see that there is one Historic Preservation Officer and that that Board has looked at or reviewed in some manner or another the 141 items. So, of course, again, the Planning Division does, does a lot. So, it is also the lead in engaging with the University Park Neighborhood Association as part of the Community First Program. And of course, our Code Enforcement Office has been a major part of that initiative as well. The Planning Division has, of course, been key in implementing a lot of these policy ideas, such as the inclusionary zoning policy, changes to single-family zoning, the review of the Development Review Process and our data. And that's where I'm going to get into a lot more detail with the report that was in your backup. And then, of course, we are continually, continuing to finalize the comprehensive plan redraft. And so, that plan, again, forgive me, I'll give a little bit of an introduction, although I know that you all are familiar with this. But this comprehensive plan, if it's helpful, the city has a lot of plans, and we work on a lot of projects. And one of the ways that I like to sort of put this is that if we do, as a body, as a city, have a collection, then the comprehensive plan really can act as the librarian. It tells you how to use all of these other plans. It is, of course, its own plan and concept, but it tells you how to use what is in your collection. So, as we have been working through this redraft, we're really wanting to make sure that we look at the existing plans, our strategic plan, our eastside redevelopment plans, our resiliency plan that you heard about earlier, and making sure that that all touches or is addressed with the comprehensive plan. The large part or the large reason that we do this is that the comprehensive plan is the one that has the force and effect of law. It is required by state statute. We have to, as a city, have the comprehensive plan, and it has to speak to particular areas, again, as required by law. Our jurisdiction, our city, has some areas that we have added to the comprehensive plan, which we are allowed to do by statute, and they also have effect by virtue of being in the comprehensive plan. So, this is really largely the most effective vehicle that you have in a lot of areas. And I think you heard this earlier in the presentation from the resiliency plan. Also, some of these areas, where does the city have its most effect? And one of those was land use. Land use is, through the comprehensive plan, something that is a very, very powerful tool that you all, by statute, have a lot of purview over. So, just really quick, we also, of course, visualize planning. I just want to use the opportunity to say that the city has a lot of mapping resources, a lot, online. There are some links here. Our Planning and Development Page shows some of them. But again, we have a lot of data. We show it through our G I S systems, and we show it through a lot of different mediums. Please reach out to Sustainable Development, and we can show the public and others how we can get to some of this mapping and visualizing our data. So, the Building Division. Now, moving on from planning. I talked about how you get the ideas, and now you actually build the stuff. It is really our built environment. It is sort of the rubber that hits the road. Our Building Division is our 16 Trade Inspectors. We have Plans Examiners that review those plans. We have six Permit Expeditors. Those are the people that really are intake people. They're the people that you walk into the building and really make the machine work or start working, if you will. Also, we have our Development Review Coordinator, and I wanted to point this out earlier as well, that the planning side also has a Development Review Coordinator. How do we make all of these pieces and people talk to each other? It is our coordinators, and those are new positions as well. And I do have both Maria Cooper and Miranda Seeran in the room with me. You've seen their names on the cover of this Development Review Report. They really are the ones that have brought the data and the coordination to this process and are, have been essential to how this, the wheel turns, really. So, we still, we've got some long-scale, ongoing commercial projects in town. The North Florida Hospital Project over where we have also been looking at having new fire services. The Evergreen Apartments near Oaks Mall. We have seen new life, if you will, to those projects, and that is moving forward. 931 is still moving forward. The 20th Avenue Apartments, and of course, the E Hetty and Cornerstone Site. Those are going to be projects and sites that you will continue to see for the, certainly, the fiscal year and upcoming months. New subdivisions. We still have the Finley Woods, Oaks Preserve, Grand Oaks near Tower Road, and Hartwood is continuing to be worked on. So, to start giving an idea of the quarterly numbers, 3,799 total permits from the Building Division. So, the processing gets into the thousands in this division. Now, a lot of that is over the counter. These are things that don't get reviewed, that are easily issued, again, over the counter. Again, and that this is where Permit Expeditors are critical function for that initial intake, for how these things are processed. 12,000 inspections completed, more than, and of course, climbing every day in the thousands between our 16 staff. New single-family dwellings, of course, important to be able to keep looking at that trend. 75 or 79 new single-family. 17 demolitions and 19 new multifamily buildings. So, again, tying this into code enforcement, again, this is sort of the maintenance of things. This is also where the rubber meets the road, but maybe where, how does our tread look? What is the rubber that we're putting on the road? And the maintenance of the things that we are asking both of ourselves as the city but of our neighbors and our citizens as well. So, you'll see that the voluntary compliance is our highest priority. We get a lot of cases that are called in, and you'll see some of that data here also. But the first thing that we, of course, try to do, one, is make sure that that's something that is actionable. But then, two, make sure that it's something that maybe just a conversation can help. And the vast majority of what we work with is where a simple conversation helps. We initiate and proceed that way and have cases resolved by that simple conversation. I will skip down to some of the things that our Code Enforcement also works on because it is varied, but it also does not cover everything. So, we do cover animals in the Chapter Five or animal nuisances, property maintenance. So, a lot of the things that you typically think of for code enforcement, that's that property maintenance code. Nuisances, the peddlers and solicitors and canvassers. Those are, you know, where there are sales that may be happening on sidewalks or right-of-way. Abandoned vehicles, that is one that we get a lot of calls with. And two, certainly recognize here that we work hand-in-hand with G P D on how we deal with a lot of these issues. And then, the land development code. Again, this is where, from the ideas to the planning, now to the code, how do we make sure that this is or is not working from the ideas that we all have had for what our city and our neighborhoods should look like? So, 801 cases assigned, 635 closed. So, you can see the large majority of those we work through very quickly. One, reduction rescissions. Those are ones where a applicant, for whatever reason, comes and says, I've worked on my property, please reduce these fines and liens. And then, we have the ability to reduce those. So, we've actually only had the one, which I will credit to us resolving things ahead of time. 19 Special Magistrate Cases in the five hearings. We did have one of those hearings that was a lot of cases, and both credit to our code officers and our administrative team for getting a very large docket done, but to our Special Magistrate as well. And then, 11 demolitions of dangerous buildings. You all were, we'll call conversations, certainly, from the former social security site near G H S. But then, of course, on, every now and then, there will be buildings or sites that come up to your attention that are these dangerous or hazardous buildings. We have over 40 of buildings that have been designated as such as dangerous. We also tier those as far as priority. And so, of course, our demolition budget We also tier those as far as priority, and so, of course, our demolition budget, having its own limits, we work with those most dangerous buildings to start to will down or work down on this list. What I can say that, and you've heard me say this before, is that having that ability in the department has really, really helped us with the ability to get the private property owners to address these dangerous structures themselves. So what I mean by that is if the city, if we are able to say, "If you do not remove this dangerous structure, we will," and then that will, of course, be assigned as fines and liens on your property. Most property owners don't want that, because that inhibits the way that they can use or sell their property. And it has great, has had great effect. So our special projects, of course, we have been very involved in the street redesigns, the design discussion for the City Hall Plaza. We are, of course, very involved in the sidewalk cafes and conversations about sidewalks themselves. So we are looking at how we can continue to enforce those, those ordinance where they are needed or where they are required, but then also, through our special projects, provide the helpful design hand where maybe we have not as a city before. So I think a lot of these conversations are starting to steer towards what do we want to see visually or physically on our streets or in our neighborhoods? And we have the resources within Sustainable Development to provide a good bit of that advice. So that is the end of what, like I said, will be a presentation that's going on, going forward, but there is, as a part of your backup, the Land Development Review Report. And I won't go through it, you know, detail at this point in time, but as I discussed, I expect to continue to do that and bring up this data going forward, that this will be largely what this meeting, again, with your permission, is focused on, is what is the data that we're seeing, what does that mean for how we are doing our business and how we are providing our services? So I will just run through these very quickly and then open it up for questions. So again, to separate this out a little bit, we do have, of course, a lot of variety of what the city looks at every day, down to very small building permit, that's something simple that can be issued over the counter, to skyscrapers. So the site review data is largely on that, that bigger side, the planning review side. So you'll see that we've got data here going back from two thousand twenty-two and the number of these development orders issued. What the review cycles is trying to tell you here is that we can track that. We have software that tracks when an applicant submits something, when it gets to us, when we respond back to them, whether their application is complete, and it lets us say what code requirements have been met or have not been met. And we can track that down to the day and the second, and who did it, and who did it when. What we really, again, as a part of this, want to do is use that data, use that power to start informing how we do our practice and even, you know, inform how we engage and provide service to our neighbors. So this number of cycles is when you submit something, staff looks at it, they review it, see if it is compliant for building code or site plan review, they tell you what is and is not, and then you resubmit that. So that's one cycle. What we shoot for is between three and four cycles currently. And so we'll keep bringing that up so that you can see what we are doing as far as our, our metrics that we're using, whether or not those metrics make sense to you all, and we'll be reporting back to you, you know, at, at least what effect we're having on these sort of metrics. So you can see we've got task turnaround time, that is where the different areas or the different partners in this are having their, their typical days for a response. And you can see right here off the top, a big part of this data is accountability. So planning has a big number on here, which, of course, is under Sustainable Development. Planning then now saying, "We can probably do some things to reduce these turnaround times." Planning is the agency or the department that is tasked with being the, the lead coordinator for this. So oftentimes, the Planning Department has to respond after hearing the technical input and feedback from other departments, so that may be one of the reasons that this is a longer time here, but now that gives us the information that we can take to look back to see if that is the case. What I also want to point out, of course, is that the applicants are part of this. This does not mean that we're trying to show that on the applicant's side, you know, there's nothing that the city can do. This is what shows us as service providers that we can reach out to those applicants and help them with reducing their turnaround times, and we've already had very good success with that. So we're looking at the same thing for a building permit. I'm going to go less into detail than I just did, because we're trying to say the exact same thing with a, a similar data, but I do have to point out again here, for that total building permits issued that we're looking at going back to two thousand twenty-two is twenty-seven thousand four hundred and eighty-four. So at the end of this report is the review coordination efforts, and that's where I'm really starting to speak to how do we both take ownership of the service that we're providing and also encourage others to be a part of this service? So we coordinate, again, with our Public Works, GRU, and a variety of other divisions and departments, including Elachua County Environmental Protection for some of our cases. So we work even outside of our municipality, we work outside of our charter officers, and we work certainly within divisions for each other. We have coordination meetings where we talk about whether this is working or not for any of us, and that really has been, I think, the, one of the most helpful things as a part of this digital review that we have had. So rather than when problems come up, two staff members trying to hash something out, we are as multiple departments and service providers having that conversation. I, I had a debate about whether or not I should bring visual props to this, but going all the way back to before our digital system that we have now, we used to have paper, of course, and we had rolls, and each one was about yay big and weighed about six to eight pounds, and we had to have sixteen of them for each cycle. So you heard me talk about the cycles. You can imagine the amount of paper and the amount of rolls and the amount of actual, it was people's specific jobs to run these rolls of paper back and forth. So we don't do that anymore, obviously to the better, and that is something that we're continuing to try to work from through these services and our systems that we have, to continue to reduce that, that kind of effort that is no longer needed. We do also, I want to just point out, some of the things that we do that, they're titled accommodations here in this report, but they're things that most jurisdictions do not do. And so I want to make sure that I point those out. I did talk about the first step meetings. Again, this is before you pay your money, before you put your application in, the city provides decision-level service and feedback for your project, before you pay anything into it at all. It is an advisory service. You are not even required to do that until after, you know, after you make application formally. We, of course, visit sites, we provide that advisory opinion on some of the issues that are happening on the sites. One of the things that I think is extremely powerful is that we will do concurrent reviews. So you've talked, you've heard me talk about, planning does review at a site level, building does a review to make sure that your building is a solid and safe building. We will do both of those reviews at the same time. Most jurisdictions cannot and will not do that. You have to have one approved before you will do another. I think that that is one of our most powerful services that we've seen, that we can provide. It really reduces that timeline and predictability, and I think you will probably hear from our development community and even the full scale, from the smaller developers to the larger developers, that just having that predictability and that I can get something started helps I think that that is largely it. There are recommendations here going forward. That first step meeting, we think that we can do better with first step, that we can actually help people provide even more helpful information, even though it is not required, but we think we can put that information out there to say, "Here's how you will get the most out of this free service." The project coordination meetings, right now, we largely have left it in the private side's hands to manage their own project. So when there are conflicts or where there may be comments on some of these larger developments that need someone to pull things together, in a lot of ways, the private side has been left to do that. What we are moving towards now is not leaving that in as much as reasonable and possible in the private side, that we are at least saying, "Here is what the next best steps for your project, in as much as we see it, are." And hopefully that that will provide, again, just a service that is an optional service or information to some of our, our developers moving forward. I do have on the report here increased planning staff. Of course, as a director, I'd be remiss if I didn't have some sort of ask like that, but i- in more seriousness, I think what, trying to show here as well is that on the planning side, we are not only seeing a lot of increase in our actual development review, but a lot of the increase in the requests that come through and from the Plan Board and the Advisory Boards, including the Downtown Advisory Board, at least in terms of the sidewalk cafe or street redesigns, you know, in addition to our looking at the additional development that we're seeing of a scale. And with that, I will leave it for any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much. That's a terrific overview, and we, we do have several, several lights up here. Commissioner Willis.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, Mr. Edleton. I question, I know this is an update, but there is a small ask in there, and I, I was wondering about, is, is your first need for planning staff or code enforcement officers? Because I know that in some of our cutbacks in the past two years, and your department has felt some of that, codes, I think, planning as well, at least planning position, if I remember right, I think. But the thing I hear most back from people in the community is more like, codes officers could probably help them, because they want quick, fast, they want resolution to, to things they notice, complaints they notice, and so I just didn't know whether codes or planning, where is planning really where you feel like you're, you're next, you know? If you had additional funds, that's where you would hire?
I think you could, Mr. Mayor. I think for the point of this data for development review, if there is an ask for more effectiveness for development review by itself, that the most effective would be an increase in the planning staff position.
Okay. And then I'll just say, I know, I, I was pleased to see one of, one of the maps, it's part of the GIS, if not necessarily, it's Sustainable Development, but getting the ADA parking spots on a map where people can go to our website and say, "Oh, that's where they all are downtown." It was a really nice layer, so that way, I think we match now with what the county has. It was nice to see that layer, so now people can know ahead of time where they go to park, so I really appreciate seeing that. Thank you, Mr. Edleton. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Willis. Commissioner Eastman.
Yeah, thank you, and thank you, Mr. Edleton, for, for going over everything. I think the Planning Department's one of those things that, I mean, it's one, it's one of the few things you don't see, like even, you know, planners in transportation, obviously it's not police, fire, it's not one of the services that are provided, but it touches on so much in our community, the, the more efficient that you guys are sort of working all between all of the departments, that means that, you know, small business owners that are getting their, getting their businesses up and going, I mean, it's really critical for that level of economic development, it's really critical for just making sure that we have affordable housing, making, that we're moving through these review cycles in a very, in a, in a rapid pace, you know, that we're just being thoughtful about how we're doing development and that we're not, that there aren't, you know, mistakes when things are coming in there. And so, uh, thank you for all the overview, and thank you for all the work for your staff. The, I'm curious about the, so I, I'm really glad that you went over the, the permit data and all of this, this is something that I've been asking staff for, because I've heard, I know this is always like this, but as people are coming in, they'll want a permit, they'll say, "Well, you know, I might have gotten held up on this part of the process or that part of the process." And sometimes it can be hard to tell whether or not there's, you know, a problem that's, what, if, are things being held up because things are complicated, or things being held up because, you know, the, because our staff needs to be getting on that more quickly? Have you seen within the site, some of the data that you brought forward, how this compares over time in terms of the turnaround for, I, you've mentioned a bunch of different things from site plans to building permits, a minor, major, but when you guys looked over all of this, have you seen any change in time for, for the speed that, that people are getting their stuff back?
If I'm understanding the question correctly, the more that we have used the data that our system is giving us to inform the way that we provide these services, the more we've seen the improvement.
Okay. So, so you think you've seen, you, you've seen an improvement over time?
Yes, absolutely.
And, and, and I appreciate all the, and, and some of the stuff you guys put forward in terms of ways that you can try to improve the process. I also noticed that Public Works is, is here as well, and, because your department oversees sort of the process between it, but, you know, Public Works and of course GRU is the other one that's in there. I don't know, Mr. Singleton, I, I don't know if you've taken a look at some of the, the permitting data, or if you have done any work internally to talk about the process for how you guys are doing things and trying to move these things through more rapidly?
Good afternoon, Brian Singleton, Public Works Director. Similar to what Forrest indicated, you know, as, as we use the data more, we are seeing an improvement. One of the things that, you know, I really instill with my staff is that we're, we're partners in delivering these projects to the community and making sure that we provide timely feedback. Also, you know, we are, we are people, sometimes we, we miss things, and if, you know, we find something in a later cycle that's not related to public health, welfare, or safety, to continue to move the project on instead of, you know, turning it around for another cycle for something minor. So, you know, it, we are, are working on ensuring that we are partners in, in delivering these projects in as most timely fashion as we can, the most cost-effective fashion that we can, while still ensuring that we comply with the comp plan and the code, and all the things that the commission has and the public has asked us to do.
Yeah. No, thank you. And thanks for continuing, uh, thanks for doing that work, thank you guys all. Like, like I said, this is one of the things that we'll hear a lot of feedback on over time, that folks will be in their, you know, fourth, fifth review cycles, and they'll have the loan on the front end, they'll say, "Well, I have the loan to, you know, fix up this old, do an adaptive reuse of a cool building, I want to do this cool thing, I want to make sure this gets done, but, you know, it's sitting here, how am I going to make sure, you know, that the loan, that, that, that we can spend the money that we have to do the things that we want to do?" And so continuing to make that process more efficient, I think is really important. So thanks for bringing that, and you said you're going to continue bringing this data forward to us over time, right? All right, perfect, and that's great. All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Eastman, and Mr. Ringel.
Yeah, I'm going to say my experience, personally dealing with the building department here has been excellent. That first step meeting is a great thing that we do. That amount of coordination for somebody who's not used to going through this problem, isn't really like a developer and just trying to figure out what they can do, was hugely helpful. And comparing that to my experiences in other areas where you're getting four different answers from three different departments on how to move forward with something, you take one step forward and find out that, well, that doesn't fall under this department's purview anymore, they don't think you should do it that way, and having to redo all those things, but none of that dealing, dealing with the building department here, and except with even the little minor things we did, like a, we're going to rebuild the lean too on the side of my union hall. The amount of resources we got from the city on that first step meeting, the, the staff from multiple departments that came in to make sure that we knew what our options were, we knew how to move forward, really helpful, I think that's something I'm, I'm really proud of us doing, and as a, going forward with that type of mindset, I'm just really impressed with. So thanks.
Thank you, Commissioner Ringel, Commissioner Nick and Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So everybody's thanking Mr. Edleton, and I want to chime in on that as well, but I want to do it also from the perspective of not just seeing a great presentation and report today, I want to do it from the standpoint of a personal observation. So as you know, a few weeks ago, I asked you into a meeting where I was responding to some constituents, and I want to thank you for this, because what I'm looking at here in this report, I think, is the culmination of not just your staff and your ability to do the work, but your ability to listen and respond, and that's very, very important. I know that some of the decisions that you've made here to modify some of these things, like that first step process, are in direct response to what some of our neighbors have been saying. Let's streamline or let's improve and make a little more easier our processes so that they can push forward projects that do help us as a commission to meet our goals in affordable housing and everything else, so I wanted to say thank you for that. I can really appreciate, too, something that I don't believe that was in the report, but that we did discuss. but that we did discuss in that meeting as well, which is the implementation of a checklist for some individuals that stated that too would be an added benefit. So thank you all around for, um, doing good work, but also for being responsive to the needs, uh, that the folks that are trying to get good projects off the ground, um, are, are asking us to do. So I really, really appreciate that. I did want to end with just a question, this just kind of a status check and then, uh, update on when the commission can expect to hear the equitable development status.
So largely have to leave that answer to, uh, Mr. Fullston, but we are assisting with that, that development of the equitable development framework.
Okay. Thank you. And I'll, I'll definitely circle back with them, but I do know you're involved and I thank you for that work too. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Decken Walker. Uh, is there any public comment on this?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. Um, oh, I apologize. No, not on this item.
Okay. All right. Very good. Uh, thank you, Mr. Edleton, and thank you to the entire staff. This, uh, you know, does not happen in a vacuum. Uh, you all are, are very often the, uh, in many ways, the, the, the face of, of the city of Gainesville to a lot of folks. And, uh, that, that is often a difficult face to present because there are rules behind what you're doing. And not everybody's always happy with rules and, and, and I appreciate and understand that. Uh, thank you, as Commissioner Duncan Walker mentioned, for being, uh, responsive, for being self-reflective about this enough to, to use the data and, and let it guide what we need to be doing and changes that, that we need to make. Um, we, we've had these discussions going back a little while about how to report this forward and, and what it, what stories might it tell and how do we respond to those stories? So thank you for, for being willing to, uh, to take part in, in that process on a continual, ongoing basis of continual improvement. So, thank you.
Madam Manager, thank you.
Right, I think we're good.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we're on to 2024 322 alcoholic beverage establishment tax amendment, with the recommendation the city commission discuss and provide direction to staff.
All right. Mr. Edleton, you're back up.
So now I just have to really tie all of this together. Um, so, and actually I think that I can, uh, to be honest. So this is one of the items that really was initiated by the plan board as an advisory. Um, we have provided for, as staff, some feedback within the meeting, uh, as a part of this item, or at least that general sort of feedback. But what staff would like to do is get direction on whether or not we should devote more of these resources and staff planning time to this item. Um, so I, I think with that, I can go through some of the slides here just to be able to show that really initial, um, knowledge that we have. And then also that, that initial, uh, concept that the plan board, I believe, is, is putting before you all. Uh, and then again, just to get some direction from you all, um, staff's next moves. So the proposed changes are currently, there are distance separation requirements for those alcoholic beverage establishments, and that's a way that planners say bar. Uh, we typically think of that or use that as 50% of your sales are in alcohol versus food or something else. Uh, but to you all and layperson, that, that's a bar. So the, uh, distance there, the 400 linear feet from schools, 300 linear feet from, uh, churches. We get into whether you measure that from door to door and things like that. But, uh, I'm willing to go into that if you all want. But, uh, I think that's one of the things that we will bring back to you. Uh, where this could be affected is the business industrial. You see the, uh, the tourist, uh, oriented business BT, BUS, our mixed-use districts. And then in our urban seven and eight, in the seven and eight, um, i- is one of the more intensive uses or high-density uses that, that you will see. So the, uh, language to remove, and I believe that this is what, uh, at least to date, that the plan board has presented, um, for, for changes here. And that is just to remove that distance requirement. So what we would like to, you know, of course, do the research, do the history. Sometimes, certainly as planners, and then again, as laypeople will dive into this and look and see like, why is this here? What does this even mean? Why is it 400 feet or 353 feet? Um, there's usually an answer for that. So we would like to do that kind of research. We would at least like to present that all to where, uh, we know where this, at least that the genesis of some of these things were. And then of course, bring it up for discussion, whether or not that makes sense today or whether it does not. Uh, whether or not there's outreach needed, uh, of course, running it by whether or not we're allowed to do some of these things. Uh, policy, whether it fits again within our comprehensive plan and guidelines that have been presented there. And then exactly what effect do we think that that may have in our land development code? And then the way that we are trying to develop or design our downtown. So just things that, uh, from the planning staff review side, we have not had the opportunity to devote the resources to yet, but did still want to get that conversation out in front of you. So with that, uh, that is, uh, the plan board's recommendation, which is to remove that requirement. And then staff would like to have the discussion.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Edleton. We have a number of lights. Uh, Commissioner Book.
Mr. Mayor, yeah, I, I think it's always great when we have ideas that are coming forth from our 25-plus boards. I think it's very helpful because that's what they're supposed to do is be looking for solutions and things that, uh, you know, that, that we may not be considering. In this particular case, if, could we go back to the map? I think that's always helpful. That was my number one question is where does this potentially impact, um, areas of the city? Because in my estimation, it's, I, is it all the green? It, it's basically all the areas that we've got highlighted.
It's the areas that are not white. Uh, you know, I know it's from the distance here, it's probably not that easy, but.
All right, so it does. Yeah, so it affects quite a bit areas. It's kind of like when we, we've dealt with the comprehensive plan of past in general. Um, I, I think it's always better to deal with a comprehensive plan as a comprehensive plan as opposed to, um, incremental changes that all, all of a sudden affect kind of a wide swath, large-scale area, which is like this one. Did, was this identified as a problem that we, that we were looking to, to figure out a solution? I just kind of looking for a little bit of the rationale for how this came forward out of the plan board.
The general feedback from the plan board is that they would like to see more flexibility in uses.
All right.
In more areas.
Uh, so we didn't have, for example, a citizen complaint or a neighborhood or something, business district telling us, hey, this is overly burdensome, it's overly bureaucratic or something like that.
Not to my knowledge as a direct process of the plan board.
That's all I can think of right now. I think, I really just was trying to figure out how to, how it came forward. And we, um, I, I don't feel like we currently have a problem as it relates to this. And I, I think that there's probably, when you talk about schools and children and, and churches and faith-based, those are some, some pretty important communities that you try and provide buffers against other uses that may not be compatible. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Book. Commissioner Willis.
Mr. Mayor, um, I had a similar question about whether this is a, you know, a, a solution in search of a problem. But I understand that it, the flexibility of, of the future is what it is. And that's what, you know, we do with, with comp plan and plan, you know, the plan board. It is, it is the, the future. It's not so much the past. Uh, and so I, definitely on the churches, it makes a lot of sense that we should, we should not be denying someone else the right to do with their property merely because someone else wants to, uh, exercise their, their freedom of religion. When it, what is the legal definition of a church? Do they have to own the building or if they rent a storefront? Can, can someone just go rent a storefront and deny properties within 300 feet the ability to do what they want to do?
Mr. Mayor, no i- is the short answer to that. We do have a definition under code that it's for places of religious assembly is what it's called under the land development.
So it could be a rented storefront?
It can go where those places are allowed by zoning, yes.
Okay.
In some cases, those are rented storefronts.
Right. And that's, and I think that's what I want to mention with this. Cause all of these are business kind of district and people are like, well, is this really going to be much of an issue? Um, but the ones down in South 13th, you know, with that, probably within about 400 feet of my, of my home, um, there's a storefront church in a strip mall right next to a Domino's Pizza. And that Domino's Pizza just as easily could be, you know, a little pub, you know, that serves, you know, beer and some sandwiches. Um, and so that's, that's why I think it would, it makes sense to remove this. Definitely for the churches because I did, someone else's, you, um, someone else's decision, a person's decision to exercise their right to, to religion should just really have no bearing basically on everybody else. Uh, that's what, that's my opinion. Um, the schools, I thi- I think it's more of a, it, it's more of an interesting conversation to have, um, about whether the 400 feet for churches in particular, um, because it is as easy as setting up a storefront church. And a lot of these, we're talking about mixed-use, low-intensity, general business, uh, business industrial. That's where you have kind of non, let's say, non-traditional churches that aren't building a big building.
I- if I may, just one, uh, additional point is that a church, a new established use would not negate an existing.
Right, an existing. But as, as people redevelop different areas, someone who has a property that is thinking about it or would like to sell their property to something, and they could be well on a, on a path for that, and someone starts a storefront church. Or just says, are, we need a, uh, satellite location for our youth group to meet. And now that storefront is now a, a religious assembly site while someone else had a plan with it. So I, I particularly think for the churches that we, there should, that should, we should get rid of that. Um, because it's, that's, it's too flexible for someone exercising religion to affect other people's property rights. And that's, I just, um, I refuse to let someone else's religion determine my rights. Um, so I think that's one that really, I really strongly support, uh, what the plan board has come forward. Schools are open for the conversation about whether, you know, it, this feels a little more sensitive to me. Um, at the same time, I know that the data on teen drinking is, is going down and they, they get their kicks, uh, probably through marijuana and other substances, which I'm, I'm a little more concerned about that. Uh, but I think that's all the questions, um, I have for now. I would definitely give you support, definitely removing the church distance requirement. Um, school, a little, uh, interested here in conversation. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Willis. Uh, Commissioner Eastman.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, um, for coming forward with this. I, I do, um, I've always found this particular law really interesting. It's just sat in our books and I, uh, and so my understanding of how this came to be is what, it like in 61, Latshaw County went from a dry county to a wet county. This law was passed 64, 65, somewhere in there. So it was right after we became a wet county and we had this distance requirement from churches. I don't, I don't know if schools were in it back then, but I certainly know that, um, that, uh, places of religious assembly were in it back then. In the mid seventies, we exempt, so then we started exempting this, this series of rules over time to the point where it used to have a really strong meaning. Like in downtown, we didn't have many restaurants in downtown through a lot of the seventies because, um, it was hard to, you couldn't sell alcohol. And there was about four churches that were located in the downtown area. Um, I would say that the, and so in the seventies, we exempted downtown from this. I think the, uh, or maybe it was, you know, seventies, the, uh, downtown advisory board with that, whatever that was called back then came forward with that. I'd say that was one of the bigger changes, one of the more positive economic development changes that our city has made. I don't think anyone expected it at the time, but what it meant is that all those old retail storefronts slowly started shifting over to restaurants, shifted over to happy hour spots. Kind of it ended up, that was the big change that kind of created the entertainment downtown that we have today. Um, so I've always found this a sort of an interesting law that, um, seems like it doesn't have a big impact. But then when it does, when we have exempted it, it does have a, uh, it, it can have an impact. I don't know what kind of impact it'll have today. Alcoholic beverage establishments are fairly narrowly defined now, which they weren't, uh, they weren't back then. Um, but you asked whether there are issues in our code currently that causes. I'd say one of the, uh, one of the interesting places in our city is right across from the university. You have a large amount of bars, you have a large amount of churches, and that's not an exempt area, that's U8. So we exempt downtown and U9 from this. Um, as far as I know, because there are restaurants that do alcohol to the side, it's not, um, that's how they get around it. But my understanding is that a lot of those places, in order to continue existing under their current way, they, um, they make kind of odd, they've, they, they find little ways to get around the rules because you can't have an alcoholic beverage establishment within that midtown area. So like, um, I, it, Purple Porpoise, like basically rejuvenated itself from the inside out. Um, there's, there are all these kind of weird mechanisms that they've used to, uh, to get around this. As far as I'm concerned, I, i- this is a very, very weird old law that seems to come from a different era. I don't really have a problem getting rid of it. My, my kid's accredited school is about 400 feet from Cypress and Grove. I don't, we don't seem to have any issues with, um, you know, with, with alcohol. By the time my kid's out of school, that's when the brewery opens up. Um, I think it's, uh, we have some, we have good zoning for where we want to have these. It's fairly limited, um, to where they are. And so I think if someone has the zoning for where they can open up an alcoholic beverage establishment, they should have that opportunity to do it. Um, so I, I'm comfortable moving forward with this. Um, I, uh, more to the question of when the plan board bring this forward. Um, so, so the plan board passed this and then you're bringing it forward to us, but you haven't done the, the research and you're not necessarily, and there's no staff recommendation per se. Is that correct?
Correct.
Um, yeah, I would like, I mean, the plan board's working through a number of things. And so for, gonna bring it forward, I'd like to see, um, you know, some, some data and background as to, uh, probably a staff recommendation, but frankly, I would be comfortable with, if the plan board has already gone through the whole process, if we bring something forward on, even on first reading or just to say we're going to be doing that. I'd like to, um, yeah, I, I, I'd like to see some, some research and things that go into it as it comes back to us in the future. But I think as far as this goes, I'm very comfortable with this. I mean, I'd be happy to, to make a motion just to have that. If we're not comfortable with the school portion of it, we can bring that forward. But, um, yeah, I, I, I feel comfortable. I, I think it's a very strange old law that has kind of passed its, uh, sell-by date at this point.
Commissioner Eastman, Commissioner Nicken Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, um, Mr. Edleton for bringing this forward. I'm not so comfortable. And I'm not so comfortable because, um, I'm very curious about how removing this language could possibly affect alcohol outlet density. So I need more information. I need research and we certainly need some outreach on this. I know that, uh, a lot of people in my district are very concerned about, as a matter of fact, a particular establishment that they have heard is going to pop up in a particular place. I don't know that that's been substantiated, um, yet I actually plan to ask you all about it. Um, but right now I can tell you there is some real concern about this particular potential project. Um, for me, this is an issue that's not just about economic development. It's also about public health and public safety. And that is why I need to have a clearer understanding about how removing this language could, um, possibly have some unintended consequences. We all want economic development. I certainly want it. Um, but I know that in District One in particular, there is no lack of alcoholic establishments. There is a lack of grocery stores. So I want to make sure that we are very intentional and very targeted, that we've done our research and our homework about how we possibly, uh, implement what the plan board is suggesting that we do. Um, but I'll tell you that, uh, alcohol outlet density is something that I'm going to be very, very concerned about. Um, and actually we'll have some ideas about how we address that, geographical and otherwise. So thank you. Um, I would, to your question, um, Mr. Edleton, be interested in research and I certainly know we'll need some outreach on this as well. Thank you. I'll conclude for now.
Commissioner Nicken Walker, Commissioner Chestnut.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a problem with this, um, with removing this language. I think that there is a sanctity to churches and protecting children. How is this handled in other communities? Could you tell me how this issue is handled in Tallahassee, Ocala, Arlen, no Tampa? Do you all have that data?
That would be some of the research that we would bring back to you.
Yeah, I would like to see that. Uh, I'd like very much to see it. I, I, and then, um, I'd like to see numbers when you come back. For, uh, A, how many churches would be impacted by this removal and the number of schools? And I would agree with, uh, Commissioner Duncan Walker at outreach, outreach in terms of going into the, the communities because I think churches will be very, very upset to see this language removed. And, um, I think it does become a safety issue. If you walk out of church, you've heard a wonderful sermon and somebody's out there with a gin and tonic right next to it. I don't want that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Chestnut. Commissioner Engel.
I don't much care for a gin and tonic either.
Oh, sorry.
Um, so I'm kind of on board with, with everybody else. I think that we could, definitely could use some more research coming back into it. I hadn't really thought of the situation that, uh, Commissioner Willis brought up. But as it is of a, of a church moves into a, an area that we wouldn't usually think of for churches, a storefront or something that doesn't really, you know, it's not a standalone church, that wouldn't affect any of the business of. You know, it's not a standalone church. That wouldn't affect any of the businesses that were currently there. Is that correct?
Yes, in general, the uses that are existing are treated as existing.
But it, but it would keep any other ones from coming up. So it would just be a matter if you happened to be before or after the church showed up.
That's a possibility, yes.
Um, which seems like a, a weird situation. Um, in, in general, I'm a little hesitant on blanket rules, especially when we get to areas like. And I realize that we've exempted downtown from this, so it's not the perfect example. But I remember like when the, that big church moved into downtown. Um, you know, if, if that would have meant that once that church moved there. No other new alcoholic establishments could be in that area, that wouldn't make a lot of sense to me. Um, could we do something, and this is one of the questions you don't have to have an answer off the top of your head. Could we do something like requiring a special use permit or something like that, so where instead of just doing like a footage requirement? You could actually take a look at the situation that they were trying to open an establishment in and base it off. Instead of it's not an appropriate area, be able to shoot that down instead of just. The fact of whether it's four hundred foot or four hundred and five foot or three hundred and ninety-five foot. Um, I, I would really like to see some options on that, so we can make sure that in areas where it doesn't make sense, where we've got sensitive areas, where we've got places that are. More in that line, um, that we can make sure bars aren't going into, to inappropriate places. And see if we can't even get a little bit better idea of that than, than just a footage marker. But I said, I think I'm in agreement with most everybody else who spoke that we need more information before we can make much of a decision on that. So I'd really like to see some research come back. Really like to see some community outreach on it. And, uh, I think. Whether we get rid of it or, or change a little bit or whatever, there's probably some room for improvement on how it's written. But, um, but I, I think we're all gonna need more information before that call gets made.
Thank you, Commissioner Engel. Um, let me weigh in and then we'll go back around for a couple more here. I, I think one of the areas where there's most likely to be, that's most likely to, to actually be affected is probably midtown. I think that's probably what we're looking at. And when we talk about, um, unintended consequences. I think we currently have some unintended consequence there from the existing laws over the years. Where we have jammed a, a number of bars together, side by side, in a very compact area. Because that's where they would fit, um, wi- wi- with, with the current regulations. And I don't think that's probably healthy. I don't know, I don't know how we show that, but, but I think that. It, I, I know that it also, as Mr. Edleton, uh, kind of alluded to. It puts some businesses in position, and as, uh, Commissioner Eastman alluded to, of saying, oh, we're not a bar. We're, we're, we're not a dive bar, we're a sandwich shop. Well, you're not fooling anybody, but, but you're within the letter of the law. And I think we can be more honest about some of these things if, if there is the opportunity in the future. This is not going to affect what exists currently. To say, wow, do we really want to have six bars in a row, or is this only happening because this is, you know, the, the balloon effect? The, the buffer effect created by existing laws. So I think it's fair to have a conversation about that with data in front of us. I think the research is, is important. The map is interesting, um, even more interesting up close. It is, it does not affect huge swaths of, of the community as, as we see, because they're not in the, the categories that we're, that we're discussing. There are a lot more churches, uh, religious establishments in Gainesville than there are of ours. Um, and that's. Right, but I mean, we're, 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 we're a southern town and that's, that, that is the case, uh, I think for most of us in, in, in this region. A lot of, of our laws, particularly, you know, laws like this are, are sort of inherited without having conversations about. It's fair to have the conversations. Doesn't mean we're gonna change anything, but it means. That we ought to have conversations about why things are where they are and what we expect there to be in those places i- in the future. So I think it's a, a, a good, interesting conversation to have. Um, I'm very comfortable moving forward with it. Just gonna mention, uh, something else, uh, and I've entirely lost my train of thought on it, but, but I'm, I'm looking forward to it. Oh, I know what it was. Uh, you mentioned, uh, other cities, uh, as we, as we bring back the research. Um, we have had discussions about what are our peer cities before. And I think those peer cities that are within fifty or a hundred thousand people of us. That are primarily, whose economies are primarily based around state universities and, uh, a- a- and are in the south. Those are our peers, more so than comparing us to, um, you know, tourist communities or, or things like that. So if you would kind of keep those in mind, because that's who we, that's who we, we ought to be comparing ourselves to to see how we're doing, I think. So. Uh, okay, we've got another round here and after we go through this current round, um, we'll go ahead to public comment. So, uh, Commissioner Willetts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Mr. Edleton, I did have a question about schools. I know this is something we get further into, but. Is a school, does it have to be an active school? Because county school district has lots of properties that they're not kind of currently using. Twilliger comes to mind, um, because it's right across from my district. And I just think of redevelopment on the mall property, which is one of those, um. Yeah, uh, one, one of these that's highlighted is right across from Twilliger. They, they plan on demolishing Twilliger. But it still had a building. How does that work when it's not being actively used, but it seems that it is still perhaps in the definition of a school?
I would have to look to see what we've done in the past as far as precedent for our department. I don't know that that type of situation has come up before.
Okay, um, and it also includes private schools, I assume, and public, public charter. And that's why. The future looks different than what we think of the past. I think people think of schools and they think of, I don't know, Norton, completely kind of suburban school. As opposed to the future might look different. These charter schools or private schools that open up in all kinds of different spaces. Sometimes oper- operate in, you know, in essence, a commercial space. And that's one of the reasons why. I, I'm interested in talking about the school portion, um, but even the church portion. And maybe it's because the, the closest church to where I live is a strip mall storefront church. And so my experience in my neighborhood with churches is it cuts out the ability for, for what is, what is a commercial strip? That has multiple hotels within walking distance, that on game day has people walking from their hotel to grab Thai food. And then, and then walk a very long walk, but all the way to the stadium. And that in my neighborhood, my immediate neighborhood, that's, that's the experience, um, all down South, South Thirteenth. And so that's, that's what, that's, that's what comes to mind mostly. Um, but the schools, I mean, you should find out a little bit more about that. Um, I do think this is, is sort of leftover. I don't know that only comparison, comparing to southern schools, southern towns is the best. Because we have a built environment that perhaps we don't want anymore. Maybe we want a built environment where there are neighborhood establishments for anything that can be neighborhood scale. Whether it's a hardware store, whether it's a place you can go down and have happy hour, whether it's a place you can go eat, whether it's a place you can have a donut shop. We're gonna be talking about that as well, about at some point where you can have a food truck, but not a donut shop on Northwest Twenty-third. Uh, right next to a whole bunch of other commercial. And so I think we cannot only, when it comes to this kind of zoning stuff. We should not compare ourselves only to cities in the south, because cities in the south, many of them all suffer from the exact same problem. Outside of a place like Charleston or, um, or New Orleans, we're gonna find a bunch of, it's just gonna confirm our existing pattern if we only look at places in the south. So though we do look at the places in the south for a lot of things, when it comes to land use, uh, we, we, we shouldn't let the sins of not just our past. But that sins of other people's past determine what we do in the future. So that's just, just a note that maybe we look at some other places. Um, but I, I think this is one of those opportunities to loosen up and let, uh, let develop, uh, commercial neighborhood pockets. Cause if you look at this, these are all little economic hubs of a community. Uh, and we say we want economic development. I know that alcohol is not the best form of economic development. It really isn't. Um, uh, but it is a, it is a piece of it that people want to be. As opposed to having to drive downtown where everybody is, where all the students are. And the midtown's the biggest example where. That's something we need to, we need to fix in conjunction with, I will say that I, I think it's time to revisit our, um, our alcohol beverage, our open area. Arts and arts, ace, arts and culture? I have arts right up. There you go. Looking at those districts, I think it's time to look at midtown as well, because I think it's, I mentioned it when we first passed it. I think midtown's something we need to open up, because it's, otherwise we've decided that it's. We have a set of rights for non-students and a set of rights for students. And I think we need to open that up. So that's something I'll be interested in looking at soon. This is kind of a, a piece of it, because it, you know, if, if, if in the end, we only agree that we need to loosen it up in very specific areas, that is one option. But I like the more expansive view of it, but I appreciate when we start talking about normal schools, what, which I think people imagine. Going next to Norton or going next to, um, I mean, Lake Forest is in the county, but you know, that's not what we're talking about here. We're talking about these little small mixies and commercial districts. So anyways, thank you, Forrest. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Willetts. Uh, Commissioner Duncan Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to request that when staff brings this back, because we do have equitable development policy that's new and on our books. If you might bring it back to us through that lens, if you would, if you would, and I know that Zariya is back in the back and. Mr. Edleton, the two of you have been working on that. Mr. Folsen, is it possible for us to kind of be able to see some of that work? In equitable development, since this is, this is a development decision or it, it's all related. Is it possible for us to view this particular issue through that lens?
I'm sorry, Folsen, Director for, EcoOpportunity Director for the City of Gainesville. Um, yes, we'll work with staff to see if we can bring it back. Give us a chance to kind of vet through it and, and fill through it. And then we'll give you update at GPC and let you know if we can do it or not.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Duncan Walker. Commissioner Buck.
Spoken, um, once, Mr. Mayor. Did you wanna, did you wanna see if we have public comment or would you let me go?
But I wanna go through the, this, this ring of lights.
Go through the round. All right, well, I do appreciate the staff, that they provided a staff report. Um, that's always important, advantages and disadvantages. So that's critical. We've had that discussion a couple of times. And under the staff report, the advantages, one that I kind of point out is. It says consumer convenience would likely improve with increased access to alcohol beverage establishments. But yet I've never really heard anybody said, well, I need increased access to alcoholic beverage establishments, because there's plenty of them. Both packaged beer and wine and liquor and restaurants. So I really think that while that, I, I understand it here. We don't have a lack of that, so I don't see that as an advantage. I don't want to get too deep into the, the, um, advantages and disadvantages. But that didn't strike me as one that, that really would be statistically valid, I think. Um, and then it has on disadvantages, a couple of things we pointed out here. Protect young people by reducing their exposure to alcohol-focused environments. And then Commissioner Duncan Walker already talked about density and it mentions density. I'm here for density, so, so, um, for the alcohol outlets, so I think that's good. What, does this affect beer and wine establishments or just liquor establishments? Cause these are very different licenses.
It would just be these alcoholic beverage establishments under that definition.
I'm, say that one more time.
Yeah, the definition. What's the definition of?
It was those places that have sales of alcohol more than fifty percent.
All right, well, so our, our beer and wine license is very different from a liquor license. So this only affects those that are deriving more of their proceeds from, from liquor, not beer and wine.
It depends on the license type also, but it is that those, yeah, go for it.
Uh, sorry, Mr. Mayor. Um, Andrew Person is the Chief Operating Officer. One thing to clarify, it does not include packaged stores. It's just for on-premise consumption.
I understand it was on-premise consumption, that I knew. Um, my question was, for example, we have the, yeah, thanks, thanks for that. Was, was the breweries, because I know Commissioner Eastman, you mentioned, for example, like Cypress and Grove in the Grove Street. Does it impact that in any way?
That's also a separate license, similar to the packaged stores, yes.
Okay, so, so the breweries is really not a conversation, this ordinance potential change. That's, I thought that was the case, but I wanted to make sure. Cause liquor stores are a very different entity and regulated very differently.
Breweries and tasting rooms, are there separate use?
Yes, sir. That's, that's what I thought. I just want to make sure I understood. You know, um, midtown's interesting, because midtown. I met with a couple of folks who had a whole lot more knowledge about this than I, and they were very helpful, um, to me last night. And they pointed out that midtown in and of itself is non-conforming. So somebody can in fact close it and reopen right there. And it won't affect the fact that they're within one football field of, for example, St. Augustine Church. They could still reopen there. So this really doesn't, doesn't address that from my standpoint anyway. Um, and bars could reopen there right now, because it's currently under that. Is that? Is that accurate?
Yeah. If I'm understanding the question, if a, a use that is existing can continue to operate there. Yes, even if it changes ownership, maybe, I mean, ma- i- if, am I helping out with the question at all? But yes, if there is a, a existing establishment there that has, that is recognized, that has a recognition of being permitted to exist there. Then we would continue to recognize that as being.
Right, so, so, so in the areas where we already have something at this point, I'd, it's, wouldn't change that. Um, if we end up with, um, a motion that supports research, it's gotta be substantial research. It's gotta be substantial community, um, involvement. Um, and we would benefit from alcohol, beverage and tobacco, ABT weighing in. Because they have the data on how many bars, how many beer and wine, what the licenses are, where they are, where our packages have. And that data is part of the already GIS mapped also. So I think that might be extremely helpful. And I know that, um, uh, manager, can I mention the conference? Madam Manager? That, that, sorry, can I, uh, mention the conference that might also bear some information on that? Would you be comfortable with that? All right, so there's a Responsible Hospitality Institute National Conference coming up in just a few weeks and the city is gonna send some representatives there. And what do they do? They study trends nationwide related to alcohol, downtowns, urban cores, hospitality districts. Sip and stroll and entertain and whatever else we're doing in our districts. And I mean that in a good way. And I think that also could provide and inform us some information, be real helpful, because that's a nationwide kind of database of information. That whoever the manager is sending might, might help us out.
Thank you with that, Mr. Mayor. Um, Commissioner Book and I have been collaborating and, and really he's supporting it and, and giving us some support actually from his budget. Uh, but John Alexander and I think some players maybe from GCRNA, um, are gonna be attending the conference in Sacramento. That will do just, uh, as Commissioner Book has, has described. And so we plan on making sure that we come back with a report. And we'll make sure, Commissioner Book, that we try to set up, you know, meetings that will give us some additional information to share.
Yeah, so it happens the timing is perhaps good and again, getting more information, more community input can never be a bad thing, so, uh, we'll see. You know, I'm o- I'm open to it. Does I have the same concerns I've heard from a couple of members?
And that's in.
Up here. And establishing buffers and things between different uses is the nature of zoning. Uh, so I don't think that's archaic. I think that's what you do. You have transit zones and zoning and land use and allows, uh, different things. And, um, so let's, let's see what comes out of it. But certainly wouldn't support changing this today before we've done our due diligence as a, you know, as representative body. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I might, today is basically to hear and to get feedback. You know, there was no expectation of, of a motion or anything.
Okay, uh, Commissioner Engel.
Just a, a couple more questions, make sure I got my head revving on this right. Um. First off, I am, uh, still trying to convince myself I don't need glasses. So I'm assuming that little blob of green up there on the, uh, kind of upper left. Is that the corner of, uh, Forty-third Street and, uh, Twenty-third? Nope. Yeah, that one.
Yeah.
So what I, I think of that area, that seems like mostly shopping centers and, and commercial stuff and, and all that. And I could see where if you build a church, open a church or whatever, next to that type of area. It's kind of silly for me to think that there can't also be a sports bar in that existing strip mall. Um, or, you know, there, there could be one, but if it moved out, a new one couldn't come in. So as I, I think areas, especially like that, that in my head are, said are mostly just little kind of areas that are, are made for that type of commerce. It can make a lot of sense to take a look at, at whether there's some better way than just a, a flat footage rate. And then, so that I understood, uh, what Mr. Buck was saying. It's not even exist, it's not gonna change existing permitting, even if there's a, a new business comes in. So, so if I've, I've got a church that is within, or sorry, if I've got a bar that was within four hundred feet of a church. I decide to sell that bar to somebody else, even though like it is now a new establishment with a new name. It's still allowed to operate there, because the zoning hasn't changed and the B use hasn't changed. Is that correct?
The way that we have recognized that in the past is that if the use is continuous, then we have recognized that.
But if I sell that to some cat and he decides that he'd rather have a sandwich shop than a bar, and turns it into a sandwich shop. Runs it for a while, realizes that sandwiches aren't nearly as popular as bars, so he has to sell that. And somebody tries to open a bar again there. a bar again there, would it still be allowed to be a bar because it had been once, or it is now because there was a sandwich shop in there, it's out of the bar business?
Thank you, this is my favorite game. I, in honesty, I would have to look at the particulars of this situation, but in general, if the use is closed and ceases, and another use comes in and is recognized as a separate use, then we would recognize that as ceasing.
Okay.
And a new one beginning.
Cool, very good, so yeah, I, I think I'm definitely in the camp of, we could use a little research and, and coming back with, and I think there may be some better ways to regulate this than just footage, uh, though I, I definitely think we do need some buffer areas in there where it's appropriate. All right, thanks, I will quit playing your favorite game.
Thank you, Commissioner Engel, Commissioner Eastman.
Yeah, thank you, I, I, and I appreciate all the conversation about it, I also, I, I don't know if this change really has the kind of monumental impact of the way that we're talking about it, I mean, like we said, we're in Midtown right now, none of those are allowed to be bars, I'm sure if you look through them, almost all of them are restaurants that serve a significant amount of alcohol in that area. They, people have found ways around these codes for decades, they will continue to find ways around these codes for more decades. You could be a brewery, and that does not bring you under this, you could be a restaurant, and this would not bring you under this. I think the question is, is do we want to ask business owners that are trying to open up, uh, you know, a, like a live music venue that has, you know, a bar that might have live music or something like that, do we want them to continue to try to find weird ways to play around with the code in order to get that through? And if we're not comfortable with the full strike through, which is not what I think originally came to the plan board or came back to us, I, there's ways to thread the needle a little bit better, I mean, you could simply exempt, you know, if we just wanted to focus on Midtown, that's all U8, I'd like for us to take a look at that, like, what would it mean to just, we already exempt U9 and DT, if we just brought that down to U8, all of a sudden our, one of our bar areas no longer has to do odd things to try to continue to be, to sell alcohol within those areas. If we wanted to have more exemptions within there, there's, I was looking at Orlando's code, they have by right exemptions for if you have, um, you cultural, if you're doing, doing cultural work within there, like having live music things and that, things like that, you can apply for an exemption. There might be ways to thread the needle a little bit better on this, that, um, I, that, yeah, I would, I would like to have staff look out as well. I, I guess it just depends on what issue that we're trying to solve here, and for me, the issue that we're trying to solve here is, one, like I said, that, that area of town has been odd for a number of years, and is, and I don't see any reason why we continue to ask the businesses that have been doing this for as long as, you know, there's been a Midtown, to do the odd ways they've been, they've been able to exist, but two, you know, just how do we allow more flexibility for the types of alcoholic beverage establishments that, um, that, that, that do add to the cultural amenities of our city? A, a live music venue is an alcoholic beverage establishment, so the places that Tom Petty first came up playing in, that, that, those are alcoholic beverage establishments, that is how you fund the arts, you fund the arts through, the arts are a lost leader, you fund it through alcohol in the backend, and if we want to have more of those, I think it's important that we have that in there, but I'm happy to have staff take a look at that, come back to us with recommendations at a later date, uh, for those kind of things. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Eastman, and, and before we go to public comment, um, could somebody refresh my memory on when we had, staff preferably, on when we had, when we enacted the ACE districts? When, when did those go into effect? I think it was January 1st of, of last year, I have 44.
Mr. Mayor, that sounds right, I know we had a, a, we had had a bit of a lag on enforcement as we were, you know, putting up signs and talking about the, um, the issue, but I believe it was, uh, January of that, of this year is when it went into effect, it may have been a little bit earlier. Yep, it may have been a little bit earlier, um, but without looking at, back at the record, I don't know if Jamie, not to put you on the spot, Major Kurnick, do you remember when that, when we did the ACE district?
It was not in 25.
Yeah, I think it was 24.
Yeah, I just don't remember when.
Yeah, right, I think it's 24.
So, so where I'm going with this is, because it's adjacent conversations, could we get in the not-too-distant future a, uh, a, a comparison of, of arrests or calls for service in those areas from before and after, just as a, let's compare and see how it's worked out from a, a trouble viewpoint or a lack of trouble viewpoint? I, I don't have a feel for it either way, but it sounds like that.
GPD is shaking their head, yes, and so the, yes.
Okay, all right, all right, thank you for that, and Madam Clerk, do we have public comment on this?
Mr. Mayor, I have no one signed up.
Okay, all right, I see no, no further lights here, does anybody want to, want to make a motion to do the research, or is this just understood by staff?
It is understood, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, very good. All right then, uh, seeing no further lights, Madam Clerk, let's move on, thank you, uh, Mr. Edelton, for, for that.
Mr. Mayor, we're on to our resolutions for the afternoon. Sorry, I lost my place for a moment. Twenty twenty-five, two four two, Public Hearing on Regional Transit System Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty-Five Program of Projects, Federal and State, with the recommendation the City Commission accept comments at a public hearing on the Regional Transit System Program for Projects for Federal and State Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty-Five, and adopt the resolution authorizing the regional, regional transit system to file grant applications with the Federal Transit Administration and Florida Department of Transportation as outlined in the Regional Transit System Program of Projects for Fiscal, Federal and State Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty-Five.
Welcome, Mr. Gomez.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, good afternoon, H. Gomez with the Transportation Department. Like we do every year, we put a list together, all the projects we'd like to apply for grants, and this is just, uh, for you to approve that us going after the grants. We saw grants for operating in capital improvements, and, well, you know, we actively, uh, you know, apply for those grants, trying to use every opportunity to get funding for, for RTS, for the transit agency. Really not much to say, other than if there's any public comment, uh, we take these projects out of the transit development plan, and we have the advisory board, uh, meeting, and we get input on, on projects, so.
Very good, all right. Uh, let's hear public comment first, and do we have any public comment?
Yes, Donald Shepherd.
Okay, Mr. Shepherd, yeah, come on.
What do I have to say about, oh, this item is that, uh, another gentleman came earlier within the month, and he had asked for Bus 25 to be added back to the routes. This here is a needed route that had been cut, and, uh, a lot of these workers in the area that we used to ride that bus now have no transportation to work, um, and that takes out their budget, having to get over, so that's one of the things I'd like to add. Um, there is some, uh, other items that, uh, need to be added to it, but, um, this gentleman has been doing a good job of, uh, the planning of that, so, um, I want to leave that in his hands, um, but, uh, I'm, I'm seeing that, that there's a lot of things that is not being talked about when a person runs for public office. That's the time they should be asking these questions, these voters should be asking these questions. Why put a person in a chair if they don't have the qualifications or the knowledge that you want added to your city? These churches and these other items, um, that we talked about, um, have been, uh, a lot of things been left loopholes. Copeland is District One, I believe, um, correct me if I'm wrong, um, but, uh, that's a desperate need of the RTS bus to go to also, so I'm thinking, why can't we make the RTS bus go down to Copeland and back out on, what is it, um, what is that road there? It goes back on, Harvester Road, um, why can't we take and do that? We, if the road is a state road, then let's make the state fix that road so the buses can down there, and, uh, we need, uh, pull-offs, uh, added in certain areas that he can, they can, um, map out for you, that needs to take and happen so these people can get to work. Riding a bicycle, as you know, I rode a bicycle for several years to the city meetings, but riding to work is one thing, riding to city meeting is another, so I'm asking for help in Copeland area and in these other areas that, uh, 25 service, that, uh, we need to give some grant money to, uh, to, to establish, what we was talking about earlier about stores, um, the store in Copeland is closed because of financial need, well, nobody stepped to them about grant money to take and stay open, or a future towards helping them keep a grocery store, keep a park in that area, that, that's been not been talked about, and, uh, as a political representative, I would like that, um, looked into, if you know, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shepherd.
Our last speaker, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Chestnut.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move that the City Commission, one, accept comments at a public hearing on the Regional Transit System Program of Projects for Federal and State Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty-Five, and two, adopt the resolution authorizing the Regional Transit System to file grant applications with the Federal Transit Administration and Florida Department of Transportation as outlined in the Regional Transit System Program of Projects for Federal and State Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty-Five.
Second. We have motion second, Commissioner Willis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As I said, I only have one question about the, I know this is for potential new grants, with the fair box and software, is this any way related to our agreement with UF to, um, start? So even if it's that we're implementing boxes now, we, we may be changing some of our equipment and software for fair boxes in the very immediate future, is there potential that a grant later in this cycle could pay, could reimburse what we spend money on now?
So, yes, to the first point, it, um, we do need to replace the, uh, the fair boxes because they are, um, obsolete, and so we are going for a grant. It does tie in to the UF, um, uh, work that we're doing, because the new fair boxes will allow the, um, the higher level of security that, that there, that UFIT is really looking for, for the ridership verification, the Contron, um, item that was on your consent agenda is related to that, but that's really a, a temporary measure until we have the new fair boxes in that will then replace that Contron system.
Okay, that's good for us to know that the Contron is a bit of a temporary.
Exactly.
To really, we would love to get a grant, you know, a $2 million grant to really, you know, modernize it all across, that will meet UF's requirements and our, our future needs.
Exactly, we're, we're doing it for us, but it'll, it'll have positive benefits to the long-term relationship with UF on this, this particular issue.
All right, thank you, that was just one particular thing, and I know that this is all hopes and dreams, but this is one I, I hope and dream about, thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Willis, seeing no further lights, so Madam Clerk, you want to call the roll, please?
Commissioner Engel. Commissioner Chestnut.
Aye.
Commissioner Desmond Duncan Walker.
Aye.
Commissioner Book. Commissioner Willis. Commissioner Eastman.
Aye.
Mayor Ward.
Aye, that passes unanimously, Madam Clerk, let's move on to the next item, thank you, Mr. Gomez.
The next item is twenty twenty-five, one eight six, Amendments to the Towing or Immobilization Vehicles on Private Property, Ordinance Chapter fourteen point five, Article three, and Appendix A, Schedule of Fees, Rates, and Charges, Trespass, Towing, and Immobilization, with the recommendation the City Commission adopt the attached resolution.
Madam Clerk.
Good morning, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners Jamie Kurnick. I apologize, Jamie Kurnick, Gainesville Police Department, getting used to the new spectacles, uh, for reading as I navigate, thank you so much for having us back today. This is a follow-up from the March thirteenth General Policy Committee meeting, uh, where we were asked to bring back modifications of the towing and immobilization ordinance, uh, this included changes to the rate to align the rates to the city of Tallahassee, um, and we recognized after meeting with legal that a resolution would be able for us to bring the rates to you now, and then the towing and immobilization ordinance changes would be a little later in the cycle, so we were trying to do that in advance. So this resolution is, uh, the proposed rates, and this is the attached resolution and the modifications.
All right, thank you, uh, I, I know there's probably a lot of, uh, there has been a lot of conversation around City Hall about this, and, and I wonder if anybody, I, some of the things that, that I've heard talked about are potentially, uh, postponing this to, to include it with, uh, with the ordinance, I, I want to make sure we air all that out before we just plow ahead here, so Commissioner Eastman.
Yeah, thank you, I, I, I wanted to postpone this until we do, uh, with the ordinance, I, um, that's something that, that, so, when we brought this forward, there was a whole lot of information that was put out related to what kind of regulations we'll be putting on tow companies in the future, uh, what, you know, what, what might be too onerous of regulations, all of that, I wanted all of these things to sort of be paired up with each other, so, um, if we're, as we're talking to our constituents and looking at, you know, that there may be, you know, more cost as it relates to roam towing, there might be more, uh, more or less cost related to immobilization, that at least, um, that we can say, you know, here, here are your rights, here are the enhanced protections that you have, here are some other things that are along with that. Plus, I don't feel like I've gotten a great understand, I mean, as, as was clear to me in the last conversation, I mean, this is a very, this is a very in-depth industry, there's a lot of regulations, it is its own thing, I, I want to make sure that I'm properly briefed by GPD, that I have a chance to sit down with the towers, that I have a chance to sit down with the businesses that hire these folks, and I don't feel like I've gotten, you know, a full amount of, of background on it, so I, I'd like to see those things put together, and I would like for us to, um, you know, to, to have a little bit more information so that, um, you know, I, I know, Mr. Mayor, you said in the past that roam towing is one of those things that seems to come up every couple of years, and, uh, it's been a couple of years since I've been on the commission, and I would like to have my opportunity to sort of take a look at that and make sure that we're considering all of this all at the same time.
So, you, you are absolutely not the only person who's been reached out to about this, I, I've had, I think, three people reach out to me yesterday from the community to say, hey, let's have more conversation, so that's, that is my interest in this, so Commissioner Engel.
Hey, let's have more conversation. So I, um, I'm kind of in the same boat as Commissioner Eastman, I've talked to a bunch of people, um, including tow truck companies and business owners and constituents, and I really think this needs to be tied into a larger conversation where we've got, you said, we've got immobilization coming up, it's gonna be kind of a new realm for us to start getting into, um, how we kind of handle all of this, I think needs to be a lot more holistic than just passing the, the fee updates today and moving on, I would really like this to be part of a larger conversation. So, as I said, I would really prefer to put this item off until we, uh, have got time to actually sit down and talk about it, and I realize that that's like the fourth item, I think we've said that about so far today, um, but yeah, I would really like to, uh, to make a more informed decision on this before we push forward.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Engel, Commissioner Duncan Walker.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I too support a, a really kind of comprehensive look at this issue, I, I remember hearing, I'll just say it like this, I felt like I was uninformed, and I would like the opportunity to sit with some of the people who were here with us the last time, I'm glad to see them back here, uh, in the chamber with us today, because I know they have some concerns, and I know a lot of them are valid. I have not had the chance to speak with you one-on-one, and I certainly would welcome that opportunity, I want to learn more, I want to be more informed so that I can make decisions that, um, I, I think, uh, first of all, I'm a lot more comfortable with, but that I feel like will align themselves with some good governance, you know, and I know that's all our concern up here on the day, so I would definitely support that too, thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Duncan Walker, uh, and when I say a little bit down the road, I mean, I want to be careful that, that we don't make decisions about towing, uh, when the people who are most likely to be affected by, by towing regulations are not in town or not focused, so I'd, I'd like to bring this back, uh, August, September, so that the folks who are most likely to be affected can be here in the room and, and make comments. On one side, we've got a lot of people who are directly affected by it on one side here, but I, I, I do not want to try to do something like this in, in May or June, um, and, and have people come back and find a different set of rules than when they left, so. Public comment, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, we have several signed up, Donald Shepherd. Nope, okay, going on to Stephen Kirk. C. Barton. John Fleming. Rennie Thomas. Kevin Whitesides. All right, that concludes our comment.
Okay, well, I'm, uh, glad that we all seem to be in, in a direction here, I'm, uh, sorry that you all had to be here for, for the entire afternoon, but I hope we, uh, I hope you enjoyed learning more about the other items, so. Commissioner Eastman.
Yeah, I guess, um. I was gonna make a motion, did you have questions or comments? Okay, all right. Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
No, I just want to say, since we, we do have several people representative of the industry, even though we're, there may be stuff that you want us to, to, to consider, it doesn't have to be here for three minutes. it doesn't have to be here for three minutes. But please take the opportunity to do that so we can make sure that this ordinance is, we all have a better understanding of all the nuances of the ordinance, whether it's today or via meetings or in writing. That'll be really helpful. And I would really utilize Major Kurnick as a kind of a funnel also for some of that information so she can hear it and provide it for us. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Eastman?
Yeah, I was just gonna, I was just gonna move to table the resolution and direct staff to bring it back in conjunction with the towing and immobilization policy.
We have motion to second. Commissioner Ingle?
I didn't realize my light was still on. I would like to point out, this is the most quiet and demure group of tow truck drivers.
Thank you, Commissioner Ingle. Senator for the lights, Mr. Mann?
Mr. Mayor, Phil Mann, Special Advisor, City Manager. Just a little point of clarification to Commissioner Eastman's motion. When exactly would you want us to bring that back? Because we were planning to bring it back beginning of May, but you indicated August or September.
I think, I think the mayor sets the agenda, right? So.
Well, I.
We can consult. Mr. Mayor, if I might, we'll consult with, with you since you do, you know, manage the agenda from that. So we'll do that.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I, it gives us opportunity to, rather than being specific today about when, I, I, you've heard the general concern, and I don't, I assume most folks would agree. So unless there's disagreement with that, I believe that's it. All right. All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right. That passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, we're on to ordinances for first reading. 2020, uh, ordinance number 2025-246, an ordinance of the city of Gainesville, Florida, amending Chapter 26 of the city code of ordinances to create Article 9 valet operations, to regulate valet operations that occur on public right-of-way or public property within the city of Gainesville, Florida, establishing permit requirements, establishing operational requirements, establishing revocation, appeals, and suspension process, providing for civil citations, amending Appendix A, schedule of fees, rates, and charges to establish regulatory fees, providing directions to the codifier, providing a severability clause, and providing a repealing clause, and providing an effective date.
Okay. Who's going to take the lead? Madam Manager, I don't know who our lead is on this. Debbie, okay. Ms. Leister?
Mr. Mayor, Debbie Leister, City Department of Transportation. We had this item discussed several times since March of last year. It got presented to the City Commission as part of the downtown parking plan, then discussed at the GPC in July. In August, it was discussed by the Downtown Advisory Board, and then came back with recommendations from that board to the September meeting of the City Commission. And at that time, the Commission made a motion to direct the, the city attorney to implement the option, to draft an ordinance, revise the ordinance to implement Option 3, that allowed the use of parking spaces on street for exclusive use of a valet operator with, under a permit for an annual fee, and also directed staff to look at the amount of spaces that was being considered and reduce the fee. So what you have today, the changes that we were incorporated, we upped the number of spaces to four spaces for exclusive use of the valet. The proposed annual fee was reduced to $2,190 per space, the valet per year. The valet services exemption for hotels was removed. That was a recommendation from the Downtown Advisory Board, but we, that was removed. And then we have a requirement for two attendants during peak hours of service. There was a lot of discussion from the valet operators the last time that that was too much because they don't have a level of service that requires two people at the same time. So now the provisions in the ordinance require that during peak service, they have two people. And then as observed by the city, they, the city would not, as a need arises, the city would notify them, and then they would have to provide a second person during, outside of those peak hours to help with the orderly service. And then the spacing between ramping areas was 200 feet. It was decreased to 150 feet to allow for more nimble operation. So again, the intent of this is just to promote safer and legal operation of the valet parking services, to enhance the convenience and promote safety, and it's applicable citywide. And we did coordinate with the operators and got input and met with them and shared the, the different drafts over time. So what you see here today was prepared and coordination with those entities.
Very good. Thank you. I know this is at least, I know we've had at least two meetings where we had discussion about this. So it, I know it has had, been aired out quite a bit in this room, and I know that folks in the community have had discussions with, with you all as well. I appreciate you all making yourselves available to, to do that. Commissioner Book?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Rick. I just had two quick questions. One, remind me, what was the parking space fee per space, per space per year before?
$4,380.
All right. So we've decreased that to the vendor. And then in, in the notes here that we have on the page, it says, city staff who are already in the field will monitor valet operations to enforce the ordinance. And this is really, this is a civil citation. Well, actually, what we're talking, it says, it says, parking enforcement, GPD officers, downtown ambassadors. Are, are parking enforcement, just a specific question, are they able to issue a civil citation?
No.
No. Okay. Downtown ambassadors, can they actually issue?
I think the intent there is that they could monitor and report an issue to a code enforcement officer, for example, and that then action would be taken.
Ah, that's a good clarification. So they'll monitor, they can report if they're not the, the enforcement mechanism.
Yeah. So I think the intent was to say that we don't need additional staff. We can just, we have enough eyes on the street to be able to monitor this.
Yeah, thank you. Right. And so codes enforcement would be able to issue a civil citation if they have it in place. All right. I thank you for those clarifications. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Book. Is there any public comment on this?
We had two signed up. We're not sure if they're still here. Megan Gideon or Amber Kraut. They may have had to leave.
No, they're, they're with the Hyatt, I believe.
Oh, okay. All right. So no, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Commissioner Willis?
Just a, in the weeds question. This would be adding these to Appendix A. Would these, we see these now, but we're scheduled this year for Appendix A increased by 5%. Is that correct? So this would, if we do this now, we barely get this in, and then it would increase on October 1st?
By 5% with the others.
Okay. So this, we would get this into Appendix A before then. That's just a minor. And then the second question is civil citation of 50. What's the current for, for parking where you're not supposed to park? What, what's the, the ticket for parking long, let's say, longer in a space than you're supposed to?
It's around $34.
Okay. Thank you, Devin. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Willis. Does anybody want to make a motion on this?
Yes. Okay. I move adoption of 25-246 ordinance creating valet operations regulations.
Second? I have motion to second. I see no further lights on it. So Madam Clerk, go ahead, call the roll, please.
Commissioner Willis?
Aye.
Commissioner Eastman?
Aye.
Commissioner Ingle?
Aye.
Commissioner Chestnut?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan Walker?
Aye.
Commissioner Book?
Aye.
Mayor Ward?
Aye. After the great deal of discussion about this over the last year and a half or so, that passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Commission comment, Mr. Mayor?
So I, I have a couple of things that I'll just float it there while we don't see more lights to come up. First thing was, I had a discussion with, with Mr. Folsen yesterday. We, we've had a lot of conversation and kind of moved around the idea of getting a report back on equitable development and exactly where we are on that. But I talked with Mr. Folsen about the idea of bringing us a, of us spending a full GPC session with him, talking about the, what the real opportunities and, and definitions and understanding of equitable development can be for us, and really leaning into that, as I know you want to do, Commissioner Duncan Walker, and really taking a definitive move toward, toward how we move forward on this and what we mean by it and all those things. And we talked about, he and I talked about having it by July, August, which seems like a long way off, but considering all the things we have between now and then is kind of right around the corner, and we'll be here before we know it. So I wanted to put that out on the table as just kind of direction to his staff and for him to be able to do whatever he needs to do with other departments to bring that back to us again for, for a general policy meeting that is dedicated to that subject so that we can really know what we're working with. And if, I'm happy to have a discussion about that. I don't think we need a motion for it, but happy to take a motion if we feel like we should. But I think the staff can hear direction from that if, if. So, Mr. Folsen, I assume you are good with that, and we'll look for that sometime in July, August.
Probably, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, please, yeah.
Just because it piggybacks off of what you're saying, Mr. Mayor, I want to thank you for that. Mr. Folsen and I had had a conversation, I don't know, maybe a month or so ago, and I believe Mr. Edelston was a part of that conversation as well about that very thing. Because we understand the, the way that we have to work now may be shifting just a bit. So I think that that conversation is critical because we do know that we want that work to, to happen. It's essential. So thank you for mentioning it. Thank you for getting it on the calendar. I'm very, very excited to, to hear what they have to say. Because I know that they've been putting a lot of effort into that. And so however we may need to pivot in order to make sure that we're still able to address the needs of the neighbors who need us to, is certainly something that I'm very, very interested in resuming. Interested in coming back to that conversation. So thank you all. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Duncan Walker. Commissioner Book?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted, Madam Manager, would it be, would it be possible to just get a brief update and kind of what's suitable for public consumption, our plans as it relates to Gator celebration and potential contingencies there?
Madam Manager?
Sure. I'm going to ask Mr. Mann to come up because he has been coordinating this on my behalf and has had several meetings with the stakeholders in the community and probably has quite a bit of information. He, along with the Communications Director, Jennifer Smart.
I won't let the record show that I'm the only one here in my orange and blue tie today on purpose, but go ahead, Mr. Mann.
Mr. Mann, Phil Mann, Special Advisor, City Manager. Yes, staff has been working on this all week. Our, the current plans the city has is we're going to have a watch party Monday night on Bo Diddley Plaza, because we're assuming the Gators are going to win Saturday.
Yes.
So that's a foregone conclusion. We're also working with GPD, GFR, Public Works is working with UFPD and UAA in case there is a celebration Monday night to secure the avenue. The press releases that Ms. Smart's been working out. We're encouraging anybody that's participating in the celebration Monday night to participate responsibly. We do not want a, a repeat of what happened in the 2006 National Championship Celebration. So we've been coordinating all that. UF is going to have a watch party, I think, for the students at the UConnell Center. So we have been coordinating all of those events and getting ready for Monday night. I think that's everything we're doing. But University Avenue will be a hardened area like it was in the '06, '07, and '08 celebrations. Approximately 15th Street to Limeran Drive. Because of truck traffic, we'll do a soft closure at 13th Street and a soft closure at 22nd Street. Because if semis come past, there's really nowhere for them to turn around or get up into the neighborhood. But we'll really do the, we'll really tie down the hard closure somewhere between 15th and 16th and at Limeran Drive. And the university's cooperating with us on the south side. We're working together on that. And we're also going to restrict parking on University Avenue so that those vehicles don't get damaged or become part of the issue. And with the watch party we're doing on Bo Diddley Plaza, we also plan to close First Avenue and First Street and restrict parking there as well, just like we do a lot of events for Bo Diddley Plaza.
Yeah, it was, all, all the, all the relevant partners are there. That's the most important thing. And obviously, the public information, I saw the message that you put out there today, Mr. Mayor, is really important. We, you know, we've kind of declared traffic violence a crisis, and if we lose one person on Monday night, then probably the entire event is a failure, regardless of whatever score. How can we have, I, I just happened to be the district commander on April 1st, the night of April 1st, when I got the call that said I had to go pick up Mrs. Dolam and their son. And so in that regard, I thought that event was a failure, even though we won the national championship. So I don't want to see any, anything that relates to that again. And certainly keeping our plans in mind as it relates to what can happen. In that case, it was a law enforcement officer. But if it's anybody else, it's just as tragic. So thanks for those plans.
Great. Thank you, Commissioner Book. And of course, when, when you say Limeran Drive, what you mean is North-South Drive. Sorry. I'm very old. I needed to look that out. Commissioner Duncan Walker?
I have to do my.
Okay. All right. Great. Commissioner Eastman?
Thank you. And I, so I just wanted to point out, because we get a lot of discussion about our tree mitigation, trees coming down, that this morning, we purchased two pieces of property using our tree mitigation funds. It was about 31.63 acres of land that we purchased that are, that's environmental land in our area. So just wanted to, you know, point out that, you know, we're moving forward on conservation. We're using some of those funds that have, that have been put into our dollars for, for the cutting down of trees, putting it back into the community to preserve trees. I also wanted to bring up with two points of items. I, well, so we used to previously have a process of having policy review, where we would send things for policy review, they would come back to us. And then we also have had a process of kind of deciding what our general policy committee is going to be determining over the next quarter or so. I want to, and so it's been, which I, I don't think we're still doing at this point. But I, so I just wanted to get two items on our, in an upcoming GPC meeting. One more, more, I guess, more fun and interesting than the other. I, I'm always trying to find little things in the code that may or may not still be updated, may or may not still make sense. One piece of code that's in there is it is currently illegal for folks to skateboard, rollerblade, or rollerskate in any of our city parks. I'd like for us to talk at a GPC meeting whether that regulation still makes sense. Should we still be banning folks from skateboarding, rollerblading, rollerskating in our city parks? I personally think it seems fine, but I'd like to hear from Roxanne, some of the folks over there. On a more bureaucratic level, but I think an important one, we have something called the Fire Safety Board of Adjustment, which is, do we know the last time the Fire Safety Board of Adjustment has actually met in person through a, like, had a quorumed board that has come together?
Mr. Mann, Phil Mann again. Fire chief and the clerk have been working on that item. I don't, the best of research we've done so far, they haven't met in person in at least five years.
Okay.
But we're going to prepare, we're preparing a report. I'm going to bring that back.
Okay. So you're bringing that report back?
To you.
To me. All right. So then before we send it to the GPC, then, then I'll wait for that. But at some point, I'd like to have a conversation about, we, my understanding is we have a very high quorum there. It's a very important board that looks at if, you know, there's issues, discrepancies between the building code and the fire code, certain business owners that, that think that what they're trying to do fits the intent of the fire code. They can send it. It's almost like a magistrate of fire code. We haven't had meeting up there. I guess it's been five years. I've heard different numbers. But at some point, I'd, I'd like to have us come back and figure out if there's some way that we can make sure that that board is a, is a moving forward workable board. But I'd like to have a conversation about skateboarding, rollerblading, and rollerskating at an upcoming GPC meeting. Good.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner Eastman. And perhaps we could have a, an exhibition. Totally kidding. Commissioner Chestnut?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to go back to Mr. Folsen's presentation. Is this the Griffin study that you want to be, no?
No, ma'am.
Okay. All right. So then will you be bringing forward updated information on MBEs and WBEs?
Zara Force Eco Opportunity Director for the city of Gainesville. The report that the mayor and Commissioner Duncan Walker are referring to is Eco Development Plan. That's the plan that we're talking about coming back. MWBs, we're monitoring some state legislation right now. And so once that's kind of been finalized, we'll come back with some recommendations on how we possibly can implement those things or not.
Okay. All right. And the Griffin study you won't be bringing at all?
That's what I'm referring to, is the Griffin and Strong study.
Well, that's what I, that's what I said.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Chestnut. Commissioner Willis?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor. Just we had another traffic violence death down in my district on Southwest 13th, another motorcyclist. That's March 2025. There was one, a motorcyclist died in November 2023, and another one, another motorcyclist died in May 2023, all within almost a half mile stretch on Southwest 13th. And so it is, we talk a lot about pedestrian deaths. Sometimes we talk less about vehicular death because we kind of have fewer than a lot of county roads and big highways, or they're not really under our control. And Southwest 13th is not under our complete control because it's a state highway, but maybe this is a this is a plea to my colleagues who are on the North Florida Regional Planting Council, just any kind of communication to the state to say that this level of death on a half mile stretch in less than two years, three motorcyclists have died. Something is wrong with the engineering of that wrong road. It sounds like all three deaths are are all uniquely different types of interactions with vehicles with so it's not that there's one individual spot with one individual issue. It's that it's like everything about that road is killing people. We've been lucky that we haven't had pedestrians die crossing now that the whole street has densified and will continue, and it is it is zoned and there are proposals roughly that property owners are looking at that would add hundreds of more people living immediately on that street, potentially, you know, in the realm of thousands by the time it is done. That street is an urban street, and so this is just a plea to y'all if y'all are on any of those, any communications with the state, state highway, that, you know, and to our staff, this is hearing me, that I I'm very disturbed by the amount of death that's there. That's three motorcyclists in less than two years on a half, I'm not joking, a half mile stretch of road. If those had been gun deaths, this would have been conversation. If it's had been pedestrian deaths, this would have been conversation. And we can't let, just because it's motorcycle, which is, we know that motorcycles could be a bit dangerous, and there are lots of shifting and assigning of blame with motorcyclists, the same way we see assigning of blame when pedestrians or cyclists are killed. It's we can't just ship blame. We've got to talk about the engineering of that road. I know it is the state, but I'm keep on bringing it up. It's four, it's it's signed at 45 miles an hour. That's too fast. The state says that it is basically a highway, not an urban street. It is quickly becoming an urban street, and we just, we've got to work, the state has got to understand, we've got to work with them, that something else has to happen down there because we can't go through through motorcyclist deaths two years. It is a half mile stretch of road, literally. So I just wanted to bring it up so people hear any communication with the with the state agencies and I guess potentially even sheriff, but also GPD about how we how we police that section. I guess it's lucky that it's close to a hospital. That's about the only thing, positive thing I can say about the situation. And then the second one I want to just, this is a comment about, again, about how our advisory boards communicate to the city commission. We briefly heard about Sidewalk Cafes, that this is something that'll be coming up. I will say that I am not, I am disappointed that one of our advisory board had a recommendation that was adopted by vote in an advisory board committee meeting last fall that we only now heard about now because the chair of that committee, downtown advisory committee, forwarded to the city commission. And I know that the internal policy sounds like for new ordinance or change to an ordinance that really comes, you know, from an advisory committee, that's not a normal process like the the plan board, that's a process because it's ordinance, it's well established, but something from the downtown advisory board that is less of a well established process, that it takes that long to get to us. And I know that city staff wants to say, well, this is our recommendation to go along with it, and I can appreciate that. But I think there's a miscommunication or a lack of communication that the advisory boards, what they want gets held up waiting for staff for months. And we just talked about, you know, how fast planning staff and codes goes and takes cares of it, take care of everything, which we we can appreciate, but we should do, we should have the same kind of attention to our advisory boards. We don't have to agree with them always. I encourage my colleagues to be brave enough to disagree with an advisory board. I would rather hear it and get it, be brave and say, maybe that's not what we want, we're going to go with staff's opinion. I know that some things aren't fully cooked, but just when advisory board wants something done, we should hear about it sooner than later. And I feel like that is a breakdown of communication that I find to be unacceptable. So this is mostly for city manager, that if, I want to respect staff's time, but it's unacceptable that a recommendation that I may not support at all, that it takes that long to get back to us so that we even understand that there's this need. Because they do that, you know, in a meeting, if they're individual citizens, they would all email us, right? And they're all individual citizens, but that's not how they they think by have been appointed to advisory board, that they don't have to operate as an individual citizen sending off emails, you know, from their phone while they're on coffee break at work to make sure it gets to us in the middle of day. So I just, I want there to be a better process or a better respecting of our citizens that we put on those advisory boards to get that information to us, just so we know it's something that's kicking around in their head. It could be something that we still put off, but I wasn't even able to acknowledge and say, thank you for having talked about that because I didn't go look at the minutes of downtown advisory boards. Anyways, I just, I had to say this is, I've complained in the past about this, about certain with with plan board, but it's getting to, you know, a frustration level. I don't know why we had advisory boards if their advice hasn't reached the city commission for four months. At that point, we could do, I don't know, surveys on Facebook and find out faster about people's opinions. So I think we need to, that needs to be tighter or get rid of advisory, some of these advisory boards, which I think we have a lot. So that's that's an option, too. Thank you all, my colleagues and city manager, just to hear this, my frustration about this, but I wanted everyone to hear it because you maybe missed out on your email. I don't know, did everyone get that email? And so the Chair, Chair McGurn said, hey, we did this in October, November, and this is still dragging, but we wanted you to know. It was a shock to me. They have lots of opinion about lots of things, and I hear those different things, right? But if you missed it, go back and look at it. There's, I understand that it's coming forward, and I appreciate that, but that's too long of a gap because then people say city commission doesn't listen to us. I didn't, I didn't, I didn't get to hear you, you know, I didn't even get to hear you. So anyways, it was a frustration that I had to voice. Again, I'm brave enough to tell advisory committees, no, we don't agree with you, but I would like to hear it. So thank you, colleagues.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Willis. That brings up an interesting point, actually, that there isn't, and hasn't been going back decades, a a funnel for for recommendations from advisory boards to come to the commission. I mean, there, some of them, it works very well because it's almost statutory if it's not statutory, but some of them, it just doesn't. And it's not anybody's fault. It's just that we don't have those those systems built in. And of course, we had a a system that might not work, and I'm not saying this is what we must do, but it is a a way to think about it, is potentially if if an advisory board makes a recommendation to to the commission, that there's a potentially way to at least quarterly and probably more often than that, attach that as to the to the consent agenda that as informational at the very least. And that way, it's in our backup, and we don't have to go look for 27 different advisory boards minutes or 28 or whatever the number is at this point. But that, I'm not saying attach all the minutes to our to our our consent agenda, but if they have, there's got to be some way to build a process for if they make a recommendation that we understand to be a recommendation, that it appears in any way that we can find it more easily. And I think probably digesting those on a monthly or bimonthly basis within our consent agenda kind of makes sense. Yes, sir.
Oh, sorry, I didn't mean to.
No, go ahead.
Andrew Person, Chief Operating Officer. I think to the mayor's point, I mean, from staff perspective, we would certainly agree with any, you know, if there was more of a formal process, we'd certainly support that. With respect to the specifically to the sidewalk cafe and the 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 letter from the chair, Sustainable Development staff did attend their meeting on Monday and actually talked about this issue, explained sort of the process, heard from the board what their concerns were, shared sort of the perspective of why the code is written. I think the board discussed forwarding their recommendation on to the commission again and then sending it also to the plan board, who ultimately would hear anything. From looking at what the the specifics of the proposal, I think there are changes that that I think from my understanding, staff would support in some of the, and so we could work through that that process. I will say in my time with the city, I don't know, I can't remember a board that's been quite as active in sending you guys letters of things that, you know, ultimately are commission decisions, but we're working through that with that board.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Person. And I I'm thinking more on meta level than I am on on that specific item. I know that 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 item is now working through. But I've been on boards before I was on the commission that we did what we thought was really great work, and it just disappeared because there wasn't a a funnel to 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 make that happen. There was no no formal way to to move forward. And that is, for me, that was deeply frustrating as as a community member on a on a board. We, to my mind, if we've got 27, 28 boards made up of an average of four or five people, those ought to be evangelists for the City of Gainesville. Those are folks who have signed up and said, I want to to help the City of Gainesville work better. That's a lot of people out there in the field because they're mostly distinct individuals who are either who are filtering information back and forth or have the capacity to from the rest of the community. And if they put hours and hours and hours into something and think they've done really good work and think that there is a path up to the commission with that, there isn't. And and we need to create that that path, knowing that it exists. We need to create that in the clerk's office. It clearly has, you know, some primary responsibility in that, but not exclusive responsibility. So let's see if we can come up with with a path for for advisory boards to to kick things up to us, I guess, is is kind of what I'm looking forward to in this. Were you done, Commissioner Willis or is there anything else?
Oh, I'll just one thing to add. Like you said, some things are almost statutory, like they boom, 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 ship a hat, the IRR report, oh, it's a report, my state law, blah, blah, gets added. We see it, you know, at some point once a year. And so some of those, their recommendation, there's a real path because it is statutory, but everything that's not statutory is a little lost in the in the midst. So thank you for mentioning that.
You're welcome. And I don't want anybody to take that as as a criticism. It's not. It's 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 just, it's a missing piece of our system, and there's a way to fix it. So we should. I don't see any other lights. I did want to mention one other thing that we did on consent this morning that following Commissioner Willis, our District Three Commissioner, I wanted to point out that the district where we spend least money over the over many years has been District Three. We kind of depend on a state institution to provide public buildings in District Three, and District Three is a lot more than the University of Florida apartment complexes. And if we look 10 or 20 years down the road, 30 years down the road, we're going to see that's where the City of Gainesville grows and 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 kind of morphs out. It's where we've annexed and quite a bit in the last few years in prior commissions. And with that growth, with the people who are very densely adding themselves to District Three, we are going to have to spend money in District Three. And one of the ways we're doing that, and I've talked about over the past several months, is through street stations and strong foundations, adding a Southwest Public Safety Center in District Three. And we have worked, staff has worked long and hard to come up with a purchase and sale agreement with our Florida Regional Medical Center for a piece of property to put that Public Safety Center on. And I'm excited about seeing this move forward to to serve Southwest Gainesville, the people who live there in a way that we really haven't engaged institutionally with to build out infrastructure. And this is an absolutely necessary thing that we've agreed to do. And now seeing the contract for that property come through is is a big deal. The staff has worked on very, very hard, and and I'm pleased to to have voted on that in the consent agenda this morning. And I didn't want it to just go by under the radar. I wanted the media to hear that, so.
And Phil.
Yes, yes. So, yeah, staff really has done remarkable work getting that deal closed, and I'm really pleased to to be able to to say yes. The land is about to be ours, ours, all 145,000 of us, and now we can start the real process of building a Southwest Public Safety Center. Thank you for that. I don't see any other lights. We will be back at 5:30. Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. See, the problem with these meetings is we have the meetings, we've pushed off on the agenda, we can't get anybody to show up. Thank you all for being here for the variety of things that you're here for. We've got a lot of celebrating through the course of the evening and a lot of honoring folks, and I appreciate all of you being here for your piece of that. So I'm going to come down while the clerk reads what's next.
Oh, yeah, I was about to say, we have our Pledge of Allegiance by Eastside Navy Junior ROTC.
If y'all would rise.
College, contest, work, cook. Our time, hook. Colors, hook. Present, coach.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and objective for all.
Work, cook. Colors, colors, her, hook. And all, hook.
All right, y'all, that's the Eastside High School.
Mr. Mayor, we're on to our proclamations for the evening, starting with 2025-253 Proclamation for Procurement Professionals Day.
Who's going to join me up here for?
All the procurement folks, join us at the lectern. Come on, procurement.
City of Gainesville Office of Mayor Harvey Ward Proclamation. Whereas the public procurement profession plays a significant role in the efficiency and effectiveness of government and business. And whereas, in addition to the purchase of goods and services, procurement professionals do the essential work of executing, implementing, and administering contracts, developing strategic procurement strategies, and cultivating working relationships with suppliers. And whereas, public procurement professionals serve as the gatekeeper of the competitive process and are entrusted with the responsibility of ensuring the fairness and transparency of this process for our partners in the business community. And whereas, the procurement professionals of the city of Gainesville have demonstrated exceptional dedication to enhancing the efficiency and effectiveness of local government operations by conducting business with integrity and in compliance with applicable laws. And whereas, the procurement professionals of the city of Gainesville play a pivotal role in contributing to economic diversity and development in our community by providing resources and programs that support local businesses and veteran-owned enterprises. Now therefore, I Harvey L. Ward Jr., by the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Gainesville, do hereby proclaim April 3, 2025, as Procurement Professionals Day in the city of Gainesville, and invite all our neighbors to join me in recognizing the role of procurement professionals within business, industry, and government. And witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause to be affixed the official seal of the city of Gainesville, Florida, this 19th day of March, 2025. Harvey L. Ward Jr., Mayor.
Hello, my name is Todd Tezalino. I'm the Procurement and Contracts Manager, and I would like to thank the commission and also the city manager and Cynthia Ramos for all their support. It's been a great journey. I've been in my position for nine months. We have done over 1,400 purchase orders since I've been here, and we will continue to help support the commission in all they do. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Mayor, we have distracted driving awareness. So those who are coming for, oh, there we are. All right.
No, it has not gone without my attention that the sheriff is over here monitoring the operation. So, welcome, Mr. Sheriff.
City of Gainesville, Florida Office of Mayor Harvey Ward Proclamation. Whereas, the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration is calling on states, local leaders, traffic safety professionals, transportation planners and engineers, stakeholders and community members to enhance distracted driving awareness efforts. And whereas, every April, the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration focuses specialized efforts on distracted driving awareness through the recognition of National Distracted Driving Awareness Month. And whereas, the Florida Department of Transportation ranks Alachua County number four among all Florida counties, with a population of 50,001 to 300,000 in traffic crashes resulting in serious injuries and fatalities as a result of distracted driving. Whereas, the Florida Department of Transportation ranks the city of Gainesville number six among all Florida cities with a population above 65,000 in traffic crashes resulting in serious injuries and fatalities as a result of distracted drivers. And whereas, the Gainesville Police Department is a collaborative partner in the city's Vision Zero Action Plan, as well as the state's Target Zero Plan and the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration's Action Plan, making traffic safety a priority. Now therefore, I Harvey L. Ward Jr., by the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Gainesville, do hereby proclaim the month of April, 2025, as Distracted Driving Awareness Month in the city of Gainesville, and invite all our neighbors to join me in bringing awareness to distracted driving problems in the city of Gainesville. And witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause to be affixed the official seal of the city of Gainesville, Florida, this 19th day of March, 2025. And I want to thank GPD and especially your unit for being so willing to hear the concerns of the community and of the commission to respond to everything Vision Zero related. I really appreciate the attention and the care that you all put into this. So, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Commission, sorry, I've met several of you before. We partner up. On behalf of Gainesville Police Department and the Alachua County Sheriff's Office, we do have a detailed plan with them coming up. It'll be published on the website. Thank you so much for your support in traffic safety. It has been tremendous to get the backing and the effort, and we are starting to get results that actually are showing a reduction in fatalities and serious bodily injuries. So, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we're on to Child Abuse Prevention Month.
We're just getting warmed up.
Yep.
All right, who's with me on this one?
City of Gainesville, Florida Office of Harvey Ward Proclamation. Whereas, future prosperity depends on nurturing the healthy development of the children currently residing in the city of Gainesville because they deserve the opportunity to grow and thrive in healthful environments, free from threats and violence and harm. Whereas, the abuse and neglect of children can cause severe, costly, and lifelong problems, including physical and mental health problems, school failure, and criminal behavior, which affect all of society. And whereas, research shows that parents and caregivers who have social networks and know how to seek help in times of trouble are more resilient and better able to provide safe environments and nurturing experiences for their children. And whereas, individuals, businesses, schools, faith-based, and community organizations must make children a top priority and take action to support the physical, social, emotional, and educational development and competency of all children. And whereas, during the month of April, public and private sector agencies, childcare professionals, child advocates, and residents will increase the public's awareness of child abuse and neglect prevention. Now therefore, I Harvey L. Ward Jr., by the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Gainesville, do hereby proclaim the month of April, 2025, as Child Abuse Prevention Month in the city of Gainesville, and invite all our neighbors to join me in recognizing the importance of protecting the children of our community. And witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause to be affixed the official seal of the city of Gainesville, Florida, this 20th day of March, 2025. Harvey L. Ward Jr., Mayor.
Let's say a few words.
So you just read off my speech? Hi, good evening, Mayor Ward, respected commissioners. My name is Kathy Winfrey, and I am the Program Manager of U F Healthy Families Program and also the Chair of the Alachua County Child Abuse Prevention Task Force. I would like to thank the commissioners for your support during Child Abuse Prevention Month. Throughout CAP Month, the Child Abuse Prevention Task Force and our partners are building a narrative of hope for children and families throughout collaboration and creation of prevention. Together, our powerful network of prevention advocates and practitioners throughout Florida are ready to provide families with what they need before they are in crisis. We know we cannot do this alone. We all have a role to play as healthy partners in our communities. Each year, organizations around Florida gather to plant pinwheels that symbolize a commitment to supporting families and protecting children. Has anybody seen the 1,000 pinwheels in front of Shands this year? They just got put out the table for yesterday. It's a sight to see if you haven't seen it. It is a reminder that we all can play a role in helping children grow up happy and healthy. Remember, we all can make a positive impact in the lives of children, not just this month, but every day of the year. This month and all year long, you can help prevent child abuse by taking action. You can show support by promoting positive childhood experiences by wearing blue on April 4 for hashtag Wear Blue Day to kick off CAP Month. You can plant a pinwheel garden in your community, a visual reminder of the world we want for children to grow up happy, healthy, and prepared to succeed. And you can attend Celebrate the Child, our annual Child Abuse Prevention Month event, which is a free, family-friendly celebration to learn how child abuse can be prevented. And if it's okay, Amanda would like to say a few words. This is Amanda Rodriguez from Partnership for Strong Families.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, commissioners, for allowing me to come. It's not often that an organization gets to come and say that they saw a decrease in customers this year, but we have the honor at Partnership for Strong Families due to the support of the city of Gainesville, the library, Alachua County, to say that at least 4,500 children and their families did not enter our system, and instead, they came to our resources, received the services they need, got the support that their families needed, and never were abused in the first place. And so I want to thank you for acknowledging Child Abuse Prevention Month in Gainesville, and thank you for all the work that you do.
Mr. Mayor, we're on to National Public Safety Telecommunicator Week.
City of Gainesville, Florida Office of Mayor Harvey Ward Proclamation. Whereas, the professional public safety telecommunicator in Alachua County plays a crucial role in the protection of life, property, and delivery of public safety services. And whereas, each day hundreds of citizens dial 911 for help and emergencies, and the telecommunicators who answer these calls for help, gathering essential information and dispatching the appropriate assistance, can often make the difference between life and death. And whereas, these highly dedicated and deeply motivated individuals selflessly serve the citizens of Gainesville 24 hours a day, seven days a week, sometimes during extreme situations, and are unable to be with their own families or protect their property. And whereas, telecommunicators, who are the original first responders, are honored to receive recognition by the citizens and agencies who depend on them and benefit from their services. And whereas, the U.S. Congress has proclaimed its support and recognition to these employees and their profession, and the city commission wishes to publicly recognize the local telecommunicators who serve the citizens of Gainesville in such a professional manner. Now therefore, I Harvey L. Ward Jr., by the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Gainesville, do hereby proclaim April 13 to April 19, 2025, as National Public Safety Telecommunicator Week in the city of Gainesville, and invite all our neighbors to join me in recognizing our public safety telecommunications heroes. And witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause to be affixed the official seal of the city of Gainesville, Florida, this 20th day of March, 2025.
My name is Taylor Powell. I'm an Alachua County telecommunicator with the Alachua County Sheriff's Combined Communications Center. On behalf of my coworkers, we would like to thank the mayor and the commissioners and the citizens of Gainesville and Alachua County for taking the time to acknowledge National Public Safety Telecommunicator Week 2025. Thank you.
So before y'all leave the room, I want to tell you this, telecommunicators. I have a personal state in what you all do. Way back before there was a Combined Communications Center, when I was a kid, my dad was a radio operator at GPD, and I grew up with him working all kinds of weird shifts and not being at home when there was a natural disaster happening or any of that sort of thing. So I know the kind of pressure you all are under through family, and I appreciate very, very much what you all do very personally. So, thank you. Chip, yeah. Yeah, come on over.
They're shy. So I have to, I have to say something to mayor, commissioners, city attorney. These guys are phenomenal. We had an opportunity to present to the Black on Black yesterday, and Pat did a phenomenal job explaining what they do. I mean, we're first responders, but when you talk about first contact, they are the ones that get that first contact, that phone call, the dispatch. They are the ones that make us get it right. And I just want to share a little story with you that happened with an individual that I gave an award today in the communications center that his mom had a seizure on the interstate. I mean, you know how many cars travel on the interstate running 75 to 80 miles an hour? And this dispatcher was able to calm him down, get him to slow the car down, and get it pulled on the side of the road with no one getting injured and not an incident at all. So these are the types of things that we don't understand that these, this group do every single day. They have to get it right so we can get it right. So, thank you.
All right, Mr. Mayor, next up we have Raul Serrano, National Barber Day.
All right, family, y'all come upstairs with me. We have a couple of these for you, so.
City of Gainesville, Florida Office of Mayor Harvey Ward Proclamation. Whereas, the strength of a community is built upon the dedication, kindness, service of its people. Few individuals embodied these qualities as wholeheartedly as Raul Serrano León. Whereas, Raul Serrano León, born on April 11, 1985, in Caye, Puerto Rico, pursued his passion for barbering, earned his barber's license, and co-founded a thriving shop that became a cornerstone of the community. And whereas, through Raul's skill, dedication, and compassion, he transformed his barber shop into more than just a place of business. It was a gathering space where friendships were forged, stories were shared, and lives were uplifted. Whereas, Raul Serrano's unwavering commitment to his family, his beloved wife, Hadira Serrano, and their children, Hailani and Raul Jr. Hailani and Raul Jr., were evident in every endeavor. He inspired all who knew him to pursue their dreams with determination and love. And whereas beyond his profession, Raul's passion for cars, racing, and entrepreneurship showcased his vibrant spirit and determination, while his kindness, humility, and infectious smile left a lasting impact on the community he loved. Now therefore, I Harvey L. Ward Jr. by the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Gainesville do hereby proclaim April 11th, 2025 as Raul Serrano National Barber Day in the City of Gainesville, and invite all our neighbors to join me in encouraging all residents to honor his memory, his contributions, and his profound impact he had on our community. And witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause to be affixed the official seal of the City of Gainesville, Florida this 24th day of March 2025. Harvey L. Ward Jr., Mayor. Home stretch.
Mr. Mayor, we have Records and Information Management Month. This is my very own records team.
Who's going to accept this?
They, I don't know. There they are, the good-looking bunch in the corner.
City of Gainesville, Florida Office of Mayor Harvey Ward proclamation. And I won't tell you that these are the folks who prepare the proclamations. Whereas, Records and Information Management Month is celebrated internationally during the month of April to highlight the significant impact records management has on organizations. And whereas RIMM was first observed in 1995 as National Records and Information Management Day. The purpose is to emphasize the importance of organizing and maintaining records and data for the effective management of information. And whereas, through the efforts of members of the Association of Records Managers and Administrators promoting the records and information management, records and information management profession, we highlight the impact RIMM has on every business organization and government agency. And whereas, control of records and information is necessary for the reduction of risk and liability, as well as for the compliance with state standards. Technologies for storing information and the need to use information to create value and plans are expanding. And whereas, this month is a great time to recognize RIM professionals and the impact they have on organizations by ensuring documents and records are organized and accessible. Now therefore, I Harvey L. Ward Jr. by the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Gainesville do hereby proclaim the month of April 2025 as Records and Information Management Month in the City of Gainesville, and invite all our neighbors to join me in recognizing the records and information professionals working across the city and thank them for the critical service they provide. And witness whereof, I have herein to set my hand and cause to be affixed the official seal of the City of Gainesville, Florida this 25th day of March 2025.
Hello, Mayor, Commissioners, charters, community builders, and neighbors. I am Shanika Young, the Operations and Records Manager in the City Clerk's Office. This is Michael Bryant, our Executive Coordinator, and Nikita Scruggs, our Staff Specialist, and we are the Clerk's Office Records Team. We want to thank you so much for always supporting us, for the policies that have been passed for records. The records managers and liaisons across the city do a lot of work, and it isn't their only job. So, thank you. Thank you to the records managers. If you see them, and I want to say this for the record, in 2024, public records requests that was filled throughout the City of Gainesville, GRU, and GPD were almost 10,000 requests. So, if you see a records manager or a liaison, please say thank you. Thank you all.
All right, very nice. One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Mr. Mayor, we're on to early public comment, but we do not have anyone signed up.
Okay.
So with your permission, we'll go on to resolutions.
All right.
2025-237 honorary street naming of Southeast Fourth Place with the recommendation the City Commission adopt the resolution to dual name Southeast Fourth Place from Southeast 12th Street to Southeast 13th Street, Cleo Strata Avenue.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Do any Commissioners want to read this one? I'm happy to do it.
A resolution of the City of Gainesville, Florida to designate and dual name Southeast Fourth Place from Southeast 12th Street to Southeast 13th Street as Cleo Strata Avenue, and providing an effective date. Whereas Cleo Strata has dedicated over 20 years to the community, and whereas Cleo Strata was born and raised in the Blan community where he farmed, and whereas in the 1960s, Cleo Strata opened Strata's Fish Market, and whereas Cleo Strata was also the owner of Strata's Grocery Store, and whereas Cleo Strata had a garden in his backyard filled with vegetables and allowed many families to eat from his garden, and whereas Cleo Strata's goal was to inspire others to work for themselves, help others survive, thrive, and progress. Whereas Cleo Strata was remembered for always helping the less fortunate, hosting annual egg hunts, Easter egg hunts, and providing children Christmas gifts. And whereas Cleo Strata and his wife, Novella, raised their own five children and four other neighborhood children who not only needed a home, but a family, and whereas Cleo Strata helped the neighborhood, his family, and the City of Gainesville because of his lifelong goals and selfish acts assisted and inspired others. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Commission of the City of Gainesville, Florida, Southeast Fourth Place from Southeast 12th Street to Southeast 13th Street be dual named as Cleo Strata Avenue, so that his contributions to the community will always be remembered, and the City Manager or Designee is hereby authorized to carry out all necessary actions to fulfill this resolution. This resolution shall become effective immediately upon adoption passed and adopted this third day of April 2025. Harvey L. Ward, Mayor.
All right, and you want to make a motion to?
I move that we adopt this resolution to dual name Southeast Fourth Place from Southeast Fourth Street to Southeast 13th Street, Cleo Strata Avenue, in honor of the late Cleo Strata, who served his community for more than 20 years.
Let's go do the roll call, and then we'll invite everybody up for the.
Commissioner Book?
Aye.
Commissioner Willis?
Aye.
Commissioner Ingle?
Aye.
Commissioner Eastman?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan Walker is absent. Commissioner Chestnut?
Aye.
Mayor Ward.
Aye, that passes unanimously with Commissioner Duncan Walker absent. And congratulations to family and friends. If y'all want to come up, you're welcome to make comments first, but let's make sure we get photos as well.
We're going to be taking a picture, but we first want to say thank you all so much for honoring our father.
Yes, ma'am.
You know what we know now, that this man was awesome. You know, sometime when people have titles, you expect certain things from them. My dad was known as Mr. Strata. That's the only title that he had. But he showed us how to be a man and how to love people. So we thank you for honoring him this way.
Glad we were able to do that. Thank you. Come up, we'll stand up behind you, we'll get some photos. And Public Works Department has created a couple of signs for y'all to take with you there.
Ready? One, two, three. One more. One, two, three. Is that what you mean?
All right, thank you all. Yes, we are.
We're doing 2025-238 honorary street naming of Northeast Second Street with the recommendation the City Commission adopt the resolution to dual name Northeast Second Street from Northeast 16th Avenue to Northeast 23rd Avenue, Father Roland M. Julian Way.
Resolution number 2025-238. A resolution of the City Commission of the City of Gainesville, Florida to designate and dual name Northeast Second Street from Northeast 16th Avenue to Northeast 23rd Avenue as Father Roland M. Julian Way, and provide an effective date. Whereas Father Roland M. Julian has dedicated over 59 years to his ministry and the community. And whereas after high school, Father Roland M. Julian went on to pursue his calling at both St. Thomas Seminary in Connecticut and St. Mary's Seminary in Maryland. And whereas Father Roland M. Julian was ordained to the priesthood for the Diocese of St. Augustine, Florida on April 25th, 1965, at Mission Número de Dios in St. Augustine. And whereas Father Roland M. Julian ministry spanned 17 Florida counties and included numerous administrative and pastoral roles. And whereas Father Roland M. Julian was appointed Pastor of St. Patrick Parish in Gainesville, Florida in 1980. And whereas Father Roland M. Julian served as pastor of St. Patrick Parish for over 35 years until his retirement in 2015. And whereas, under the leadership of Father Roland M. Julian, St. Patrick's Parish experienced significant growth and established vital ministries. And whereas, Father Roland M. Julian's service accomplishments include the establishment of the Catholic radio station WWLC 88.5, tenure as President of St. Francis House, co-founding Action Network that advocates for resources such as expanded public transportation for vulnerable populations. He was also a member of the MLK Foundation and earned the MLK Hall of Fame Award in 2016, having left an indelible mark on the community and countless lives he touched. And now therefore, be it resolved by the City Commission of the City of Gainesville, Florida, Section 1, Northeast Second Street from Northeast 16th Avenue to Northeast 23rd Avenue be dual named as Father Roland M. Julian Way, so that his contributions to the community will always be remembered. And the City Manager or Designee is hereby authorized to carry out all necessary actions to fulfill this resolution, and this resolution shall become effective immediately upon adoption passed and adopted this third day of April 2025. Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt this resolution renaming, dual naming Northeast Second Street from North 16th Avenue to Northeast 23rd Avenue as Father Roland M. Julian Way.
Second. I have a motion for a second. Let's see, Madam Clerk, let's call the roll.
Yes. Commissioner Duncan Walker is absent. Commissioner Chestnut?
Aye.
Commissioner Book?
Aye.
Commissioner Willis?
Aye.
Commissioner Eastman?
Aye.
Commissioner Ingle?
Aye.
Mayor Ward.
Aye, that passes unanimously with Commissioner Duncan Walker absent. So, congratulations. And if anybody would like to say anything, and then come on up, we'll do a photo.
If in 1957, I guess most of y'all were born before that or around that time, we win the seminary together, and if someone would have told me I'd be standing here in Gainesville, Florida, accepting this and thanking these good people for what is transpiring, I think we all had too much Jack Daniels, you know? But in any case, it's certainly well, well-deserved. And I just would like to close with this. I'm so glad that I see the word "way," W-A-Y, because Father Julian, like so many, so many other ministers, have really, truly shown the way back to our Creator by not only what he preached and what he said, by the way he lived his life. And he has shown the way indeed, and we are very grateful for that. I know he has shown me the way many times as a priest, what is the right way, and I've learned a lot from him. And I thank you, folks, so very, very, very much of giving us this honor for his parish, and especially for Father Julian. He will never be forgotten. How the world could I ever forget him? Thank you again.
Thank you. Come on up, all you fellas.
Look over here one more time. Thank you so much. One, two.
Only one more though, that's all. Thank you. Thank you all. Yes, appreciate it. Thank you. That's wonderful. I'm glad to hear that. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Father Julian is the first mass I would have attended in Gainesville. I moved back in 2015, and started going to St. Patrick. It was close to me.
Well, I'm glad that you were sitting right there to take it.
I do remember. I've been, he retired, and he filled in a little bit. Because he still stayed active after he retired.
Yeah, yeah. So we, go ahead and put that up there. But we're waiting on someone to be here specifically for this next one. So let's go ahead and do the next item on the agenda, and then we'll rotate back to this.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we're on to our business discussion item for the evening. 2025-235 Invitation to Bid Award Recommendation for the Tom Petty Park Pickleball and Miscellaneous Improvement Projects with the recommendation the City Commission approve the Invitation to Bid Award to D.E. Scorpio Corporation in the amount of $1,967,007, and to authorize a City Manager or their Designee to execute all contract documents and other necessary documents subject to approval by the City Attorney as to form a legality.
All right, thank you, Madam Clerk. We pulled this off of the consent agenda just because I know sometimes things with this, such price tag tend to want to come off the agenda, off of the consent agenda. So if anyone has any questions or concerns, this is the time. Commissioner Book?
Director Wade, were you planning to speak or no?
Mayor Commissioners, I do have a short presentation, but I'm really, I'm just here to answer any questions that you have tonight.
So my question, Mr. Mayor, is why would we not approve this? That's my question. I don't need to see the presentation. We've had plenty of presentations on this particular park. It's one of many Wild Spaces, Public Places, projects. It's one of just a whole host of projects that in our short tenure, Director Wade has been managing and doing an incredible job. Madam Manager, unless you're telling us there's something else we need to know, I'll make the motion.
Nothing more.
I move approval of 2025- Motion, second. Is there any public comment on this?
No public comment.
Very good, all right. We will, while we're on the topic, I know many of us will join you, I was wait tomorrow morning at Tom Petty Park, and we're looking forward to breaking ground on this. We've talked about it for a long time, so. Okay, all in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? All right, that passes unanimously with Commissioner Duncan Walker absent. Madam Clerk?
Do we have?
We're ready.
Okay, I wasn't sure. Let me get back to it. So we're going back to 2025-240 honorary street naming of the Roundabout on South Main Street at Southeast 10th Avenue with the recommendation the City Commission adopt the resolution to name the Roundabout on South Main Street at Southeast 10th Avenue, Robert Karp Roundabout.
Commissioner Eastman, did you want to lead us on this one?
Yeah, thank you. Whereas Robert Karp was a shining example of constructive citizenship in Gainesville and Alachua County, and whereas Robert Karp committed to civility and participated in political campaigns, served on advisory boards, and worked for human rights, and served as a moral compass to all who participate in public life in our community. And whereas Robert Karp was a leader and supporter of many local campaigns for public office, and he set a standard of decency, honor, and truth by encouraging candidates to explain why they love Gainesville. And whereas Robert Karp was a powerful advocate for safe and comfortable transportation for roadway users via bicycling, walking, and buses, as well as other motor vehicles. And whereas Robert Karp was a founding member of the Gainesville Citizens for Active Transportation. And whereas Robert Karp was a thoughtful and wise proponent for the development of well-designed urbanism that enhances the quality of life of all citizens. And whereas Robert Karp has actively encouraged community-wide support for the design of Main Street and 20-year development of Depot Park, as well as green space, greenways, parks, and clean energy. And whereas Robert Karp was a steadfast and invaluable leader in Gainesville's pursuit of basic human rights to the lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, LGBTQ-plus community, and other underrepresented communities. And whereas Robert Karp was recognized by the City of Gainesville with a proclamation in the spring of 2023 with an honor actively befitting a true friend, trusted confidant, and moral compass to uncounted leaders in the Gainesville community. Now therefore, be it resolved by the City Commission of the City of Gainesville, Florida, that Section 1, the Roundabout at South Main Street at Southeast 10th Avenue be named Robert Karp Roundabout, so that his contributions to the community will always be remembered. Section 2, the City Manager or Designee is hereby authorized to carry out all necessary actions and to fulfill this resolution. And Section 3, this resolution shall become effective immediately upon adoption. Harvey L. Ward, Mayor.
Do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I would move that the City Commission adopt a resolution to name the Roundabout on South Main Street at Southeast 10th Avenue, Robert Karp Roundabout.
Motion, second. Before we vote, I want to weigh in on Bob Karp. One of the two or three most decent people I've ever known, just decent people. For somebody to be as active in running political campaigns as he was and maintain the level of basic decency that he always projected is phenomenal. But to be committed to active transportation in the ways that Bob was, and to not only show how to do it and refuse rides to wait for the bus more than once in my presence is amazing, but he did more than just live it, he could explain it in such a way that even people like me who were dedicated car folks understood, oh, this is why I need to rethink that. If I do anything worthwhile and good for Vision Zero in this community is because Bob Karp explained it to me properly and helped me understand that there was a better way to do it than what I had been doing before. So, this is personal to me, and I really appreciate the opportunity to be involved. I understand that a large group of friends of Bob Karp will gather to place a monument at the Roundabout and say some words at a date to be determined. And any other Commissioners who want to weigh in on this, this would be the time, and then Mr. Ackerman is here to receive it.
Yeah, I would like to weigh in. I wasn't sure if I was going to be able to make it through all the whereas's and everything. I loved Bob. It's still weird that he's not here. He was just such an ever-present part of everything. I'd see him on his bike constantly, and he was the kind of person that before running for office, I always wanted to be like Bob, like he was, he had been involved in the community, he had ran every campaign in the community, he had advocated for everything that I care of, I mean, making sure that we're an equitable community for all people, making sure we have urbanism. He was fighting for, I remember he was one of two or three people in the room when we were trying to push for accessory dwelling units back in 2018. I mean, he was on the cutting edge of everything, and he was just thoughtful and cared. I happened to bring up the, well, before we get into that, I remember I was at the Equality Florida Gala, and he had been here and he had been advocating for things for so long. Nadine Smith was speaking, who had won, I think she was 2022, Top 100 Most Influential People in the United States, and she came to an event and pointed out Bob Karp as someone who had taught her everything that she knew about activism. But if you knew him, you knew he was just, he was very soft-spoken. All he did was compliment you whenever he saw you. You'd never know that he was this kind of this big figure. Gainesville's, the city, communities aren't the same when you lose someone like Bob, and our community won't be the same. I got the last text message from Bob here that I got right before he passed away, which kind of, I think, shows his way of being. He texted me, he said, "Great to see you on the bike today. I hate to be a nag, but I would encourage you to wear a bright reflective vest. Being easily seen is in my view the most important aspect of safe bike riding." I wrote him back, half joking, like, "But won't I look kind of dorky if I do that?" He wrote back, he said, "Indeed, you will. Embrace your hidden dorkiness." Which I thought was, I don't know, he was kind of a dork. Like, that was Bob, and I just, I miss him terribly. And I think this is our first Roundabout we've ever named after anyone before, is that correct? I can't think of anyone who deserves it more. He was a big advocate for Roundabouts for any kind of transportation, he was always looking forward for things like that. Yeah, he's missed terribly, yeah.
Absolutely. Commissioner Willetts?
I too have a text message from Bob. I originally had asked him to be my treasurer of my campaign, because he would do that for people. Unglamorous work that absolutely needed to be done, the kind of person who would follow what was going in the state legislature to know what we needed to know, or following what was going on in the county for different groups and interests, to let them know what was going on, because sometimes the loudest political mover-shakers are not necessarily good at all the details, following everything, and he did that kind of hard work, and that's an inspiration to me. And on the day I was sworn in, he texted me, he said, "Best speech ever, congrats." To the point about he would, he made sure to compliment other people, and the attention was never on him, and we probably need, you know, far more of that in our community and in politics and government in general. And so, I was reminded that I knew that I had a message from him somewhere, and I was, I probably would not have run for office if I didn't see him and his, the work he'd done in the community, and the kind of things they'd achieved, and I thought, it's possible through belief in something and deliberate action, and that policy, that policymakers can make a community a better place. All of y'all notwithstanding, and other Commissioners, but someone like him showed me that if you want something and you follow through it, you push through on policy, and you just keep on doing it, it may very well happen. So, he was someone who taught me that politics is worthwhile, local politics is worthwhile. And so that's the memory I take of Bob Karp.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner, and thanks to everyone for being involved in this. And we, I mentioned that there will be a monument placed at the Roundabout. A group of friends are paying for the monument to be built, there's no expense at the City of Gainesville, and it will be there to be understood and known as the Bob Karp Roundabout. So, that's something I think he would have been horribly embarrassed by, but would have privately appreciated it, I'm sure. So, matter of fact, I'm sure he would have been horribly embarrassed by it, but this is how we will remember Bob, so. Let's do the roll call.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Chestnut?
Aye.
Commissioner Book?
Aye.
Commissioner Willetts?
Aye.
Commissioner Eastman?
Aye.
Commissioner Ingle?
Aye.
Commissioner Duncan Walker is absent. Mayor Ward?
Aye, that passes unanimously with Commissioner Duncan Walker absent. All right, Mr. Ackerman, would you like to, do you have anything to say, or would you like to come up and get the? Thanks for being here, Bob.
I was drafted at the last moment because somehow his large group of friends didn't quite get this message that this was happening today. So, Warren Nielsen very much wanted to be here today, but he's in the middle of one of his many extravagant dinner parties, to which I was not invited, and so I got drafted into doing this. I have very little to add to the many wonderful things that have been said about Bob Karp today, other than he was dedicated to the long-term fate of the city, and he was dedicated to good planning, and really what everybody said that impressed me, because it's not my normal nature, is that he was always positive. He was always a person who tried his best to find something good in what people were proposing, and he was happy to let other people take the credit for that. So, on that, that's all I have. Thank you very much. We're hoping to put an Egyptian obelisk in the middle.
Thank you, Mr. Ackerman.
Thank you very much.
You're supposed to go up and have pictures taken, yeah.
Very nice.
One second, let me put my coat over my belt.
Perfect. One, two, three, one more. Thank you.
Very good. And if you'll take those, and we'll give them distributed to the proper folks, and help get them distributed to the proper folks. Thank you, thank you. Yes, thank you. So, thank you, Mr. Singleton, for coordinating all of this. It is a pretty rare, good-sized city like ours where the director of Public Works just leans in and sets up the tripod and sets up the signs, but Mr. Singleton leaves nothing to chance. So, we appreciate the level of deep involvement and detail throughout our chain of management in this city. It's much appreciated. All right, Madam Clerk?
Commission comment?
All right. Anybody have any comment? Wonderful, I'm looking forward to seeing everybody tomorrow morning at, everybody who can, Tom Petty, yes, Tom Petty Park at 10 o'clock.
The most important comment on a Thursday headed into the weekend.
Go Gators!
Go Gators, I was going to get there, but. Absolutely, all right, go Gators, and we are adjourned.